Yes, all right. Thanks, Dan. We are going to call the June 25th Town Council Meeting to order. Sarah, roll call, please.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Zabriski.
Here.
Mayor Pollavy.
Here.
Councilmember Klebstad.
Here.
Councilmember Romack.
Here.
And Councilmember Henderson.
Here.
Thank you.
Great, and if everybody can rise, we will join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with every team of justice for all.
Great, thank you. We're going to move on to public comment. This is an opportunity for any members of the public to address council on items not on tonight's agenda. If you have anything to add, please come on up to the podium right over here. You'll have three minutes. Based on the timer to your right, an hour left. We are not taking action on any of the public comment, and we ask that you state your name as you begin. Mr. Werble, thank you. And make sure your mic is on the green light.
There we go. Peter Werble, 12008 Saddleback Drive. Chairman and board members, thank you for giving me this opportunity. I'd like to speak on the multi-use trails. How many of you bike ride on our multi-use trails? One, okay. I know we've road bike riders are in a minority when it comes to using these trails, but I also know that safety is of utmost importance to this board, as well as making it known that Truckee is a bike-friendly town. There are many challenging issues that you must deal with, much higher priority than the bike paths, but I hope the following questions can be answered so I have a better understanding that all is being done to make riding on multi-use trails safe and enjoyable. First question, how many miles of multi-use trail do we have in Truckee? Don't know? Okay. How many of the trails are we responsible for that are here? All of them? No response. How many miles will be added this year? No response.
We're not going to respond, so just keep going, Peter.
Why aren't we responding?
It's public comment, and you have three minutes.
Okay. How often does someone inspect the trails for repair and maintenance? How often are trails swept? How big does a crack have to be before it is considered unsafe and is repaired? How much money is available as of now for repair and maintenance? How much money on average is allocated per mile for upkeep? I ask these questions in part because I believe a comprehensive plan must be in place to take care of what we now have and what is being contemplated in the future. I unfortunately am unaware that one exists or that a long-term plan is proposed. Hopefully, I am incorrect. Photos are enclosed for you to look at of issues that have not been addressed in the past two or three seasons, even though they have been acknowledged by the town. My hope is by bringing these to your attention, the squeaky wheel can get some traction, and the multi-use trail scant can be made safer and more enjoyable for all. And I'm going to, I've given these, and I will pass these out to you. None of these have been addressed.
Peter, you can hand them over to Sarah. Yep, go ahead and hand them to Sarah. Thank you.
And I would like an answer from the town as to why not.
Wonderful, thank you. We appreciate your comments, and just so you do know, we do have a really good Trails and Bike Ways master plan, along with our update of our active transportation plan coming up soon, and I am sure some of our wonderful folks in the Public Works Department will be able to get you answers to actually, I believe, every single one of those questions. So, thank you. Any other public comment? Yep, come on up. Three minutes, just to reiterate the instructions here. Comments are limited to three minutes. The council cannot take action on an item not on the agenda. We may choose to acknowledge the comment, or where appropriate, briefly answer a question, refer to matter of the staff, or set the item for discussion at a future meeting, but we will not be answering your questions in your three minutes. This is your time, and we want to respect your full three minutes. So take it away and state your name before you start.
My name is Marshall Williams, and I'll keep it light. It's not, it's not like that. I'm a business owner in town, 18 years, been doing business with the town for two and a half decades, and I just, I wanted to speak on the spirit of the rules that we have versus the letter of the rules of the law that we have. And specifically, this one was a hot topic for me in that I'm trying to get my building out of the ground over an industrial way, and because of, what do we have? We had COVID, interest rates, the building itself, without changing the design, went up over $300,000, so I've been a little slow to get it out of the ground. And, yeah, so I've had to file for a few extensions, not to be confused that I haven't been working with a third-party agency to help me out, to work with you folks. And by doing so, I'm now at this clock, if I don't, if I don't get it in by the 15th of October, I lose, you know, all my runway that I have with you guys, all of my approvals that I have with you guys, all the money I've spent on it, and I've got to start over. However, if I get the foundation in by October 15th, which I will, it can sit there for three years, and, or at least be done in three years. So it just, it, it, it doesn't make a lot of sense to me, and my whole point to this is I feel like, over the years that I've been working in the community and with you folks and stuff, is I feel like we've lost our way a little bit on, you know, what we're trying to achieve with the applicants like myself, tax-paying, trying to get, you know, industry going here in town, and just be met right by, by basically finding reasons not to approve versus to approve. Thank you.
Thank you, Marshall. Appreciate your comments. Any other public comment? Come on up. If anybody else has public comment, be ready right when this one is done, please.
Hey, guys, it's Chris Terrell. How you been? In Truckee, we continue to focus on cycling as a form of only recreation, not of transportation. In the next three minutes, I'm going to demonstrate that, one, we have no allocated funding for protected bike lanes on Donner Pass Road, the road that runs the length of our beautiful town connecting our schools and grocery stores. Two, we have never designed protected bike lanes into our plans for Truckee. And three, we'll never meet our climate goals of moving people out of their cars and onto their bikes if people don't feel safe on their bikes on our roads. One, at our last meeting, Councilwoman Henderson indicated that we have funds from Measure U that we can dedicate to building protected bike lanes. Since our last meeting, I have confirmation from the head of engineering, Dan Wilkins, that no funds for bike lanes would come from Measure U, rather, they might come from Measure V, but currently, no funds are allocated for protected bike lanes in Measure V. Two, no plans for protected bike lanes. Five years ago, we envisioned a new Donner Pass Road. Sadly, those plans failed to include any protected bike lanes. Downtown, we don't even have painted bike lanes on Donner Pass Road since we have prioritized parking spaces that have no access to sidewalks and that back cars into traffic. Downtown, along West River Road, we have nearly finished the engineering work beside Jack's, between Jackson Tahoe Sports Hub. Again, we failed to envision a protected bike lane in the plans and installed parking that backs out into traffic, narrowing the road without leaving any room for bicycles, not even a white painted line. Three, safety, I didn't notice any bikes parked at the entrance. Ask yourselves, why didn't I bike here today? Was it because you don't want to share a road with a car in the dark after this meeting, when the only thing that separates you from that car speeding through the empty streets is a faded white painted line in the dark? We talk about the need for getting people out of their personal vehicles as a key way to meet our town's sustainability and climate change mitigation goals. Until people feel safe on roads, we're not going to see that 10x improvement. So I've explained, we don't have funding, we have no plans, protected bike lanes, and we're not going to meet our climate goals with regards because of safety. Solutions, currently, the town's plan is to restart the active transportation planning discussion that started in 2015 with, under Nevada County's guidance. Mayor proposes that starts, I think, in three years' time, so Mayor proposes we begin the planning now and start to find funding sources to support our plans rather than wait three years to begin that work. Or another solution, like in Berkeley, we could have a, we could create a Truckee Transportation Infrastructure Commission to permanently advise the Council on Transportation and Public Works Infrastructure Policies, facilities and services, as a way to make sure that cycling is included as a priority in our designs. Awesome. And next, you're going to hear from one of our local athletes, who very sadly was involved in a bike accident on Donner Pass Road and would have severely benefited from a protected bike lane. Thank you so much.
Nice job, Chris, right at the buzzer. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you, Chris. That was a lot, but super important stuff. My name is Harrison Beal, and bikes kind of are the focal point in my life. I work at a bike shop. I race bikes professionally. I spend about 25 hours a week on the bike. I actually started a fundraiser that benefits all of you guys, North Lake Tahoe and Reno, through bike riding. We raise money and give out free mental health care for locals in our community that need it. But last week, I was, I think, 7:30 in the morning, doing a workout, warming up through town to the main artery. I always take the road from Prosser to get out to Donner Pass Road to do intervals, riding in the bike lane, and a Truckee PUD truck didn't use a signal, cut me off, turned into the bike lane, tried to avoid it, hit the passenger side of the truck, got sucked underneath it, and the truck almost ran over, like, my hip. I started shouting. He stopped. The guy felt terrible. It was just, he wasn't quite paying attention. He was apologetic. It's all good, but I strongly believe if there was a protected bike lane, rather than the vehicle abruptly swerving into the parking lot, he would at least had to slow down, and with protected bike lanes, oftentimes, there's a little rise or a curb, or even a speed bump. So just the reduced speed of the truck, rather than swerving into the bike lane, likely would have prevented the accident, or at least slowed everything down to where I could have jumped onto the sidewalk and avoided him. But right now, there's not even paint for, for the bike lane. Yeah, so for someone like me, tons of people are commuting, it's just, it'll give, give us riders a lot more peace of mind getting to and from a workout or to and from work. So I'd be, I'd be really happy to see a protected bike lane, at least through the main stretcher road through town, where most people are getting to and from either end. But that's my story. Stoked to be here, be alive. Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Harrison. Appreciate you being here as well.
Hi, my name is Katie Mancuso, and I wanted to make a general comment about something that I think would thread very closely with any public comment relative to bike trails or building permits, or anything that anybody, any citizen in Truckee is dealing with, with the town of Truckee. And that thread is, the foundation of it is the Truckee Way, which up until now, I honestly thought it was a street down the road from my office, but it's actually a mission statement that was established when the town was incorporated decades ago, and I feel it's extremely important to reiterate these principles, as there is an overwhelming amount of citizens in this town that are very frustrated with the process and the leadership, and believe that these foundations are not being met. So in brief, just touching on some key words, because I'm assuming all of you know our mission statement, "We will treat everyone and their point of view with respect, courtesy, fairness." It speaks to creativity, innovation, conducting ourselves and the town's business to the highest ethical standards. We'll encourage free exchange of ideas, non-adversarial dispute, transparency, no personal attacks, always looking for a wise outcome and a collective agreement on how we can get to yes. Establishing trust in our working relationships. I think we can fix most problems if we can talk about them, but I know a lot of people in this community, in this working community in this town, are afraid to speak out. They fear retribution and damages and delays, because that is what is actually happening to them. I'm a real estate broker, and I've been practicing real estate and working in the development field for nearly 24 years. I received a call yesterday from a representative from our Board of Supervisors, calling me to share what an overwhelming number of constituents are reaching out to him about and asking if I'm seeing the same lamentation in Truckee. I said, wow, absolutely. I was extremely appreciative of his call, especially because it confirms what I personally am experiencing, seeing with my tenants, my friends, and my clients. So this begs the question, why are those constituents reaching out to him in the first place? Why aren't we not being heard in our own municipality? The town of Truckee is not adhering to the Truckee Way. My hope is that you recognize that the people of Truckee are suffering at the hands of the Town of Truckee staff. These are not isolated events. There are many people in all facets of our working world in Truckee that have personal experience and grievances with dealing with the town. I believe this is your responsibility, and we need to have faith in you to uphold these values. Thank you.
Thanks, Katie. Any other public comment this evening?
Hi, everybody. My name is Caroline. Nice to see a lot of you faces in here. Me and my man are design-build in this town. We love our job, but we've noticed with ourselves and a lot of our friends and our neighbors that there is a huge gross pattern of code enforcement abuse going on in this town. And I have come here in front of you before to speak about this, and I personally have done a lot of research, asked a lot of people. And Katie is referring a lot to this code enforcement scourge that is really affecting us. Now, in terms of us, we've had projects shut down for years. We've had loops and loops try to get things accomplished. We have, oh, this code, that code, the other thing. We've lost tons of money. We're finally recovering barely. We just got hit with something else we didn't know about. So that's just us. I would like you guys to separate yourselves from the staff for a moment, this town council, because your town's staff is under your control, but as far as anybody's ever seen, and I've come a couple times already, no changes have been made, and y'all are rubber stamps for this town of Truckee, code enforcement. Now, I'll tell you a little bit, a summary for the rest of us, and I know a lot of you guys are in this crowd today, and there will be more, because a lot of us are working, and I don't see them here. But our Town of Truckee staff is strangling us in code, and I mean that in the way that it makes people's lives miserable, okay? And I can't stress that enough. The time and anguish jumping through hoops to get ideas, projects accomplished, we've saw, seen our, we've seen our crews scatter, our projects delayed, we've had, it's just a pile. Everybody is trying to achieve great things in this town with their businesses, but what's happening now is code enforcement is coming after everybody for some codes we've never even heard of. We've never heard of them. Not just business owners, not just builders, but it's also homeowners, okay? Homeowners and small business owners. The town's staff code enforcement has rashed small business signage, doesn't meet code, handmade, this big, beautifully done, gone, take it down. They've shut down housing. We beg for workers' housing, and code enforcement daily is looking for people that don't have permitted rooms for rent, okay? What's the solution for affordable workers' housing? Local business owners need workers. They shut down days because they don't have them. Very suspicious, isn't it? While they're on property, the code enforcement agents, they will come and snoop around, and they will say, oh.
Thanks, Caroline.
Legal threats.
Caroline.
Legal threats.
Thank you.
Not good.
Thank you. Any other public comment this evening? No, seeing none. We will close public comment. We appreciate everybody who is here to provide that, as always. We want to hear all of those things, so thank you. With that, we have two presentations tonight. We're going to move into item 5.1. We have municipal greenhouse gas inventories. We have Aaron, who's our sustainability program manager, and Alex Workman is our Civic Sparks fellow, and I hear it is your, your, your end of your term with us here at Civic Sparks, so we appreciate everything that you've done so far, and we look forward to your presentation. Take it away, you guys.
Good evening, council. I just wanted to, before we get started, mention that tonight's presentation will be focused on emissions from our own town internal operations. We are still working on collecting all the data we need to do our community-wide greenhouse gas inventory, so we will be coming back to council sometime after the summer break with that report. But for now, we will look at our municipal operations, and I will turn it over to Alex to get started.
All right, thanks, y'all. So this inventory uses data from the town's NZERO Municipal Operations Greenhouse Gas Emissions Dashboard. The town contracted with NZERO for development of this dashboard beginning in 2022. NZERO collects data directly from utilities and supplements this with information provided by the town on fleet fuel usage, employee commutes, and waste disposal to calculate greenhouse gas emissions. They maintain a public-facing dashboard showing both annual and monthly emissions that is posted on the Keep Truckee Green website, and an internal dashboard with a greater level of detail in each emission sector. In addition to providing raw data, the NZERO contract includes analyzing the emissions data to develop customized recommendations for greenhouse gas reduction from town facilities and operations. As you can see, there's been an overall decline in greenhouse gas emissions from 2008 to 2022 from town operations. The town, as of 2022, is a quarter of the way towards its goal of reducing its greenhouse gas emissions to 80% below 2008 levels by 2040. Municipal operations emissions were broken down into four main categories to look at. These categories are buildings and facilities, vehicle fleet, employee commute, and solid waste. Buildings and facilities includes all electricity and natural gas used at Town of Truckee facilities. Vehicle fleet includes the combustion of diesel and gasoline from town vehicles. Employee commuting consists of employees commuting, and solid waste is waste generated in government operations. These were the categories chosen because the town has direct or indirect influence over these emissions categories. Town buildings and facilities was an interesting sector to examine. This sector consists of the energy used to power town buildings. The bulk of emission reduction in this sector can be attributed to the electric grid getting cleaner. In 2008, only 4.5% of the power Truckee used came from renewable sources, and 2022, that was up to 45.5%. So even though the town was using much more electricity in 2022 than it was in 2008, the emissions associated with this usage were far lower. Natural gas usage, however, has been increasing steadily since 2008, and emissions associated with its use have gone up at the same time. Additionally, some town facilities are showing the results of energy efficiency initiatives, such as Town Hall, which has seen a 30% reduction in electricity usage since 2008. The vehicle fleet and equipment sector has seen one of the most significant reductions in emissions across all of municipal operations. This has been in large part due to the introduction of renewable diesel, which has resulted in a 57% decrease in emissions when compared to regular diesel fuel. Renewable diesel was introduced in 2021, and while used for much of 2022, it was not fully integrated until 2023. Full integration of renewable diesel, along with an increase in electric vehicles and equipment, should see the town emissions continue to decrease in this sector in future years. Employee commuting emissions decreased slightly in 2022 from 2008 levels, and more significantly from 2016 levels. However, it must be noted that the data used for 2022 employee commute numbers came from a 2021 survey, which was undoubtedly impacted by COVID policies. These policies impacted the data because they resulted in more work-from-home days where employees didn't commute, and there was probably a disincentive to carpool, since some employees may not have been wanting, may not have wanted to be in confined space with others. Employee numbers have also steadily gone up for each of the years measured. If employee behaviors continue to be predominantly driving alone, this will result in an increase in future emissions for this sector. However, alternative transportation incentives, as well as the Friday work-from-home policy, have had a positive impact on reducing employee commuting and should continue to do so in the future. Government-generated solid waste primarily counts the levels of methane from landfill disposal of organic material. This sector may look like it has increased dramatically, but the methodologies that were used in calculating these numbers differed from the 2008 and 2016 inventories done by Sierra Business Council and the 2022/1 done by NZERO. Since these calculations weren't done by town staff, we can't see where and why these methodologies differ, but are investigating with NZERO. Additionally, service levels haven't changed, and moving forward, the methodologies will be consistent. This sector also accounts for only 2% of municipal emissions, meaning that these differences in methodologies haven't had an impact on overall trends. So we are currently working on the full 2022 greenhouse gas inventory report and expect this to be complete by August of 2024. We expect to be able to complete annual municipal operation greenhouse gas inventories using the NZERO platform. NZERO has completed their analysis of our facility energy use data and made specific recommendations for greenhouse gas reduction. Staff are evaluating these recommendations, but will need to fully scope out recommended projects to determine full costs and benefits. Due to staff capacity constraints, this is an anticipated start date of fiscal year 25, 26. These measures will help the town accomplish Action 7F in the town's adopted Climate Action Plan, which call for retrofits of existing town facilities to improve energy efficiency, increase renewable energy generation, and the phase-out of natural gas use to the greatest extent possible. Thank you, and we're happy to take any questions you have.
Thank you, Alex, for your first and last presentation in front of us. Thank you. We'll hold off on questions. We'll let Jen do her town manager report, and then we'll come back, and if there's any questions for, for both of you, we'll do it at the same time.
Great, thank you. Just a couple of announcements tonight. A reminder for everybody that we are not having council meetings in July this year. That is to give the community council staff a break from having to pay attention to everything that's going on, so we hope that you enjoy that. Staff will be working regular hours during the week, though, so we are still open for phone drop-in if you have questions or need assistance. Tomorrow is Join Us for Bike Everywhere Day in honor of our Bike Month. You can get a lot of great information on that at keeptruckergreen.org, and follow the path to Bike Month. Also, wanted to thank Placer County, and for anybody that did not hear yet today, Placer County voted 5-0 to support joining the JPA for the new library and for expanding the ballot measure potentially that will go forward in the future into the Marthis Valley, including North Star. So that's a big movement forward for the potential new library that's being considered. And then, that's all of my announcements tonight, so I'm going to wrap up quickly. I know we have a busy agenda. We do have some hard copies of the presentation that we just received for your first discussion item. I'm going to pass those to Councilmember Romack, so she can pass them down.
Great, thank you. Any council member questions on either of the presentations? Go ahead, Councilmember Romack.
Just a quick question on the commuting. Carpool was a choice drive alone. If anyone took transit, would that be counted as carpooling?
So there's other portions of the chart, so like, you see bike portion of the year 16%, carpool portion of the year 7, and then motorcycle.
I don't believe in this survey, we had anyone choose transit as a response, so we will see if that changes moving forward.
Thank you.
We'll stick with this slide for now. I think absolutely we want to get that granular level, and also, in, so, yeah, as you mentioned, that in 2016, we didn't have any work-from-home policy. Now we have a regular every Friday, but that probably wasn't fully reflected in this because it wasn't in effect in 2022, or only partially. So that'll, in the next update, we'll see more information on that. If you go back, I think, the slide before on the buildings? Right, this one. So remind me when the town, I'm assuming, anyway, this difference between 2016 and the uptick includes the onlining of the corp yard buildings? Is that why that created an uptick? created an uptick?
That may be one reason. These numbers are not weather-normalized, too, so there are variations year-to-year for energy use that are just weather-related, depending on how cold our winters are in particular.
Right, that would be, it would be interesting to see these in other ways, like an energy use index by each building by each year, if that's possible in the future.
Yes, the full report that Alex is working on will have facility-level detail for energy use.
Energy use indexing, okay, excellent. And the last one, I'm going to the waste slide. So this is really fascinating, because during this period of time, we have onlined a lot of food diversion policies. We've incorporated composting stations into town, so none of that was really captured, or that's kind of what you're trying to figure out with NZERO?
We're still investigating exactly what's responsible for the difference. This should just be accounting for the waste generated by our town facilities and not public litter cans or the public drop-off bins for food scraps. So we do think that there's just using perhaps a different waste characterization study or something similar to that, but we, since we didn't have the raw data that went into their calculations, we're working with them to investigate. But as Alex said, it's a small overall contribution to our inventory.
Awesome. Well, overall, it's very nice to see us moving in the right direction. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Zabriski, any comments on the presentations? Great. And Councilmember Henderson?
No further questions, thank you.
Great. Thank you. So we're going to open public comment on the presentations. Any public comment on the presentations? Negative, great. Closing public comment, and we will move on. Thank you very much for being here, we appreciate that. We'll move on to our consent calendar. Item 6.1, minutes of June 11. 6.2, minor update to the town's public improvement and engineering standards. 6.3, amending the GAN appropriations limit for fiscal year 2425. 6.4, the Truckee Home Access Program update and Housing Inc. contract amendment. And we did get a public comment on that one, thank you. 6.5, rooted renters program guidelines revision. 6.6, approval of the MOU with the Truckee Police Officers Association, and all sorts of updated amendments to that. 6.7, adoption of the updated personnel rules effective June 2024. 6.8, update to the town's conflict of interest code. 6.9, amend the Town of Truckee reserve and designation policy.
Mayor Polovy?
Yes, do I need to read 6.6?
You need to read the salary changes, please.
I had a feeling you were going to tell me that. Okay, I'll go back to that in one moment. 6.9, amend the Town of Truckee reserve and designation policy. 6.10, consideration of the new opioid settlement with Kroger. 6.11, quarterly fiscal year 2324 through fiscal 2425 strategic work plan update. 612, the Wildland Protection Agreement for 2024 to 2025, which was absolutely fascinating. Thank you for that staff report. And I'm going back to 6.6, the approval of the memorandum of understanding with the Truckee Police Officers Association, adoption of the updated fiscal year 2324 wage matrix, adoption of the updated fiscal year 2425 wage matrix, authorizing the town manager to amend the contracts with the department head team, and update to the town manager and town attorney's pay. Any member of the council wish to pull anything from consent?
Hey, I'm sorry, Dave, can you actually read out the salary figures?
Oh, like the entire thing?
Yeah, it's unfortunately a quirk of the law.
Yeah, yeah, no worries.
The numbers have to be said.
So the recommended action for 6.6 is, that council, 1, approve the memorandum of understanding with the Truckee Police Officers Association for the period beginning July 1, 2024, to June 30, 2027. 2, approve resolution 2024-40, providing a 5% cost of living adjustment to town manager Jennifer Callaway, resulting in an annual pay amount of $244,907.48, and to town attorney Andy Morris, resulting in an annual pay amount of $244,943.79, effective the first full pay period in July 2024. 3, authorize the town manager to amend the contracts with the town's unrepresented employees, department heads. 4, approve resolution 2024-41, adopting the updated Town of Truckee Wage Matrix retroactively effective June 23, 2024, pursuant to the requirements of the California Code of Regulations Title II, Section 570.5. And number 5, approve resolution 2024-46, adopting the Town of Truckee Wage Matrix effective July 1, 2024, pursuant to the requirements of the California Code of Regulations Title II, Section 570.5. We got there. All right. Any member of council want to pull anything from consent? Staff pulling anything from consent?
No, mayor.
Any member of the public want to pull anything from consent? Great. Seeing done. Vice Mayor Zabriski?
I move we approve the consent calendar.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Councilmember O'Mac seconded. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Thank you. Any opposed? Seeing none. Consent carries. Thank you very much for bearing with that one. Okay, we're on to our first appeal of the evening. This is, I'm going to repeat myself a couple times, but here's how this is going to work. This is item 7.1, Appeal of the Pioneer Commerce Center Building K4 Boat Storage Building Planning Application 2024 dash, lots of zeros and a 78, APN 019-700-02510730, Pioneer Trail. The way this is going to work is, we have 15, we're going to have 15 minutes from the appellant. We will bring it back to any council discussion and/or questions for staff, clarifying questions. We will then open public comment. We will be keeping all of these times super tight. Public commenters will each have three minutes. You will get closed off after three minutes. The appellant will then have a five-minute response time to any of the council discussion or any of the public comments that occur. After that five minutes, appellant is done, and it will come back to council for any additional questions and/or comments. Everybody is good on that. Go ahead, Vice Mayor Zabriski, start us off, please. You have a disclosure.
Yeah, I need to do a disclosure on two items relating to potential disqualification. First, I, my stepson, Mike Brown, is an attorney, a partner with Stoll Reeves Council for the appellant. Secondly, I have had conversations regarding the case with the appellant himself, Zero Man Cuso, back on March 6, with our chief building officer, Mike Ross, I think within the last few weeks, and then with Mike Brown intermittently. In terms of the substance of those conversations, in a much more general way than what appeared in the administrative record and the staff report, staff report captures much more specifically what was told to me generally.
Great, thank you. Any other council disclosures or anything like that? Great, we will get going. We have Danielle, who's our community development director. We have Josh Nelson, Best Best, and Krieger as well. Sorry, thank you. We have Andy here, we have Jenna, we have Mike Ross, our chief building official. And with that, I'm going to hand it over to Kristin Castanos of Stoll Reeves, right?
Yeah, mayor, just a couple of other items.
Well, then my notes are out of order, so I apologize.
Couple of other items. We have Kellen here. He's online, he's with BBK as well.
Okay.
And BBK, Josh, and Kellen are representing the staff and advising staff. Mr. Morris is advising you as the council, so he has been separated from the staff conversations, did not review the staff report or that level of detail.
So we're doing a staff report first? Go ahead.
Sorry if that was confusing. I had it on the screen so that the audience could follow along. We're going to keep our presentation to just around 15 minutes tonight to ensure that we have adequate time for the council to consider this. What I'll start with is sort of a summary of the appeal request. We'll get into a little bit of the detail, but a lot of it's in the staff report, and in 15 minutes, we can't cover everything, so we'll allow for plenty of time for question and answer if we need to. With the appeal, the appellant is requesting that the town council find that there is a valid land use application, planning application 201635, and that that remains in effect. They're requesting that council overturn the community development director's determination that there are no valid land use permits, and make a determination that the new land use permit, a new one, is not required. That council find that staff failed to provide the appellant due process rights, and that delays caused by staff constitute temporary takings, and that council find staff's proposed remedy for demolition and deconstruction of the unpermitted work violates state law, state policy on not creating excessive waste. Just so that we're all talking about the same location, this is Pioneer Commerce Center, located off of Pioneer Trail. It's part of the industrial land use designation in the general plan and part of the manufacturing zoning district. I put on here "plan development" because that is a unique aspect of Pioneer Commerce Center, is that back in the early 2000s, when it was submitted, it was a comprehensive project, which is what we consider plan development. So all of it looked at and viewed together as one master plan project. And with that, some requests to reduce, like scenic corridor standards and allowances for uses that wouldn't have normally been allowed in the manufacturing zoning district, in part to incentivize relocation of businesses in other parts of the community to this area, to kind of promote this as an industrial business park, but then also to allow for mixed uses that are more commercial. And that's really what it's transformed into today. The project site that we're talking about is shown on the screen in the red box. So as I mentioned, the first planning application came in in the year 2000, and that was for all 11 buildings, A through K, shown on the map here. It was proposed and approved as two phases, which you can kind of roughly see in the map, and that approval expired in 2005. And the staff report does go into quite a bit of detail of the past land use approvals. There were five that were reviewed and considered by the planning commission. None of those had phasing approved as part of those. So why are we here today? Sort of what's the background and timeline for getting us here? There was a new land use application submitted in August for processing, and at that time, we had already seen a building permit come through, that when it came through, we realized that there hadn't been an approved land use application. And so the building permit staff were not able to accept it, which is why the subsequent land use application came in. As part of that, staff worked to put it on the most nearest available agenda that we had, which ended up being October because of the timing of when the application came in, when it was deemed complete, and then also the availability of the agendas that we had. So it was about a two-month turnaround for that. On October 16, when staff were out doing a different inspection, they observed that there was unpermitted construction and issued a stop-work order, different staff, on October 17. That happened to be the day of the planning commission, so as part of the director's ability under the development code, there's the section, which I cite on the screen here, that states that violations have to be corrected before any land use permit can be approved. And that's a shall in the code. And so the recommendation that we made to the planning commission was to consider the continuance of that land use permit because of the unpermitted work that was discovered. So essentially allowing the staff time to work through and kind of figure out the unpermitted work before the planning commission was going to take action on the land use permit. On October 18, Mike and I met with Mr. Man Cuso to kind of talk about the timeframes, construction, kind of do an observation. And then we kind of had a lot of back and forth of what I put on here, just termed investigation, of just sort of us fact-finding and figuring out what's going on kind of between October and November. And then eventual notification by the building official that the vertical portion of the structure would be, need to be deconstructed. Additional timeframes include some correspondence in writing from Mr. Man Cuso and his attorney, and then there was also correspondence with the town manager, myself. So a lot of back and forth kind of in the history and the timeframe of this, but ultimately, the town filed a complaint with the contractor's licensing board. We issued, I issued, a notice of violation, which resulted in an appeal. And that first notice of violation was an informal notice of violation, which is part of the town's standard procedures and our code compliance manual that we actually use for our code compliance approach. And then we did a formal notice in order to abate, which then created this secondary appeal. But specifically to what's raised in the appeal, the subject of the valid land use permit and kind of vested rights, staff spent a lot of time, and I'll give this credit to Jenna, because she really did spend a lot of time on this, going through the full history. So reading every single pass approval, every single staff report, every resolution, all the conditions. And at this point, in the history that we've accumulated for that, the applicant acknowledged that the permit from 2005 expired in their application they submitted in 2016, and that although they had requested a 10-year timeframe in 2016, it was not considered by the planning commission. There wasn't anything in the planning commission's adopted resolution that talked about any kind of extended timeframe beyond what's listed in the development code. So it was not approved by the planning commission. So there was no timely appeal filed in July. There was no appeal filed, this is a little bit out of order, but from the 2016 one, their subsequent 2023 submittal, and there wasn't an extension filed either. So it's still staff's opinion at this point that there is not a valid land use permit. Secondary issue of failure to provide due process rights delays constituting temporary takings, and I mentioned this earlier in the presentation, that it was two months, which in the processing timeframes that planning staff are facing right now, including scheduling with the planning commission, are averaging more in the six-to-nine month range. So this was considered a more minor review at the time because it had already been through planning commission review before. But again, August was not a feasible option, and October was the one that was available. Just kind of big picture, so that the community understands, our code compliance approach, and this has been this way since I've been at the town, is really about voluntary compliance and accomplishing community goals. So anytime there's a code compliance case, they're looked at for the specifics of that case. And although we have a manual and we have process and procedures that are available to us as tools, each project is considered different, and there's different circumstances. So what may be applicable in one case may not be totally applicable in another case because every circumstance is different. So that was, that was the approach in kind of talking through this particular case, too, because the town staff had never experienced a project of this nature before. For violation of state law and state policy about not creating excessive waste, we actually contacted, Mike contacted the state licensing board and had a conversation with them, and the feedback that we got was that it's not applicable to unpermitted construction. So I understand that there's concern about removal of a foundation that's been installed without permits and sort of the impact of that, but in our perspective, this is not an applicable section to apply in consideration of the appeal. In addition, the appellant's requesting that council direct staff to withdraw both the notice of violation and the notice in order to abate. So these are, again, part of our standard code compliance process that we use. If we get to a point where we don't feel like we're having conversations that are, you know, kind of making progress, this isn't a situation where we would have applied $100 fine. That would never resulted in any change in sort of the conversation. Sometimes that helps in code compliance, sometimes it doesn't. And that's at the discretion of the code compliance officer to kind of use the variety of tools that are available to them to resolve issues. And I did pull out here sort of, you know, why are we having this conversation to some degree? It's because code compliance's role is really to look up and protect public health and safety, and same as what the building department does. And it's a difficult job because at times, you know, people don't necessarily want to work with you or have voluntary compliance, but I think overall, the town's had success in having people kind of understand the benefits of working with the town, especially when it comes to something where there's a violation of a code regulation. And it is in the code compliance mission statement that we have to promote a safe, healthy environment by seeking and achieving compliance with codes ordinances that positively affect the quality of life for residents and visitors alike. So that's always the approach that's taken by the town. We've never been a stringent enforcement regulation. We don't lean properties. We, we really do try in our best to res- We, we really do try in our best to resolve things, particularly at the staff level if we can. Some other things that staff wanted to raise as part of this is that there continues to not be a valid building permit. This work that was done for this project at this point was initiated prior to when the building permit was submitted, based on all of staff's review of all the information that we have. The work was initiated prior to staff's determination on the land use permit also. So I think that's just facts for us to kind of identify as part of this of, you know, why is staff concerned at this point? Like, why are we at this point? This slide is sort of a culmination of things that we've been considering as part of this appeal process, that we do have two code enforcement officers who are wholly dedicated to working on projects and issues that come up within the community. But about 80% of their work right now is really dealing with unpermitted construction. And it comes in a lot of forms between, I would say the majority right now is unpermitted ADUs, it's decks, it's kind of remodel projects that are often discovered by either someone buying a property or there's a neighborhood complaint filed. That's the majority of how the town finds out about them. But we do have concern that there could be a continuing increase in this if there isn't a way for code to kind of identify and work with property owners on resolving these issues. It's also challenging that a decision for unpermitted construction for a non-residential building, which is something I would say unprecedented that we haven't seen before, puts a lot of expectation on the chief building official to determine at this point, you know, what is safe, what is consistent with building code. And there hasn't been a building permit submitted at this point. So the building official cannot make that determination until there's available information to consider, which is what you would get with a building permit process. We're being asked in this appeal process to rely on professionals who did not honor the proper process as required by their licenses, and that causes us concern. This is a large industrial building. This is not a homeowner that made a mistake. Determining if work done to code in light of lack of proper permits and inspections is an additional concern that we have. And ideally, we would not want to be in this situation. We wish that there could have been resolution, and I think that the staff had worked as best we could to try and come up with alternatives, to use the creativity and find solutions that wouldn't have resulted us being here today. But this is where we are. And our recommendation is that council adopt resolution 202443, and uphold the director's actions and issue a revised notice in order. That's the end of my presentation, and I'm going to switch over to the appellant's presentation so that we can work on that one. And I don't know if we want to use the clicker for that one, if you want me to push the slides forward.
Thank you, Danielle, who's going to be giving the appellant presentation. We'll get you going in just a moment. Let's get that loaded. Do you guys want your own clicker?
I don't. I'll have to ask you to click through the slide for me, please.
We got you, sir. And you guys have 15 minutes. And Sarah, we're good on the timer?
Yeah.
All right. You guys ready? Take it away.
Honorable Mayor, Mayor Polavy and the members of the town council, my name is Cyril Mancuso. I'd like to introduce my technical and engineering team, Brandon Helms with Maple Brook Engineering, a structural engineer, Bill Quiznell, which most of you know, is with acumen engineering, and he is a civil engineer. And our other specialist is Brian Walker from Striplin Walker Construction, a metal building specialist. My legal counsel, Mike Brown from Stole Reeves is also present. I've been developing real estate in the town of Truckee and working collaboratively with the town since 2000. Unfortunately, the current notice in order to abate marks a significant break in that relationship, which we hope you will help us get back on track. I have read and reviewed the staff report related to this hearing. I have watched staff present their side of the argument. I feel like the direction the town staff has taken on this issue is more an indictment of my character rather than a rational and objective approach to solving the problem. I'm not here to argue the legal issues, and I do not believe this is the forum for making them. That is better left to a judge and jury in a court of law. I have no intention of engaging in litigation. I believe it is better to make my appeal to you as the elected officials representing the best interests of the citizens of the town of Truckee. I also want to summarize for you what this appeal is about. This appeal is about my challenge to the town's punitive abatement order that is wasteful and serves no legitimate purpose. It requires the demolition of millions of dollars of improvements of a concrete slab and steel frame building that is built per plans and specifications. I've brought my engineering team here today who can confirm this and answer any questions that you may have in their field. And this appeal is not about what permits are required. I have always, always fully intended to obtain all permits required by the town, but in this process, I have not been allowed to do so. Before I get started with my personal appeal to you, I want to take you through a brief history of my working with the town. The staff made a good chronological explanation in their staff report of all the land use hearings and dates associated with them where my projects were heard and approved. However, no mention was made of the results and accomplishments of my efforts, nor the benefit to the people of the town of Truckee. I want to point out to you the facts and the truth behind my reputation as a 24-year developer in Truckee that is being so grossly impugned to the council and to the residents of Truckee. Next slide, please. My first slide is an aerial photograph from 2000 showing the land upon which Pioneer Commerce Center was developed and the condition of the property prior to my development. Notice that geographically, it was the first introduction to town for traffic approaching from the east. The site at that time posed very negative perception of Truckee. This segment of Interstate 80 was designated scenic corridor. What you observed was a junkyard with 13 railroad car, boxcars, and old elaborated lumber mill, old discarded freeway signs, a mixture of double wide trailers, non-code compliant buildings, concrete batch plant, derelict deposits, including trucks and tractors abandoned for years, a gross representation of the character of Truckee. Incorporation of the town was driven by another project. Kmart proposed along I-80 that was not representative to the character of Truckee. I took this as a challenge, and I started the development process in 2000. Next slide, please. This aerial photo was taken of the overall Pioneer Commerce Center project from the west looking east. Notice I-80, PCC south the Pioneer Trail, PCC north the Pioneer Trail, and Truckee Industrial Park north of that. And in the foreground, Pioneer Industrial Park. Next slide, please. The next slide is an aerial photo of the Spring Creek subdivision, yet another public benefit. This affordable housing project was developed solely to help the town solve their housing requirements at the time. All of the above comprise in excess of over 200 permits to the town. All were permitted, constructed, and received certificates of occupancy and placed into use. Next slide, please. Next slide is the timeline of nearly all of my developments in Truckee. Showing elements of the town's staff report for this hearing, but also points out numerous public benefits that my projects have provided in perpetuity to the residents of Truckee. Those include affordable housing, construction and dedication of Pioneer Trail, thousands of feet of multipurpose trails. I gave land and easement for Comstock Road and dedicated that portion to the town. This benefited Aldridge Creek School, Truckee Fire District, and completed the road network in this area. Dedicated the two acre sledding hill behind MacGyver Dairy to the town for uses of public park. widened Pioneer Trail along the Pioneer East Project opposite CHP compound, built sidewalks and surrounding trails and dedicated to the town, all at my expense. And then there are many intrinsic benefits to the town of Truckee that are a result of all this development. I, along with my team, have created a place where hundreds of tenants and property owners of Truckee can operate at a reasonable cost in a code compliant environment. My focus was to take a piece of land that was a scar on Truckee and make it into a vibrant community. And I believe that I have succeeded. Next slide, please. Now I want to talk about the boat storage. I would like to emphasize the configuration of the boat storage parcel. You will see in this slide that K1, 2, and 3 are all in service, and the K4 pad is clearly established. I would like to ask, can you imagine anything else in place of where the current steel structure stands? Next slide, please. This slide represents a timeline from when Lot C Architecture on my behalf submitted a complete application for a building permit on K4 on July 6, 2004. I'm sorry, 2023, 11 days short of one year from today, that they've had the plans for the buildings that they claim they do not have. Leading up to this point, I received the first land use entitlements for the boat storage parcel in 2000 that approved one large building for boat storage. I went back to the planning commission in 2005 with a revision and a new configuration for five separate boat storage buildings, still on one parcel. I built the first building, K2, in 2006, at which time I constructed all of the underground infrastructure to support the five buildings. I built K1 in 2012. I went back to the planning commission in 216 with a revision that eliminated building K5 and modified the size of K4. I built K3 in 2018 and installed the paving for the bounds of the parcel around the established pad for K4. Next slide, please. This slide is the same slide you've previously seen presented by the town. Mike Ross points out that there were markings made on June 23, 2023. He alleges that on June 24, there was excavation equipment, and that we started doing excavation then, before the permit was submitted. I can tell you, this is purely conjecture with no basis. We were waiting on final plans from the engineer, which we immediately submitted on July 6. I am stating that is when excavation started. That was another attack on my character. I don't think the history shown represents anything but transparency and commitment to follow the rules. The boat storage parcel is completely fenced, and as I mentioned, all infrastructure, paving, underground fire hydrant has been in place for years. Now, if you look at this timeline, the graph clearly shows that I was operating under the assumption that the land use entitlements had not expired. There was no intent on my part to go through this project without obtaining the proper permits. I actually believe that the land use permit was valid. Next slide, please. This slide represents the complex timeline required for the procurement, design, and construction of a prefabricated metal building. Notice, I started working on this in the fall of 2021. This clearly shows all the steps involved. There's a lot of preliminary work to be done for years prior to erection of the steel, much different than a site-built project. Next slide, please. Please take the time to review this letter I wrote to Danielle Nishimori after she had informed me that the existing development permit had expired. Notice in the letter, I asserted that Danielle had the authority, as given in the resolution by the planning commission, to recognize that the permit should not be deemed expired. The letter represents a turning point. The trajectory of this project was extremely affected by the decision Danielle Nishimori made. We would not be here today had the planning department team chosen to make the right decision after all. Nothing had changed, and I do not believe that by deeming this expired, anything changed about the permit not being appropriate, or that it would be considered disallowed in a new hearing. In my opinion, this is either a failure of the system, or it is a failure of this discretionary authority given to the community development director. This contradicts the intent and the spirit of the Truckee way. As my appeal letter explains, the code supports the conclusion that my development permit had not expired, and the town should interpret the code to take into account the realities of recessions, pandemics, and things beyond our control that impact timelines. Next slide, please. This slide represents Danielle's response to my letter. On August 1, the community development director responded in disagreement, yet represented that the path to a planning commission hearing and approval would be quick and easy, and assured me that I would be on the next available planning commission agenda. Relying on the statements made by Danielle, I acquiesced to her findings. I was never told I could file an appeal. On August 3, 2023, three days later, we submitted a complete application and paid the $9,000 fee once again. The staff had all that they needed to prepare for a planning commission hearing. I believe the staff failed to act in good faith, consistent with the representation made by Danielle in her email to me. Planning failed to get my project on the August and September planning commission agenda. Staff stated that those hearings were fully booked. That is not proven by the record. The record clearly shows that those hearings could have easily accommodated my project. We were finally placed on the October 17 planning commission agenda, two days past the grading deadline for the 2023 construction season. During that time, from the submittal of plans until the date of stop work order, there were several events that occurred in my mind and gave rise to my decisions to continue with the construction. Among them, I had 19 loads of steel that were strewn all over the parking lot of Pioneer Commerce Center at the extreme inconvenience of the tenants. This was the last of the Pioneer Commerce Center development, and we had no more space to store the steel. The steel was also going to be an impediment for snow removal for safe access in the winter. When I did not get on the September commission hearing, I decided I needed to put up the steel in the air so I could possibly get this project done before winter set in. I also felt like seeing the steel 50 feet in the air, the code enforcement and building division would see this and take some action to move this project forward. That was a gross underestimation on my expectation that the town was here to work with me and not against me. As to this appeal, I oppose staff's order to demolish a partially constructed building and foundation abatement that I consider a vindictive remedy that is not supported by law or any legitimate objective. Notwithstanding the waste that would occur by demolishing the otherwise acceptable construction, it would also contribute to greenhouse gas by requiring construction crews to travel to the site, operate heavy equipment, cranes, excavators, loaders, forklifts, to deconstruct the building. And then the demolished concrete, 1,000 tons of concrete and 25 tons of number six rebar, plus unusable damaged steel would need to be delivered to a landfill willing to accept it. It is estimated by professionals that hauling the concrete material away would exceed 66 dump truck loads to the landfill. I have provided reports from three engineers and a licensed steel erection contractor to the town that the improvements are constructed per plans and specifications. My engineers have stated in writing that the demolition of the steel structure has the potential to present unsafe and dangerous conditions to the ironworkers, and could also result in damage to the steel materials, rendering them unusable for reconstruction. On October 17, 2023, I was on the job site and was approached by two building code staff and was handed a stop work order. Later that day, I attended the scheduled planning commission hearing. Staff report recommended approval. There was no opposition to this project. Staff abruptly pulled the item from agenda, stating the code did not allow her to have the commission consider the matter.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, but that was 15 minutes, and you knew that's how much time you had. So I'm going to interrupt you, and we're going to bring it back to council for discussion.
With all due respect.
With all due respect, Mayor Polavy, the timer wasn't even run for the town council's presentation.
It was 13 minutes.
For what? We don't have a timed presentation. It's 15 minutes, and those are the rules. Mr. Brown, Mr. Mancuso, we appreciate it. We've heard it, we've seen it, and we have a full report, and we have your report right here. You will have five more minutes to reply. Thank you. Thank you.
You made a request for extra time that was never responded to.
Yeah, I don't know where that went.
Really? Okay.
Thanks also. We're also going to keep this pretty civil. And if there's interruptions, we'll just take a break, and we'll just keep taking breaks and reconvening and taking breaks and reconvening if we need to. We're going to adhere to the time that's been set forth. We're going to adhere to the time that's been set forth. The appellant has been made 1,000% clear exactly how much time they have in numerous communications prior to this hearing today. So I'm going to respect everybody's time for that purpose and I'm sorry if that doesn't work for you, but that's how we got to go. So with that, thank you. We're going to bring it back for any clarifying questions on either the appellant's presentation, on staff's presentation. And Vice Mayor Zabriski, are you ready to start? Go ahead.
Mr. Mancuso.
And you'll have an opportunity, if we have questions for you, please come on up to the podium and you'll be able to answer questions as they come out if they're addressed to you.
I respect that and I appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Mancuso.
I have some questions for Mr. Mancuso or if he has someone he would like to delegate who can better answer the questions.
Thank you, Mr. Zabriski. It depends on the question. I've got my consultants here and depending on the question, I can either answer or they can't. Is that fair enough?
I believe you said demolition would cost millions of dollars? Did I misunderstand?
No, I said there were millions of dollars already invested into this project.
Could you break that down a little more specifically for me? Start with the concrete slab.
Okay, the concrete slab consists of about 500 cubic yards of concrete.
Do you have a financial number?
That's about $250,000.
Total?
For the concrete.
And then the labor?
And the labor is another 200,000 and then the steel is about 60,000.
Any other costs associated with the installation of the slab and the steel?
Some excavation costs and, you know, my time is free. I have to supervise.
Okay, you said that the concrete and the steel were installed according to specifications. Whose specifications?
We followed the plans, the same plans that were submitted to the town, designed and implemented by Brendan Helms, our licensed structural engineer. He has done about 20 buildings for me. We've never had a foundation fail and I have personally built 350,000 square feet of these buildings and I consider myself an expert and I was there every day for it. Understand, we retain our properties so we don't cut corners. We do first-class construction and we have done it and we on 20 buildings and we've never had a failure.
Okay, but I'm just focused right now on the specifications. You said they were done according to earlier specifications done by Helms?
According to the building code, I can let Mr. Helms answer that question better if you'd like.
Okay, I still have more questions for you.
Go ahead. Hit some whatever point.
And then you said the steel itself costs $60,000.
No, that was the rebar, the reinforcing steel bars in the foundation. I didn't get to the building yet.
Okay, let's talk about the steel framework. How much did that cost, labor and materials?
We got 19 loads of steel and the steel framework, the cost of that was, well, our last bill, and I just looked at it, that it was paid was $1,956,000 and I believe we had had over $100,000 on deposit before that.
So to the best of your recollection?
Around 2,050,000 total.
On the steel?
Yes, not including the labor to erect it.
And then you mentioned on July 6th, building plans were submitted and then they were rejected on July 10th, correct?
No, they were just, I was just told that the land use permits had expired.
And then you did the concrete pour after that?
No, we did the, yes, we did the concrete pour after that. You're correct.
Okay. And then, did you ask anyone from the town to appear for the concrete pour?
No, I did not.
Okay. And then was there an engineer on site during the concrete pour?
I was on site and I furnished photographs of every step of the way, very detailed, to Mr. Helms, who's a structural engineer and drew the plans and normally because of the size of this project and the unusual nature of the size of the project, those inspections are best done by a licensed engineer.
Okay. I saw that there had been a request for documents reflecting the actions of a deputy inspector who was going to be present for the pours and it was requiring testing at different stages of the pours. Are you familiar with that?
Yes, we followed that.
And was that information ever documented? That action ever documented?
I don't believe so, but most of that was done by me personally.
Okay. And then there had been, the town had made an offer asking you to dismantle the steel and conduct core testing. Do you recall that?
They hadn't really required core testing. That was an option that can, I always had those options on the table. We never got to much detail. I, because at that point, nobody was asking to have the slab and the foundation removed and we didn't go that far. However, they were given all the concrete test reports for that particular PSI of a pour. We're required to have 2,500 PSI in the foundation. We use 3,000 PSI. We're required to have 3,500 PSI concrete for the slab. We use 4,000 PSI. We did, in fact, we were provided with concrete test results from those particular pour formulas for the whole year from TNT Materials for every project they did that year and none of them had failed.
Did you ever determine how much it would cost to do the core testing that was being requested by the town?
I did not and I can't tell you with any degree of certainty how much that would be, but I expect that would be under $20,000.
Okay. The staff has pointed out that no construction sequencing was done or at least it wasn't documented. Are you familiar with that?
No, I've built 20 of these buildings in Truckee as well as many other residential permits and we've never had a requirement for construction sequencing. And quite frankly, I've talked to my team about that. They don't even really know what it's about and they've been on hundreds if not thousands of projects and that's never been the case, especially in a steel, a steel building.
That's fine. Are you familiar with torque sequencing?
Yes, I am.
Okay, and was that done in this case?
No, can I explain why?
You may.
Okay. Torque sequencing is done when the building is completely erected. There are no, this building is much different than like a house. If somebody goes and wants to build in addition to their house and they do some framing and put a header above the window and then they go to the lumber company and they don't have a 6x12, so they take an 8x12. That's not the case with these buildings. Every single piece of this building is pre-manufactured in a large state-of-the-art facility where it's precision. It's all fits together perfectly if you put it upright. And what happens? These buildings act as a whole, as a moment and when they're, all the pieces are interconnected and all the pieces are calculated to perform in unison together. So the local, the building official does not do those inspections. This amount of steel that is up there is not ready for an inspection yet because, and it's only ready to be inspected when the whole thing gets together. That's when you torque down the buildings because you want to leave the bolts a little bit loose so there's movement to get the pieces together. So, does that answer your question?
Yeah, thank you. Was any crush testing done on the concrete?
It was done on, by TNT Materials, they have all their concrete crushed tested and I gave those to the, to Mike Ross, the chief building official.
Okay. My only, my last question on this side is the one going back to the plans, the specifications, where those came from?
Okay, I'll let, I'd like to introduce Brendan Helms.
Thank you.
Maple Brook Engineering.
One clarification first, I'm a PE, not an SE. But all of my work is involved with structures and this, the scope of this building does not require an SE.
Does not require what?
An SE stamp. There's two different kinds of stamps.
This has to do with your expired stamp? Are you the one that had the expired stamp?
I don't have an expired stamp. If you look at the timeline of the project, the plans that we submitted, that we sent to Ciro were dated in June. My stamp was due for renewal June 30th of 2023. And then, so the plan, the date on the plans and the stamp on the plans are all consistent with that expiration date. After those plans were issued by our office, my stamp was then renewed. It's a very simple process to verify that my stamp is in, is current in good standing. I could pull it up on my phone if you, if you need verification.
That's fine. Just tell me about these specifications. See, I understand these specifications have never been approved by the town, so I'm trying to get a sense of where they come from, when were they prepared? What were the, what, how did you assure that they were in compliance with the code?
Okay, so I'll back up a little bit and if it's too remedial, you can stop me. But the way a pre-engineered steel building works is that an owner will make a deposit and the staff at the steel building engineers, including, or the steel building engineers with this pre-engineered build, steel building company will design the frame of the building and they'll provide reactions for the different columns within the building, whether they're just the typical bent frames or if they're moment frames or portal frames or whatever. We take those reactions, once we get those, and I received those reactions late May 2023. And then we'll design footings, we'll consider the downward force of the soil pressure under the footing, we'll consider any uplift force, overturning force. And so we design these footings, they turn out to be very large footings with a lot of reinforcement in them and we design the anchors for the anchor bolts. All of that's done in accordance with ACI, the American Concrete Institute, which is referenced by the current CBC code.
And when was all this done?
This was all done in early June 2023.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Ross, did staff receive the crush reports?
No, to answer your question, what we received were invoices for the concrete from TNT that merely indicated what PSI rating. I do recall that there were 30 to 39 trucks at 3,000 PSI and 19 trucks of 4,000 PSI. But no actual deputy inspection had been, had been performed for that placement, which the code requires unless otherwise approved during a plan check process, which we could have made heads or tails of at that stage. Does that answer your question?
And was core testing ever done?
Not to my knowledge. I have not received anything from a deputy inspector. To clarify, the deputy inspector on site is going to look at the placement of any concrete 2,500 PSI or greater. In the course of that placement, they're going to verify vibing, ensuring the fact that you're getting adequate coverage around the reinforcement. They are going to take cylinder tests as the trucks come in. It will go through at that point upon the completion of the pour, a seven, a 14, and sometimes a 28 day to find out first when it's going to come up to a full compressive strength.
On the steel framing, in your answer to one of the written council questions, you talked about construction sequencing. What I'm hearing from the appellant is they haven't reached that stage of construction. Do you know what part of construction sequencing should have already been done and observed?
Well, this is something that would have began been done if we had gone through an adequate plan review process. These are conditions and questions that I go through during a plan check condition. I can't say in two years of being here what the common practice was. I can tell you, 42 years' experience, 20 as a contractor, well, within the field, and another 22 in the public sector, several jurisdictions down south, this is a common practice that I've gone through and I've never seen change outside of coming up here to Truckee.
Is there anything that could be done after the fact to determine whether the steel installation is safe?
That is something I cannot make a determination until I actually get the plans, verify the calculations, ensure the fact that it's complying with current provisions, no disrespect to the council or to the design professionals in question. Again, once I do that, the common practice for after-the-fact work will usually be to get together with the design professionals to come up with a determination, if anything, that could be retained at that time.
Okay. Those are all my questions.
And we can come back to you as more arrives if we need to. Councilmember Kloostad, any additional questions right now?
Oh, a few. I'll go ahead and start with Mr. Mancuso, if you would, please. So I re-watched the October 23rd planning commission meeting today and do you recall attending that?
I do.
And do you recall what you said in that meeting where you basically stated you, you agreed that you were beginning construction without a permit and you took full responsibility?
I do.
So with the 24-year experience of constructing in Truckee, you were well aware of the codes and laws that we require here?
Yes, I was.
And so you're aware you were in violation of those?
Yes, I'm aware, yes.
Okay. Have you proceeded with construction without permits in the past?
No. I was never put in this position.
Thank you, Mr. Mancuso.
You're welcome.
May I speak with Brendan Helms? So Brendan, I work in the construction field and I understand it's great when you can go up in, for 1,000 PSI. It does help bring up the strength more quickly and can support a faster construction, but it does not, but my question to you is, even that increased PSI, if it was not properly vibrated or the rebar was not properly tied or supported or blocked, that, that foundation could be faulty and fail, would it not, without the proper inspection?
It could be. And, you know, we should back up and talk about the crush testing for a minute with that. So just because higher strength concrete is used, that doesn't trigger the crush testing requirement in the code. The crush testing requirement in the code is triggered when the design uses higher strength concrete. And so when we're relying on that extra strength, all of my designs is based, are based on 2,500 PSI concrete and therefore, none of those were below the threshold that requires all of the crush testing. Getting to the point of having the rebar properly tied, having the excavations properly prepared, I was, provided extensive photographic evidence from Mr. Mancuso that showed the excavations were very clean. They appeared to have been compacted after excavation prior to placement of steel. They had the proper dobes in place, they were all tied in place. In fact, some of the, some of the photos showed the workmen standing on the top mat of steel. There's two layers of steel in these footings and they're standing on the top layer and it's not yielding down, which, which indicates that, that the steel is very well tied and secured in place.
Excellent additional information. Thank you very much.
I don't have any concerns with that in terms of vibration.
And avoiding voids and
Right.
Too many, too much aggregate and not enough cement, yes.
Yeah, so the aggregate and cement ratio is, is in the mixed design that's delivered with the load batch.
I'm aware of that, but there, but you understand that without inspection, we're not, we have no idea. I'm aware of that, but there, but you understand that without inspection, we're not, we, we have no idea whether or not there are voids. I'm asking you if you agree with that.
Well, from the, the video evidence that Mr. Mancuso provided me, in at least one of the videos, there was, in several of the photos, there's a, a man standing right next to the, the chute from the pump truck that has a vibrator.
Okay, but you did not personally witness the installation of the concrete or the vibration or the spacing of the entire thing?
The spacing of what?
Or the spacing, you did not witness the entire pour, is what I mean?
I did not.
Okay.
I, I wasn't made aware that it was poured without a permit until after it had been poured.
Okay, that was going to be my next question, Mr. Helms. Can I ask you the next question?
Sure.
Do you condone proceeding with construction without a permit?
No, I don't.
Thank you very much, Mr. Helms.
And the insinuation from the building department that I do is kind of offensive, honestly.
Thank you very much, Mr. Helms. Mr. Quiznell?
Bill Quiznell, Acumen Engineering.
Thank you so much for joining us this evening. I appreciate your time. Were you aware that this was being constructed without a permit?
I, my office is not, I, I saw the cranes. That's what I, that's what I, I saw the cranes erecting the steel. That's what I saw.
Sir, do you condone, condone construction without an adequate permit?
I do not.
Thank you very much, sir. Brian, I'm so sorry, I forgot your last name from the metal building contractors.
Walker.
Walker, can you join me, please? Also, sir, thank you so much for making the time to be here. This is obviously a really challenging issue we're trying to understand.
Out of my wheelhouse, but I'm here.
Yes, so I've, I've built many prefabricated buildings and the, the, the plans seem to be pretty straightforward. I, I'm just curious as to, looking at the timeline that Mr. Mancuso presented to us, is that a normal timeline for you to complete a process of finalizing the plans?
It's very ongoing with the building manufacturer and the caux and getting them to the foundation engineer and it, it very much is.
Great, thank you. And is, are you familiar with a typical time span that we would then pause that process and wait for a permit to be generated from the building department? Yes. So do you, sir, condone constructing without a permit?
No.
Thank you, sir. Staff. To make sure I am clear on this, that you can extend a permit if that request is made prior to its expiration, correct? And that is something that Danielle or staff?
A land use permit?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, but once it expires, it's required to be re-reviewed as if it's a new project?
Correct.
Okay, and then this previous approval had been done in the prior general plan, so this new application would also need to meet the 2040 general plan requirements?
Correct.
If there were any changes?
And any new changes in the development code?
And any new changes in the development code, thank you. So as I also just stated, I, I re-watched the October Planning Commission meeting where Mr. Mancuso's project was supposed to be considered and then pulled due to the open code violation. Chair Claren at the time, after that determination, asked if staff had any updates for future meetings. And at that time, staff expressed that they could, they were concerned because there were 11 projects in the queue to be reviewed. Do you recall that?
Yes.
And there was concern that, you know, that you guys were going to try to get everything, including Mr. Mancuso's on, on that agenda. But with 11 items and only November and December left, that was, that was going to be a challenge.
Correct.
Okay. So Mike, you had already just previously expressed that you've, you've worked for four decades plus in the construction industry and most of which was in Southern California, partially as a building official in Southern California, correct?
I accepted, let me rephrase that. I became certified as a building official in 2008, May of 2008. I held the position as an interim building official from 2007 until 2008, where I became certified and accepted the responsibility at the jurisdiction I was at.
Thank you. How common of a practice is it for, that in those past experiences to have seen vertical construction without a permit?
Several times.
And what was the course of action?
Deconstruction.
Deconstruction. And did you utilize or engage the state contractors board in those situations?
Yes, I had a very good working relationship with the Norwalk office, even to the point of doing SWIFT operations with them.
Thank you. One last question. In, in 2023, were deferred approvals for fire systems allowed still?
Yes, they were.
Thank you. All my questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Romack?
Thank you. Appreciate all the questions. You've asked a lot of them. I'm going to start with staff. So July 6th, there was a submission by Mr. Mancuso of the construction plans that was applying to get a building permit. Is that correct?
Correct.
And how long is a building permit in effect for? How, how long do you have once you have a building permit?
Two years.
Two years, okay, thank you. I think that's it for staff for now. Mr. Mancuso, I have a question for you then. Appreciate all this information you gave us in this packet. And you have, you know, really a lap, a long timeline of going through the process for the steel structure. Is there any reason you didn't apply for a construction permit earlier than July 6th? Because it seemed like you were moving along the path. Just, and you can explain your reasoning why waiting until then?
That's a good question. In the, if you'll notice my timeline for procurement of the metal, the steel building, there's, it's an arduous task because the steel building does all of the engineering for the building itself, but they do not do the engineering for the foundation. So the process, I'll try to abbreviate the process, but there, it takes quite a bit of back and forth because we've got a proposal, we've got, we've built three others of these buildings and we've learned throughout the process in the storage building that, you know, this dimension's not right, the heights of the new boats are higher, so we maybe have to change those crossbars to go at different heights on the columns and a lot of little nuances that occur. And it's a long process because it, it takes a long time because you, you, the process, you give a deposit, you, you're given a proposal, you look at the proposal, if it meets your expectations, you accept it or you then do a revision to the proposal and that back and forth takes time. And then you give a deposit for the building. And it's a substantial deposit because just the engineering on one of these buildings is probably close to $100,000. So you make a substantial deposit and then they start their working drawings and doing all of the engineering and getting this ready to release it to the factory. And that takes several months. And they don't give you what Mr. Helms referred to as the reactions. In Lehman's term, the reactions are just the, the loads and the effects that the steel is driving on the foundation, the uplift, the down lift and the kind, the weight that we put on because we put a lot of boats on these things, you know, we're putting some, you know, 15,000 boats up in the air with a forklift. So that takes time. So, and by the time we got those reactions, it was, I think, sometime in May, even though we had started the process in way before, nine months before. And that goes back to why I truly felt that we had entitlements for this. The excavation was done, slabs were poured around, the 12-inch water line was there, the hydrant was there. We really were taken back by the finding that we didn't have a good, a valid land use permit. Nothing, no credit was given for the three years we were in COVID and these town offices weren't even open. So, and that should have been an automatic extension. The town, Community Development Director has the discretion to do that. We asked for that in a letter, for her to make her discretion. And somehow in a group think meeting, they all decided that, no, 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 this is expired. We're, we're linear here. We can't put any subjectivity into this case and give this guy a, a little bit of a break. After all, I've taken out hundreds of permits with the town. And I don't condone building without a permit. I truly don't. And I feel horrible about this. Now I'm standing before you, I look like an idiot. But, and that's why I'm asking you to please work with me. This is Truckee. We have short building seasons. I, I, based on that, then they put the stuff into production.
Thank you, Mr. Mancuso. I appreciate, you answered my question and now I feel like we're diverging into.
I have some more things to say in the rebuttal, but I really appreciate your questions and I really appreciate an open mind and some understanding.
Thank you. Keep going.
Back to staff, just as I heard Mr. Mancuso make the comment about during COVID, the town was closed. My understanding is this building was shut down for a period of time.
Sorry. Wow.
Oh, yeah.
Rookie move. Just asking about speaking to closures during COVID.
Yeah, I mean, we were working. Most of the staff were working remotely, but I was actually in the office.
And then, one more time, I think what I heard from Councilmember Clovestad's question was once a land use permit has expired, the Community Development Director does not have the authority to grant an extension?
That's correct.
It would have to go to the Planning Commission?
For this case, yes.
Okay, thank you. Those are all my questions.
Great, thank you. We'll go to supervisor, or supervisor, Councilmember Henderson and then we'll, I'll finish this off with some of the questions. Go ahead, Courtney.
Thank you. I think I only have a few left, given that so many have been asked already. My first, CAT submitted a letter related to this project. Thank you to the folks over at CAT. I'm wondering if staff can elaborate about the state policies as they relate to the issue of waste identified in that letter? I know it was touched upon really briefly in the staff presentation, but I'd like to understand just in more detail the legal or policy frameworks related to that.
Yeah, so to answer the question briefly, over the last, I'm going to say, three or four days, there's been an ongoing challenge with communication with the appropriate party. I have personally had communication with a SWIFT officer and the investigator for the case that was filed with the State License Board who felt, in their opinion, you can't have a contractor that's in violation where a law of this nature would apply. Therefore, I can't tell anybody in this room that I am the professional. I'm basing my information off from what I'm being heard and until I can come up with an adequate answer directly from the board, which has been somewhat challenging, my best guess says that this is not an applicable condition to the question at hand. Now, on the other hand, I think out of all fairness, is that if a contractor were to have an adequate permit, and as an example, if I were to retract that permit for any reason, then I could see a condition of this nature possibly coming up. Lastly, it's important to stress here that the state is not here to govern our conditions. State law is state law. They govern licensing conditions, not the local jurisdictional requirements. That is where my job falls in to interpret the code, apply the code, and also make sure that if a condition of this nature is coming up, I'm getting adequate feedback on it.
I think Jenna wants to kind of talk to you about the slide that we have on the screen here.
Sure, I'll be brief. It's just, this question's been raised and we spent some time researching it over the past few days. Mike mentioned that per the discussion he had last week with Contractors Board, staff, this, this policy that they, or that they enforce does not apply to unpermitted construction. So that's, that's the understanding that we've been given by their staff. I will note that back in November of 2009, the Contractors Board issued a industry bulletin. It's, the, the text of that is summarized up on the screen. Back in June of that same year, the board unanimously voted to reinforce the importance and the, the mandatory requirement of getting building permits for licensed, for anybody, really. And following in November, they, they issued a decree where they basically said that the board would be ramping up enforcement efforts. So for us, when we look at the position that the appellant has made, we don't really understand why the board would make, you know, getting permits such a priority and then at the same time appear to condone keeping materials that are associated with unpermitted construction. So that's really the research that we've been able to do over the last few days.
Okay, thank you. And then from, different question, from the timeline. So it, it looks like it took a couple of months to get to Planning Commission, most recently kind of end of that year, or the end of last year. Is that correct?
Correct.
And Danielle, did you say earlier that that turnaround time is typical or average for us or where does that fall?
It was faster than our, than our averages right now, or was back then, too.
Confirm what the averages were at that time?
Six to nine months.
Okay. Do we typically notify applicants in advance if their titlements are expiring? Or is it incumbent upon the developer to manage that?
It's incumbent upon the developer. There, we have so many projects that for us to track that would take probably a part-time staff person to do.
Okay. Does our after-the-fact permit process lay out the specific types of projects that can be permitted after the fact? What are the allowances for after-the-fact permitting?
It's at the chief building official's discretion what to accept as an after-the-fact permit. But I will note that most of our after-the-fact permits are the result of a code compliance case where there was a violation identified and a discussion that happened between our code compliance officers and the building official of that being the course of action. I can't think of an example where we've had someone just submit an after-the-fact permit for a non-residential building that was constructed without permits. So if that were to be proposed, the building official wouldn't accept it.
What, what are the types of after-the-fact permitting that we have accepted in the past?
So our most common
As a result of code compliance or?
Our most common, particularly in the last year, are unpermitted ADUs. Decks and remodels are our most common.
Okay, and all residential?
All residential. There's probably, I can think of less than a handful of maybe a tenant improvement where a new business decided to open and didn't understand what a tenant improvement was, but they're very, very rare.
Okay. Mike, I think you said earlier that you've seen many cases of unpermitted construction sort of over your, the years of experience you have. Did I hear that correctly?
Yes.
And in what percentage of those cases was the course of action a full deconstruction?
I'm going to say at least 10%.
Okay. Okay, I think those are the questions that I have right now.
Great, thank you. I just have a couple and you guys have definitely asked quite a few of them. I will also clarify, town offices were open through COVID, the same schedule that they were after COVID. Mike, quickly, how many, based on your appearance, I know you don't have any approved plans, but how many inspections would have taken place on this project up till today, basically, in the current condition of the property?
Kind of a loaded question, to be honest with you, because it's something that I think I addressed during a plan review process. We talked about sequencing earlier and it, although it may have never been asked from a community, anytime I look at a large-scale project, it's one of the first common questions from a plan check standpoint I'm going to ask. What is the construction sequencing? I think Mancuso's team had indicated that the building would normally get put up and get torqued down for settlement. I'm not a PE, I'm not a licensed engineer, so I would probably be wanting to talk to the individual involved that calculated that they get a better understanding. When I look at it, I think of seismic down in Southern California and I look at every layer of steel that would go up, you'd want it torqued down to ensure the fact there's no movement. It's much like framing up a, a wall to get a shear together. You got to plumbing line it, you got to hold it in place, put the shear on and nail it down. Again, these are conditions that are normally questioned during a plan check process. If there's no construction sequencing, at least then I know it so that when my team goes out and they perform an inspection, they've got clear direction on what they should or should not be looking at.
I, I guess maybe let me clarify at the minimum, prior to any slab pour in this community? community, how many inspections would a residential or commercial project entail?
Prior to a slab would be foundation.
Correct. Or prior to a foundation, even.
Prior to a foundation, um, there would be engineering required. Um, that is our standard policy, whether there's rain or no rain. Uh, we're looking for the ceiling of the site. Uh, from a building standpoint, we're also gonna wanna look at any kind of grading or excavation issues. Um, unaware, at this point, I've got a good feel that there may have been done, but at this point, I can't make that determination without actually reviewing plans.
Great. Thank you. And, um, Mr. Helms, quickly, one quick question for you. Were the pictures that you were provided by Mr. Mancuso geotagged and timestamped?
Um, I don't remember.
Great. Thank you. And, Mr. Mancuso, how many, um, building permits have you gotten over the years in, in this wonderful town of Truckee? And, and approximately, how many TIs have you probably had to sign off of in, in the same amount of time?
Well, when you bring the question of TIs, uh, it, it's, it can be several per building. But in terms of building permits, I've had about, um, six or seven land use permits with-
Just building.
Public hearings and all that.
Just building.
And then I've had, uh, I think 17 permits for the larger commercial buildings. Some were as much as 30,000 square feet. And then I have had, um, another, uh, 14 for town homes and five for single-family residences. And then, on, on the TIs, I would say, with 250,000 square feet, you know?
Quite a few hundred.
Quite a few. A lot, you know? There've been a lot of inspections, for sure.
Great. Thank you. Um, and then I think my last quest, so, I think that was my last question, actually, um, 'cause everybody else got to all the rest. Great. Uh, my, I knew I had one last question. Was there any, was there anything in the appellant's presentation that staff had a concern with or want to point out as, as potentially, um, different from different facts that staff has? Was there anything that needed to be brought up?
I'm gonna chime in on this.
Please, Mike.
Um, I'm, I, I think what I really wanna kind of outline are a few conditions here. And again, some of this is in reflection, uh, directly to building code. Um, most of the folks that I deal with, I try to make it very clear that I don't enforce a maximum. I'm enforcing a minimum condition. Uh, with that being said, it's not to talk down the code, but, uh, if we look at, um, section, yeah, 105, I believe it is, uh, the California Building Code, it clearly indicates that permits are required. Um, that's my first and most important. Uh, the second, our duties and powers, section 104 of the building official, uh, which really says that I'm here to outline and cover what the intent, and rephrase that, what the code is outlining, and don't have the allowables to undermine the code requirements. Uh, even if I were to adopt code and I were to, um, provide a different condition, it has to be of more restrictive of nature, not under. Um, and lastly, the inspection process, which clearly is outlined, section 104.4, um, that indicates that inspections are required. Um, for the community, I think I also wanna outline that you pay a lot of money for permits. It doesn't mean that that means my staff sits and, uh, hopes that a consultant can go ahead and do the work. It means we have a job to do, and our job is to outline what this code is representing for the best interests of life, safety. We don't have the determination of, um, saying this is good or bad. We have to keep neutral. Uh, when we go into other avenues of the code, we'll just say 17 and 18, keep it simple. Uh, chapter 17 clearly indicates the requirements of, uh, special inspections required. Uh, that would probably be as well on the twerking of the bolts that would be there. Um, I would, again, at a plan review process, wanna know if this is random checking or ongoing checking. Um, and then we go into another avenue of a geotechnical report that was provided on this, but there was never any findings for the compressive strength of that foundation. I did, however, after the fact, get a letter that indicated that they were not required to be present, which is rather strange to me considering everything I've ever done in the past, required reports, but one, when you have a consultant out there, that consultant's responsible to going out and verifying that condition. If the consultant's findings in the report did not need to be there, then simply, that would have been a disclosure that, again, would have been put on the plans, so my staff would not have asked for that report and held the project up.
Um, can I just add a few comments?
Sure.
Um, so there was a comment made, um, by Mr. Mancuso, saying that we would not be here if staff had chosen to make the right decision. Um, and we just talked about how, as the director, I do not have the discretion to extend a land use permit, um, that's been expired. Um, and this isn't, um, sort of a indictment of character or anything that was sort of identified in the presentation. Um, we do recognize the good work that's happened in Pioneer Commerce Center. We continue to work with, um, Mr. Mancuso on everything from, sort of, implementation of his plan development. Um, we've talked about in the general plan, doing modifications to, um, make it easier so that we don't have to keep monitoring what's happening in Pioneer Commerce Center, that businesses will be able to come in to the town, um, without sort of that secondary level of review, and be able to, um, open up their businesses in Pioneer Commerce Center. So, um, I just wanna identify that, um, you know, this is, this is the town's process that you have tasked us with working through with applicants. Um, it's not personal, it's not specific to anything other than the rules that are in the development code. I do think that there is an opportunity for us to go back and look at things that are causing challenges, which is why we talk about the development code being a living document. And that includes, I think what I'm hearing pretty loud and clear now, is construction timeframes are and have been sort of one of those aspects, including the entitlement timeframe for, um, when someone's coming in for a land use permit, that, you know, perhaps what has been working, isn't working anymore. And we're always willing to have those conversations about making those changes to the code, if it makes sense.
Mayor Paul, I'll just chime in with one comment.
Yes, Jenna.
I think a lot of others have been, um, addressed already. Um, it's been repeated several times that, you know, we didn't get this on the next available, or the soonest available commission hearing. Um, that isn't true. The, the application was actually submitted after the noticing deadline for the August hearing, so we could not have made that date, um, at all. And the September meeting was booked well in advance of when this application came in. It was a single project. Um, some of you may have been there. It was the Tahoe Donner Ski Lodge, downhill ski lodge project. It was a five or six-hour meeting. Um, we, you know, were not able to accommodate another project on that agenda, given that it, we knew that it would be a long meeting. So both of those meetings were already full, and we did place it upon the next available meeting, which was October.
Thank you, Jenna. Mr. Mancuso, I have one more question for you before we move on to public comment. In your opening comments, you very clearly tried to talk about your character, the rationale, and you tried to dismiss the legal issues. At, at least that's what I heard. Can you point to and, and quote for me anything in this staff report that speaks to any issue, positive and/or negative regarding your personal character? And I wanna quote, if you are going to give me an answer.
Well, you know, I didn't get all the way through my presentation, so...
Do you have a quote for me that talks about your character in the staff report provided to the entire public as of last Thursday?
Well, the inference that I gave-
I don't want any inference. I want, is there a quote that you can point me to that discusses anybody's personal character?
What do you consider, what do you consider something that affects your personal character? Is being accused of being dishonest your personal character?
Uh, there's no accusations being made, so stop. Um, I guess maybe I just wanna clarify something with Mr. Morris. Andy, can you talk about what the legal issues are here and, and the fact that this is actually a proceeding to determine the legality of the notices? Can you just help us all kinda come back together as we head into public comment as to what our role is tonight?
Sure. Uh, the matter being appealed-
Oh, the staff council? Who's, who am I supposed to ask?
Well, no, I, I am your counsel tonight, and just to reiterate, um, I cannot represent both the staff and the town council on this, so I have not been helping staff on this. I'm only working for you tonight.
Yeah.
Um, so this is an appeal of a notice of violation. The, there was a notice of violation issued. Uh, Mr. Mancuso has appealed it. That is what you're considering. You're not considering, um, should things have been done? You're not considering, um, anything other than was the appeal, or strike that, was the notice of violation valid? Is there a basis for either upholding the notice of violation or granting the appeal and overturning the notice of violation? That's what we're doing tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Nelson, did you wanna add anything else? I think we're good with you. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
I thought so. Um, did anybody else have any questions before we move to public comment? Do we need a bathroom break? Are you, how's your leg? Are we okay? Did you have some more questions?
I just wanna follow up. I believe one of the terms of the proposed resolution we're being asked to consider is the abatement order. So it's not only liability, but also the remedy?
Yes. It's true.
Okay. And then for staff's counsel, um, can you tell me, um, describe for me generally the principle of excessive waste? Let's put aside the state, uh, labor, uh, not labor board, the state contractors board regulation, and just talk more generally about the equitable principle of excess waste.
Yeah, I, I would say from a, from a legal perspective, um, the doctrine of excess waste, as explained in the, um, licensing board, uh, regulation that was cited in the staff report and, and discussed, um, I think as, as was mentioned previously, legally does not apply to this, this body. Um, that, that is, from staff's perspective, a consideration that this council may wish to consider as you make a decision, but isn't something that, um, legally constrains your, your decision-making.
Thank you. I, I meant to ask, um, in regard to the equitable principle, not the regulation?
And I would say, in regard to the equitable principle, it would be something that you could consider, um, as you make a decision, but wouldn't constrain your discretion in doing so.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions, quickly, from, um, council? We're gonna take a five-minute recess at 7:03 on the black, and we'll take a seven-minute recess. We will reconvene at 7:10, and at that time, we will open public comment right at that time. Um, so thank you, and we'll be back at 7:10 by the back clock. So thank you, and we'll be back at 7:10 by the back clock. All right, folks, we're going to reconvene. Dan, am I on? Great, thank you. All right, we're going to be back. We are going to move into, we're still on item 7.1. We're going to be moving into public comment. I love that you guys are already lined up. You know the drill. I very much appreciate that. Public comment's going to be limited to three minutes per person. Make sure the green microphone light is on. Watch your timer, and please state your name at the beginning of your comments for the record. I'm going to be pretty tight tonight, so please keep it to three minutes, and then we'll move along and hear from everybody. Thank you. Just kick us off.
Hey, how's it going? I'll keep this short. My name's Dustin. I own Truckee Brewing. I'd like to say that Ciro and Katie have helped me not only start my business in town, but also expand to another location. They've been fair. They've taken care of me. They've loaned me money that I've paid back over a course of time without any emails or harassment. I feel like what they've done for me and other businesses in town that have been able to expand and support a family, support the livelihood that they've created, should be taken into consideration on the situation at hand. Mike mentioned that 10% enforcement is usually a complete teardown. I think the 90% of the other part of it, of a not complete teardown and working with the town, should be taken into consideration. And that's all I've got to say. I think you guys should take that into consideration and make this thing work instead of Katie and Ciro in a position where they're hauling tons of rubble to the landfill and creating more problems when there's a solution that's better than the one at hand. And that's all I've got to say. Thank you. Have a good night. Got to get my kids.
Thank you. Please, we don't need any clapping either. Thank you. Not an audition. Go ahead.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Jeb Sakluna, past local firefighter from our community, serving next door, small business owner in Truckee, and Truckee resident, and a tenant for two different, at two different locations within the Pioneer Commerce Center. And I'm also a Pioneer Boat Storage customer. I live within a couple hundred feet of the structure we are, that we're in discussion over. I couldn't agree anymore with what Dustin shared. My personal life and my, my business wouldn't be where it's at today if it wasn't for the awesome support of the Mancuso family. In all my life, for many years, they have been the best landlords I could ask for, operating within, with sincere integrity, building, building remarkable community in our beautiful mountain town, and have contributed tremendously to the town of Truckee. They have provided an awesome home for me to live in, and I love it so much, and I am so grateful. Their current structure was properly engineered and built, to my eyes, and to ask them to tear it down, and then for a permit renewal process, then to be rebuilt is agreeably, that's questionable, and some will feel nonsensical for the following reasons. To tear concrete out and pour, and repour is anything but climate and earth friendly, and also is anything but residential health and safety friendly for those of us who live right next door. Removal of concrete dust toxins may or would create unwanted necessary havoc. When we all appreciate living at Pioneer Commerce Center tremendously, living life to our fullest in peace and quiet, and, and we, honestly, for me, I appreciate the building as a customer. They have been so respectful of noise while maintaining a very nice living atmosphere with their current structure, and I have hardly even noticed it going up. Now, on the contrary, layman's terms, you know, hearing concrete smashing and dealing with dust and inhale the unwanted airborne air tence downwind of the project can take into consideration. That will have a negative peaceful impact on my nice lifestyle and many others, and there are others who live there as well in this room. I don't see destruction of concrete and risking contractor and residential health and safety. Very logical. Wouldn't we all agree on that? Rather, in everyone's benefit, can't we all recognize what about reinspection for a permit renewal application process? Let's promote happy residential life and business success in the town of country, in the town of Truckee as they do, and help those who are providing for our community with inclusiveness and belonging for one another, which they do. Here my testimony, and please consider it thoughtfully. Thank you for your service, and time to make this the best place on earth to co-live encouragingly and inspiringly with one another. Please keep our health and safety next door. Awesome. And here us on keeping this building up. You don't live there. I live right there. We need your support, that is, to rationally and thoughtfully support Ciro and Katie Mancuso. May you choose peacefully and environmentally friendly results for everyone, and that is one action. Leave the building up. Stop prolonging completion. Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff.
Hi, my name is Steven Sieg. I own the Tahoe Art House and Cinema in Tahoe City. I'm not here to support or be against what's happening here. I came tonight to kind of learn what was happening. I took some notes down because we, we have some history with the town in getting a movie theater built here at the rail yard. And we ran into several hurdles, and through that process, we kind of felt this culture at the staff, that if they were against it personally, that they would throw as many hurdles as they could at us. And then it culminated with a $250,000 traffic mitigation fee that basically killed our project. And we were quoted, we were quoted $25,000 traffic mitigation fee all through the process, and this was years of a process. When we got our development permit that was approved by the council at the time, they didn't even let us know that there was a $250,000 traffic mitigation fee. I felt like it was kind of this jab at us of kind of burying it in the development permit, and when I brought it up, they were like, oh, yes, there was a mistake. We didn't put a zero. And so I was like, well, how do we work this out? How do we figure this out? Because this will kill our project. And now, sitting here today, listening to everybody's testimony about what's going on, I kind of feel like, okay, Ciro made a mistake, so fix the mistake. Don't make, don't make the problem a bigger problem in tearing this down. The town asked me to work with them, and we were not able to, to carry through, but they wanted us to say, okay, you guys made a mistake, but they were not willing to help with that mistake that killed that project. I'll keep it short tonight, but I do think that there is personal bias, and I think there is a hostile environment at the town of Truckee staff. Thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
Hi, my name is Lydia. I actually didn't come for this, but I'm interested in the subject now. I think that the appeal of the abatement order and the deconstruction order should absolutely be overturned. The excessive waste provisions, how can you not apply it to this situation? I mean, the first thing we came in and heard about was the emissions from the town of Truckee. Try adding what you're about to do to the Mancuso project to the emissions that the town of Truckee is, is going to have on for 2024. Ridiculous waste to take it down. The punishment, taking it down, $2.5 million, folks. This family has done a lot for our community. I've gone to exercise classes in his building. My kids have gone to school in his building. We've had retail. He does amazing projects for this community and has for years on end. You're going to hit him with a $2.5 million hit for a mistake? That it's, it's an excessive punishment for the alleged crime. It is a waste, what you're contemplating doing. You should be contemplating having after-the-fact testing done. You can have core testing done. You can have x-rays done. You can have a lot of things done to confirm the rebarb within the concrete. You know this. There's other ways to, to handle this instead of hitting him with a $2.5 million hit and creating an environmental nightmare within this town when you purport to be green. So please, don't, let's, let's not make this mistake worse than it already is, okay? So the appeal should be heard. You should not be trying to tear this building down. You should be figuring out another way to fix it, and there are other ways.
Thank you, Lydia.
Hi, my name is Raymond DeVray. I own Blacktop Paving, and I'm a personal friend of Ciro and Katie's for many years. I've known Ciro for over 50 years, and I probably put most of the asphalt down in Pioneer Center. All I can tell you is that when you see one person like this, who, when he walked with me in the beginning, and it was just a big plate of dirt, he said, I have a vision to build it a, a center for commercial use. I have a vision to build a center for all kinds of use. There's no person in Truckee and Tahoe that has done as much as he's done, and that's what I want you to think about.
Thank you very much, Raymond.
Hi, my name is Josh Rupert, and I own Johnson Iron, and I erect steel buildings similar to this. We do about 4,000, 400,000 pounds of steel erection a year. And I just want to speak to the safety side of this. To disassemble a building like this is extremely dangerous for the ironworkers. This building was assembled in pieces, but now it's one unit. And as, there's unknown forces, there's reactions that are going to happen when you grab an assembly with a crane. The crane operator, I'm a crane operator also, but the crane operator only assumes or speculates on the weight. So if he holds too much weight when it's disassembled, the assembly can jump, it can move, there's a lot of tension. The ironworkers are going to have to use a lot of force to pry these pieces apart now at this point, and there's a high, high risk for extreme injury or death in disassembling this building. So I, I would suggest that we, we need to keep this thing up. Thank you.
Thanks, Josh.
Good evening. My name's Edward Vento. I'm the executive director of CAT. First of all, let me start with, I sent a letter yesterday. Got a lot of phone calls, thank you. However, I was remiss in copying my committee and copying the town manager, so I apologize for that. I was just in a rush and I forgot. So secondly, I've heard a lot of things, a lot of inaccuracies that we've had discussions with the town of Truckee here about, and we can address those later. We don't have the time here, but I just wanted to make sure that I'm aware. The other thing is that, you know, I want us to understand that there are remedies to everything that we've discussed here. You know, there are firms that specialize in going back to inspect this. So I don't want to say that we 100% condone, you know, building without a permit. I'm not, we've never met. I don't know Mr. Mancuso. I'm not really here for him. I'm here for every other contractor that's here in this room, whether they're members of CAT or not. They're worried. That's why the room is full. So I just want to make those points. There are remedies to this. You asked Andy, what are we voting on exactly? You don't have to even vote on that. You can, you can disregard that and decide to table this until you get a proper type of, you know, resolution together. I think we're all learning a lot here. It hasn't been pleasant for anybody, but I don't know anybody, and I do a lot of economic development, I own a separate company, that would put $2 million into a project or more and not be sure about, you know, whether they were going to be told to tear it down or, just people don't do that. Business people don't do that. Construction, you're not in the risk business. You know, you're, you're there to build buildings, to build them safely. There are mitigations for this, and so that, I think I, I pointed that out in the letter, and, you know, if I wasn't clear, then, you know, I'm just here to clear that up. You can certainly call me afterwards. But again, I want to make the point, you're not restricted to that. There's many, many, many mitigations. The last thing I want to say is, you know, it, there's a saying, it pays to win, and it feels great to win. And when you're vested in a decision, you really want to win and be validated. I don't think this is one that the staff wants to absolutely win at any cost. I think it comes with a very high price. Just look around the room and look at the people in my office and in their homes watching these proceedings. So I thank you for your consideration. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Ed.
There's also pizza at the CAT office with those of you that work all day. If you're hungry.
Any other public comment?
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Okay, thank you. State your name.
My name is Tom Watson. I've been involved with Ciro and Katie since the inception in 2000. I was part of the process of acquiring all the land that is involved with Pioneer Commerce Center, the, the industrial parks that have been built and land sold to local Truckee unit, mostly local people here in Truckee. Anyway, I, I had a lot to say, but I, the fellow that was in front of me said a lot. And, and number two, when Ciro gave his presentation tonight, he gave a, he showed a picture of the, the park finished and built with one left, one building left, and that's the building under discussion. And all you have to do is drive through the park. It answers, it, it answers to the dedication and care that Ciro and Katie have for this property, as well as the town of Truckee. And this shouldn't even be here. I, I don't even understand how it got to this point, and I think there's a problem here, and that problem needs to be addressed by the town council above and beyond this meeting. This meeting should never have happened. It's easily, this could have been easily done, easily permitted in the form of the final form that's required. And I think that I would look, I just can't understand it. And I've been involved with them, and from the beginning, I, I was with them, went to all the meetings, all the planning meetings that involved the whole project early on. I leased out the whole north side initially, and I haven't been involved with them directly for years, other than on a personal basis. And I must say, it's easy to solve. You can come up with some solution here that would meet the needs of both people. Doesn't have to go this far, and I look forward to hearing about how that's done, and it's in your lap, but also you have some other issues here on how the town operates. There's a lot of people here, and they're here because of those issues. And I, I think you need to delve into this more than just a public hearing. Again, that should never have happened, and I look forward to your solution. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
My name is Brandon Helms with Maple Brook Engineering. I'm the engineer of record on the project, if you didn't catch that earlier. So there's been talk about, you know, finding a resolution, how this should be resolved, and, and building without a permit. So I was initially unaware that the project had moved forward without a permit. I assumed that, that the building department had issued the permit before construction started. And I found out in early this year that, that this had come to loggerheads, and that the town had suggested that Ciro tear the building down. And it was late March, and I got a phone call from Ciro, and he asked if, if there was anything I could do, if I could come down and, and inspect what had been, what had been done, if I could meet with the building department, you know, what I could do. And I offered to come down in, in a month or so, and he begged me to come down sooner than that. And so on April 4th, I, I flew down. I live in North Idaho, so I made the trip down here, and I inspected the project. It's clearly in process, not ready for an inspection at this point for the superstructure. As I mentioned previously, it provided a lot of photographic evidence on the foundation, and I feel satisfied as the engineer of record that the foundation was properly poured and constructed. After my inspection of the project as it stands, I went to the building official's office and met with Mike, Mike Ross, and I thought we had a very positive and productive conversation. He asked me to send him an email, you know, kind of suggesting what, or outlining what my suggestions were. My suggestions were that he and I worked together to get this out of the code enforcement, or out from under the code enforcement umbrella, and move it out into the, into the normal streamline of getting the permits lined up and, and get it back on the normal track. Normally, it's the chief building official and engineer of record that, that can work together to, to get over that hurdle, to get the project back on track. So when I returned to the airport, you know, within an hour and a half or two hours, I had sent Mike an email. He said he was going to review that with the staff that Friday morning, April 5th. Multiple follow-up emails, phone calls, all of that went morning, April 5th. Multiple follow-up emails, phone calls, all of that went completely unanswered. I eventually emailed Danielle, and the answer was they were going to tear it down, and then they issued the notice of violation. Thanks.
Thank you, Brandon.
Hi, Brian Walker again. I'd like to touch on the safety issues of this building, as the other erector had said. Siro made a phone call to us and asked us if we could take it down. That town said, take it down and we'll allow you to put it back up. Makes no sense, makes no sense to take that down. And my response to Siro was, if you can do anything other than take that building down to satisfy them, do it. Because of safety issues, as he had stated, to take that down puts all of my employees, me, everybody at risk. Going up's easy, coming down's hard. I've been putting buildings up in Truckee now for probably 30 years, and the only inspection from regardless, put the slab aside, on those metal buildings is a high-strength bolt test. That's the only inspection that's ever been called out up here in this area. No framing inspections, no nothing. When we get the building framed up, the building is torqued and inspected by a special inspector, then we have an inspection. And that building is not even there yet. And one other thing I'd like to kind of bring up, when Siro said we needed to come down off that building, I said, Siro, winter's coming, we don't have rods in this building yet. Could you please see if they would allow us to get the rods in this building so that we would be safe? No response. So that's just an issue to me that's saying, we're talking safety, 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 and you can't let us make that building safe for the wintertime so that everybody could feel comfortable out it and mitigate this thing later. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
Hi, Katie Mancuso. So I'm hearing there are remedies, and I know there were many opportunities for negotiation to figure out a remedy that was collectively agreeable. But the answer was always no. Since the very beginning, Siro has been asking for help to make this work, because he did not put himself in this position intentionally. Do you, I really take offense to the fact that you think he would put his reputation at risk after 24 years of what he has done for this town and this community and these tenants, and subject himself to such punishment and embarrassment, and, and subject himself to these punitive damages they're trying to inflict on him. So I believe that collectively the answer was always, let's try to figure out how to get to know. I do know, I recall that the reason it did not get on the September commission was because, oh, I'm sorry, we missed the Sierra Sun publication date by two to three days. That does not add up. Furthermore, there's a lot of talk about discretion and after-the-fact permits. So you claim that that is possible, you can grant an after-the-fact permit. I want to point out one thing, because Dave, you asked about a statement that really addressed what a personal attack feels like. Page 549 in the staff report, the app, the appellant's clear intent was to commence construction before building permits were applied for and granted is a skewed perception. And this is in the staff report. That is an attack on his character, and that is wrong. That is not ethical behavior. So I, further to that, and Mike Ross, I'm really sorry to have to point this out publicly, but we're here, and this has to go on record. And no one around you can deny this, because you had witnesses. But on three occasions, once with Brandon Helms, once on the building site with Danielle and Siro, and the third time in a Zoom call with Jen Callaway, your attorney, Danielle, Siro, his attorney, you said in so many words, Siro, give me the name of someone on staff that knew about this, and I will make all this go away. So don't deny that. That is unethical behavior that really should be looked at. So to disregard that this feels like a personal agenda, you know, I really ask you to question that and to question the integrity of the staff decision and the integrity of the staff report. Thank you.
Thanks, Katie.
Hi, Heather Rancow here. I'm a local Truckee resident, also a business member. And I've worked in the trades in Truckee for over 15 years for engineers, architects, developers, and GCs. So what I want to say is that I've, I've worked as an owner's rep. I've seen all of TNT's concrete reports come in. I've never seen one fail at 2,515 years. So I don't think they would start today, but that's always a possibility. And then second, I think in 2007 or 2008, I worked for LA County as a planning bill check engineer. And this is in 2007. We would do hundreds of permits in three hours at the counter in the morning. And I would go out weekly with code compliance. And of the hundreds of times that we would have after the fact, building situations like this, commercial buildings like way past where this is, we never, one time from higher up, ever requested for it to be taken down. And you might say, well, that's kind of, that's what's here today. Why would LA County, who serves 10 million people, is the largest jurisdiction in the United States, why would that never happen? And I can tell you, it comes down to culture. The culture in LA County from top down was partnership with community, partnership with your customers. And they always found a path to compliance and making sure that they would get them there, a partner alongside of them and not adversary. And unfortunately, I think that's why we're here today, is because the Community Development Department and the trades, and a lot of local developers and owners and people who come in for permits, unfortunately, do not have a culture of partnership. And that is something that can change, but it starts with the council, leading from top and going down. And this is just one incident. This goes all the way down to ADUs. I see ADUs that get red-tagged for bare boxes over a foot, a rock wall over six inches. And where I understand that Danielle said is voluntary compliance, if I, if you saw the letters that I see that come through, these do not look like voluntary compliance. Those look like they're going to go spend $5,000 to $10,000 to get a real estate lawyer, just to try to make sure that they're not going to have a lien put on their ADU, which they now house a local workperson. So if you have partnership, that's not what that looks like. And unfortunately, this is just another offense of that. And I'm here to say, I think it's time for change. And I think there's a lot of people in this room that want to hear that. And you guys have election coming up in November, and this is such an amazing opportunity for you guys to show great leadership, show great partnership. And he's never done this before, it sounds like. So it's a first time offense. And does the punishment match the crime? Up to for you guys to decide.
Thanks, Heather. Any other public comment this evening? About to close it, so if you have one, now's the time.
Hi, guys. I'm back. Nice to see you all. This is a really important issue to me. I've written it down. As you guys can see, there is an alternative. There's many alternatives. Your entire workforce here just gave you alternatives to this. What the planning department is trying to say is tear down $2 million of steel. That's absurd. Just listen to those words with alternatives. And this is because Siro didn't get your permission. Okay? It's absurd. So now what we see here, and I'm going to get really, I'm going to be really blunt here, because there's a lot of people that say this and think it, but they don't actually say it to you out loud. I have nothing to lose. Okay? Let's look at it this way. This is either incompetence, because you failed to work together with Siro. Siro is your dude. He is the coolest developer in this town. He built it. He's dedicated trails. He put workforce housing that we want and you can't provide. He's done, he's done warehouse spaces for workers. You're not going to give this guy a break. You didn't reach out. You didn't make this happen for him. That's a failure in working together. That's at best. Okay? I'm sorry, I'm a little angry, but this is years of buildup on behalf of a lot of people here. Okay? At worst, this is a targeted attack to make, to make an example for the rest of us in the building industry to never do anything without your permission, ever. Okay? You don't work with us, but you're going to put us in our place. And that's, this is a pattern. Okay? I want you guys, I've been documenting this for years. This is a pattern, from top to bottom. So at best, this is incompetency. Worst, this is vindictive, making example out of very important and cherished community members. Okay? This is a gang. This is what a gang looks like here. We've got the lawyer chasing down people with ADUs, scaring them into compliance with codes. It's a swarm. You can't even understand. You give up. You just give up and die. This is not working together. This is the staff that operates our town. Okay? This staff pushes out anybody on the staff. Dan West, it doesn't lockstep with you guys. Why did he leave? Right? Just before his retirement package? You guys, do you believe that? Do you guys believe that? Okay? So to conclude, there's an investigation open into this group. I'm going to make sure this investigation sees the end of it and finds the results that I know are there. Okay? So for this board, I'm going to be really, really frank, because good friends are involved in this. People I love, my neighbors are involved in your decision, continued decision. I want you guys to know.
Thanks, Caroline. Caroline.
Hey, hold on.
Thank you. Not holding on. We're going to take a recess if you keep talking. Thanks, Caroline. Great. Any other member of the public like to make a comment?
Hi, I'll keep it short. My name's Mike Richardson. I own Alpen Flow Yoga here in Truckee. I moved here in 93 and graduated from Sierra Nevada College. I own a house in Cornelian Bay. I also rent an apartment from the Mancusos on their, in Pioneer Center. And from that, I just want to say that they, in terms of landlords, have set the bar for me as a business person and what I expect of a landlord. I turned down two leases that I was negotiating as a result of my work with them. And I spent three years negotiating a lease in San Francisco. So they're exemplary in what they do for the community. And as a tenant, they helped me through the pandemic and many others, and absorbed an incredible amount of loss in terms of rent revenue. In terms of what they offer as taxpayers in this county, it's unprecedented, and that is being overlooked. And what I will say as well is that I'm also a builder. You know, I stopped building as a result of, no offense, but building departments. My father was a contractor. I grew up on job sites. Had my license in California, Hawaii, and New Mexico. And you get to a point where you're just like, okay, enough's enough. What I can say with this project as a builder is you see people who build, like form to finish, in the dirt, to the roof, to the lid, done. And then you see people who haven't ever done that. Right? So the concept of tearing a building down is just hilarious. Right? So I see a lot of emotion in here, and I see a lot of people trying to do what's right. And I hope that you can do what's right for the Town of Truckee and take personal viewpoints aside and be like, okay, like, how do we figure the workaround? Because as a builder, that's what we do. And our legacy, when we're all gone, we want this place to be as amazing as it is for people to come visit and to prosper if they choose to live here. So thank you, and I appreciate what you all do. And I just hope that we can come together and show in this time that we can come together. So thanks.
Thank you, Mike.
Siobhan Smart. So I've listened to all of us here, and it makes me a little sad. I'd like to ask a couple of questions just for you guys to consider. We can point out the obvious. Anna, when you asked, does anybody support building without a permit? If you do, please raise your hand. Okay, that problem is solved. Okay? That just, I think one of the things I see here is that everybody here is better than this. All of you. You guys are, we are. So the question is, what else would go there? That would be my first question. So if you take it down, what's going to actually replace it? Second, is instead of being right, why don't we focus on being community? I won't pretend to know about building or structure or iron or solutions. But I know that there's a bunch of smart people in this room, and as someone who's gone down the path with lawyers, this is the wrong path. And if there's a way for all of you to just stop and figure this out, Siro and Katie are really good community members. And I will say, every time that I have dealt with the town, Danielle has been specifically helpful with us. So I know that there's a way to make this work. Thank you.
Thank you, Siobhan. Anybody else? Is it? Closing. Public comment in three, two, one. Okay, public comment is now closed. Thank you all. We really do appreciate all of that. We are going to move on to the appellant's response. You have a five-minute timer on this one. We won't be granting any extra time. So we're keeping you to five.
Yeah, I'm just going to make a quick comment for the record, because we made a request for additional time in advance to the Community Development Director. We're informed that that request would be relayed to the mayor. We were also informed that the council never runs out the clock on something like this. So that was represented to us. We didn't hear back. So I just respectfully request a little latitude with regard to the rebuttal so you can, you can fairly address this important issue. Thank you.
We'll give you eight minutes. Is that sufficient? I've given you three more minutes. So can we set the timer to eight minutes, Sarah? And we'll meet you in the middle. There you go. Thank you, Mike. Yes. Last slide. Yeah. Last slide. Last slide. Eight minutes. We're good. Thank you. Can't see the timer up here. Once we get to that last slide, we'll get you going.
Okay, thanks.
Keep this meeting moving. We're almost there. Almost to the last slide. Here we go. The request. Thank you. This is a great last slide. We appreciate that. Siro, eight minutes. Go.
I'm sorry you weren't able to see all the other slides, because I had some very interesting ones there. But I understand the protocol and respect that. With respect to the slab, because the issue here basically are, are you going to approve the town's request for removal? Or are you going to find an acceptable solution that makes some sense to everybody? Satisfies all. I'm not here to say I need to win. It doesn't matter to me, quite frankly. Just a little bit more information to give you. In respect to the slab, two letters from Maple Brook Engineering, Inc. to the Town of Truckee, refer, referring to the pre-pore foundation and slab observation for the boat building, strength performance tests from TNT Materials, the concrete supplier for the concrete, geotech compaction information for the project site from NV and Jake Hudson. This information initially satisfied Mike Ross. Then there was a turn of events, because I would not subjugate to something that made no sense. Let's try to be sensible. I agree that there was a transgression. I hope that everybody on this council has the ability to see through all the different nuances that have been presented here and can make an equitable solution for, for me, for the staff, for yourselves, and for the community. and can make an equitable solution for me, for the staff, for yourselves, and for the community. There are plenty of tools in your tool chest that you can use. You can levy a fine. I'll pay a fine. I'll do something that makes sense. Some public project you'd like me to contribute to? No problem with that, if it's for the community. Now, let's talk about, with respect to the building. Steel frame building information was provided from the project engineer, Maple Brook Engineering, that steel was constructed for plans and specs and was structurally sound. So we let Mike Brown rattle off about something that he's not an expert on, and he gets his opinion accepted. He doesn't know about metal buildings. There are no inspections until the torquing down of the bolts. You don't torque down the bolts in any preliminary stage, because the whole thing acts together. And once it's all bolted down, it's like it's been welded. And you don't take pieces out. So the only inspections that happen, which are, this building is premature for that inspection, is the whole thing. It's done by a structural engineer that is licensed to do that. We have a contract with NV5 to do that inspection, signed before the structure was put up. They don't have to come out. They're open to come out. They're here in Truckee. They can stop by on a daily basis if they want, once they have that contract. But traditionally, they don't come out until the end. And then they torque all the bolts down. They're all tested. Because once those bolts are tightened and those bolts stretch, because they put so much torque on them, it's the equivalent of welding it together. I'm really concerned. I don't want it on my conscience that if we go out there and deconstruct that building, somebody gets killed or somebody gets injured. Because the working class people come to us and we give them every modality that's available to ensure their safety. But there are unknowns. So if we all want that on the conscience, then, you know, I guess you can rule to have it taken down. But I think you have plenty more tools in your tool chest. And how about the consciousness about taking a thousand tons of concrete to the landfill? And the aggravation that that causes for all of our tenants, all of our businesses that are adjacent to this thing with a big excavator with a jackhammer running and shaking the ground for a month, and the dust flying? Is that a really good way to handle this environmentally? Do we not have any sensitivity towards the environment and climate change and all the contributing factors that go into that? Now, I'm not trying to say that I'm using this as a scapegoat for me, because I can survive no matter what happens. But to have you people make that recommendation without considering all the ramifications behind it is ludicrous. It's insanity. Especially when you have tools in your tool chest. That can check the foundation if you would like to know. I know Ms. Klobstad has construction experience. And there are ways to check all of that, although I give you my word that it's done correctly. I was there every day. And I have built 350,000 square feet of these things, and I've never had a failure. So please respect my integrity. I'm not going to stand here and tell you that everything's done right unless I know it's done right. And I do know that, because I was there every day. And by the way, we poured on a Saturday. And we've been impugned for that, like we're trying to do something sneaky. Not the case. The batch, we only have one batch plant here. And the ones in Reno really don't come up here anymore. And on a building like this, to have the best job, and anybody that knows anything about concrete will tell you that a monolithic pour is the best thing. We ran those trucks. And the only day they could do that on Saturday, and we're willing to pay a premium for that, because they ran those trucks. And all of that 37 loads at 10 yards a load, cubic yards a load, was placed by 10 o'clock in the morning to give it all time to set up without any cold joints. All 17 loads of the slab 4,000 PSI concrete were poured monolithically, the way we had it set up professionally. So I implore you, and I beg you, to please don't allow this wasteful thing to go, to satisfy somebody's ego. And I'm not going to consider that a gift myself, because I've paid dearly for the mistake I made at going ahead and doing this. And I thought I had a partnership with the town of Truckee and the staff. And I always had. I was asked to build workforce housing. And I stood up and took it and did it for the town. And I have no regrets. But please, look at your alternatives. And I think you have some. I think I have a lot of respect for all of you guys. You guys do a great job. You have some creative thinking skills that some people don't. So please.
Thank you, Sarah. It's not a play. Enough. Thank you for the applause. We appreciate you. Was that for us or for him? That's great. We'll just take it. Great. Closing the appellant's response. We are going to bring it back to council. Any further questions before we deliberate? Further questions for the appellant or for staff? I bet you do. Take it away, Vice Mayor Zabriskie.
You said that Mike Ross was initially satisfied with the concrete?
Yes, he was. He was satisfied to keep the slab. It's documented. By their admission, it's in there. The only time that that agreement or thought fell apart was when I wouldn't agree to take down the building. And I had a lot of concerns about that. I felt it was worth the fight for the right thing. So they capitulated on that when Danielle, when Mike Ross didn't respond to Brandon Helms and Danielle stepped in and said, no longer, Mike's not available to you anymore. You're taking the whole thing down, because you wouldn't agree with what we said.
Okay. So my next question is, there's a letter that was included in your notice of appeal, an attachment. It's a letter signed by you, dated February 12, 2024. And it was in response to an offer for the town to issue an after-the-fact permit for the slab, subject to what looks to me like one condition. Well, two. Inspect the slab, allowing the town to inspect the slab, which you agreed to. And then the other condition was to conduct core testing. And what your letter said is core testing's not necessary. And then you go on with why you think it's not necessary. But in any respect, you do acknowledge all the town was asking for was core testing.
I don't, I didn't, I didn't perceive it that way. I didn't, I didn't understand that if I did core testing, then that was over. I don't have a problem with core testing.
You said.
I thought that, excuse me, but I thought that the other connection to that was also to take down the structure. And that's been, I've been steadfast in that all the way along, because I have safety concern.
Okay. So it was the steel. You would have been fine with the core testing?
Yes.
And you'd be fine with core testing today?
Absolutely.
And then when you conducted the pour at the site, you didn't advise the town in advance you were going to do the pour on those Saturdays?
I did not.
Okay. And you didn't have a civil engineer or physical engineer present?
I did not.
You relied on your own experience and expertise?
I felt I'm more than qualified for that.
Now, you had a letter from Maple Brooks dated July 28, 2023, where he's essentially inspecting the site by photographs.
That's correct.
And why didn't you provide that letter to the town at that time?
Because we were still talking about.
This is in July.
We were still talking about, about trying to resolve this. And frankly, when I decided to proceed without a permit, I really relied on the history of the town. I think in my package and in our slides here, we had a letter from Dan West that said that in his 10 years at the town, and you can look at one of my slides, it's on there, never was it required to do a tear down. Never, in 10 years has it. And, you know, quite frankly, a tear down would be more appropriate if you go to wood frame construction, because they put sheetrock over it, and you can't see all the connections. And in this particular case, you can see them. But, you know, given my decision to proceed without a permit, because I wasn't getting anywhere with the town, I was not getting anywhere with a quick response from the planning commission that was, I was told the reason I acquiesced to Danielle. And I never got that kind of respect moving forward. So that's why.
Yeah, thank you. And now I have a question on the steel frame, but it's for Mr. Ross. Mr. Ross, you explained why the staff was requiring that the steel frame be disassembled. And what I'm wondering is, even at this late date, would it be possible to go back and determine whether that steel frame meets building code standards? I know we can't redo the procedural defects, but I'm asking substantively, would there be a way of going back and testing and inspecting to determine whether the steel frame complies with the state and the town's building code standards?
Councilmember Zabriskie, I'd like to know if I can answer that and elaborate in detail. It's going to warrant a little bit more than just a black and white yes and no. It also covers a little bit of what I think I've heard in here, and I think we have to have a better understanding. Do I have that permission to proceed in that direction?
That's almost a question for the mayor.
If you go too detailed, we'll cut you off at some point, Mike. But why don't you get started?
I'll keep it very brief. First and most important here, I want to make sure that I clarify that my initial conversation that took place with the town staff, the attorney, Mr. Mancuso, that, there were several questions that came up at mind then. And there was an opportunity at that point, based on specific requirements we have during the winter months that you cannot do any site disturbance. And that would include the placement or dismantlement of any concrete. It was at that time, after making several determinations, which was not an easy task, we gave Mr. Mancuso a good opportunity to dismantle the steel, weatherize the site, and make sure it was sealed, which, by the way, still is not sealed off today. Driving by there today to check on some glass replacement, I got to see one of his forkless making a U-turn within that construction site. With that being said, we can't deny the idea of permitting. So the question really comes to mind in this case is, how do we do that when we go backwards? How do I approve the steel without really knowing what's going on? I can save the slab. That much I'll step up for. It would not be an easy task. And it would be equally as costly to, yes, x-ray on my personal request, spot checking. I'm on the understanding. We have no idea what kind of anchor bolts were placed. Nobody except for Mancuso has covered that ground. I believe I've seen a statement from both of his engineers that they were not able to do that. So to answer your question at this point, I'm going to go back to my original invite and we're just going to say offer to Mr. Mancuso. As far as I'm concerned, superstructure still needs to come down. I can work with the concrete. My determination also for the concrete was what I heard in this community was waste. We don't want that. I don't ever want that. I think the last thing we want to look at is really precedence. I need to make sure that when I met with Mancuso, the first thing that I heard from Mr. Mancuso is, why don't you do like everybody else and just judge me? Double the fees and let me keep going with the work. I took an oath as a building official. When I became a building official, I took an oath with the city and every city I worked for to uphold the minimum requirements of what the code asks for. I hope that answers your question.
Not the way I was wishing, but it does answer it. Yeah, thank you.
That's it? You're good?
Yeah, just a couple of clarifications for staff. And this is mainly because I feel really passionate about making sure we do keep it out of people's, you know, this is not about winning or losing. This is not about character. We're trying to determine facts here. So Katie Mancuso had referenced the staff report where she indicated that Mancuso's character was challenged, because staff had said something to the effect of his intention was clearly to build a permit, or build without a permit. And I'm quite certain that the staff report was prepared after the planning commission hearing where he stated that publicly, correct?
Correct.
That's correct. That was based on his testimony at the October 17, 2023 hearing. So we were parroting what he actually stated during the meeting.
That's what I expected. Thank you. During my prior questions, I asked Mr. Mancuso if he had ever commenced construction without a permit before, and he said no. There's been a lot of talk about, again, character and community value and community support, and that this was just a mistake. But as he's stated, he intended to build without a permit. Does staff know if, and that he, this was the first time that he had done it? It was the indication. Does staff have any knowledge of the accuracy of that statement? Were there other permits that had been, or other buildings that had been worked on without a permit?
In my two and a half years here, I don't have enough information that says he's gone outside of that at this point.
Thank you. That's it.
You're good. Councilmember Henderson, do you have a question?
Thank you, I do. Mike, this is sort of building on what Councilmember Zabriskie, excuse me, Vice Mayor Zabriskie was just asking you. So it sounds like you would be, your level of comfort in ensuring that the building was built safely and to bring it into compliance, you still really are, you're comfortable, you know, core testing, testing the slab, but you're not comfortable with the steel that is up? I just want to make sure I'm hearing that very clearly.
That's correct.
What would be the cost and timeline associated with the testing of the slab and concrete, et cetera?
That depends on the, we're going to say the availability for a, we're just going to say a forensic expert that can provide the x-ray and come up with adequate information that the anchor bolts are meeting the size requirements. We also got to take in consideration that, once, we got to get approvals. And we're not just looking at a planning approval. We're looking at all approvals. I think what's important to understand is, building has often gotten in trouble in many jurisdictions for the assumption that just because we have multiple buildings, that it doesn't have to continue moving forward with those approvals, TDPUD, fire, planning, engineering. It might be a slam dunk, but we make sure before we issue a permit, we're not coming back to anybody in the community and telling them that they have to stop work because one of us made a mistake. So to answer your question, yes, I'm still moving into that direction. But I can work with the slab. It's really going to be dictated on how fast we can get a plan review and approvals. And then when can we get the consultants?
And historically, I guess, how long has that taken? What has that looked like?
I'm going to have difficulties answering that. I do know that Truckee is somewhat remote. I can't say that people are readily available. My best guess is Sacramento, San Francisco, and Reno would and should have some availability. Construction is kind of a wicked animal. It's really based on supply and demand. That can make it difficult. I'm well-versed in that avenue. So plan reviews, plan review process, as far as I'm concerned, and I think I said this to Mancuso on my original, is that I would go outside the box and share the fact that I cover everything needed to help move this thing through the process. Once we get approvals and it's deconstructed, then I would find an alternative way to making sure that we can maintain the integrity of that foundation and that slab.
Is there a way, a lot of what I heard in public comment was related to the... was related to the health and safety considerations related to a deconstruction? I would have similar concerns if it remained because we don't know about the health, sort of, safety of the building. Is there a way to sort of weigh or analyze those risks?
Considering that I've seen more deconstruction, and this does not relate directly to unpermitted work, but I've had projects down in the Southern California basin that have been 10,000, 15,000 to 20,000, where we're looking at caissons, grade beams, and slabs. And trust me, it can be. I think the concern I would have, I would match up with the community, is do we want to tax and lose those resources that we put into it?
And last question for you, Mike. Are there any other paths forward or alternatives that you've used successfully amongst sort of that roughly 90% of unpermitted new construction that you mentioned earlier?
Well, I'm trying to get the news, the, trying to get the message out and have been since I've been here is that the building division is user-friendly. I can't tell you that we are 100% perfect. We are all working on improving our process collectively. I think if everybody recalls, when I got here, we were really in dire straits and we were suffering from COVID, cyber, and trying to pick up the pieces. We took what was a six to seven month turnaround time and managed to do that turnaround within three, two to three weeks and actually having timeframes. I don't know if that answered your question or not.
No, that's helpful. And then I'm obviously not a steel expert, but I believe we do have some folks on the appellate's team who might be there if they wanted to weigh in on the question as to the risks associated with deconstruction versus the building as it is now, given that it didn't go through a permitting process. I'd be open to hearing that if the mayor indulges me.
Yes, one more comment if I might?
Yeah, Mike, go ahead. Just as an app, I clearly understand the idea and the variation between a bolt-on, weld-on method. One of my conditions on going out to the site was looking at exactly that. There are always going to be concerns if we have a welded condition out there. Bolting conditions are going to be dangerous putting them up or taking them down. It's just an opposite. And with this structure, not having those bolts torqued, it's nothing more than putting in a reverse turn and ensuring the fact that you have professional entities, which all of these guys are, to be able to deconstruct. Considering it is an erection package, that should not be a major issue. Seen it done before.
Thanks, Mike. Courtney, do you have a specific question for one of the folks in the room? Do you want to just articulate that?
Yeah, I, thank you, Mayor. I think it's the same question that I had to Mike. I'm just, you know, getting different perspectives on this. I'm not a steel expert, but the health and safety considerations or risks associated with a deconstruction versus a structure that remains that we don't know if it is safe because it did not go through a permitting process.
Mr. Walker, you want to?
I'm asking for a weighing of the risks, if you will.
I think that'd be your expertise, Mr. Walker, right, Brian?
Yes, Brian. I have to, I don't normally do this, but I have to strongly disagree with that gentleman. Putting it up, you're in control of it. You can loosen things up, open things up to get your connections in and pull them back down tight again. Once it's put together, the temperatures of steel, expand steel and contract steel constantly, constantly. And it moves way more than anybody thinks. So to say that you just do it in reverse is completely wrong. You have no idea what that one piece of steel is going to do when it's spring loaded and you don't know it's under that much tension. The crane operator is telling you, I got 5,000 pounds on it. It's not moving and we're all unbolted. Where's it going to go? So I've been doing this for 45 years. And to say that putting it up is just the same as taking it down is false. Is absolutely false.
Okay. Councilmember Henderson, does that answer your question?
Can I do a follow-up?
Thank you for the perspectives.
Mr. Walker, Mr. Walker, can I do a follow-up? There's one thing I didn't understand. When you're talking about it being under tension, you're talking about a structure that's already been torqued.
No, no. No, because you got to, you got to picture this stuff comes out and it's not in a straight line. It's 50 foot long. So that column may be going left, going right. When you put it up and you tie to it, it straightens it out, puts it under tension. And we've never had any inspections on those buildings until it's erected. Bolters torqued according to the specs and according to a high-strength bolt test agency that's standing there watching us do it. And then inspections continue.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Henderson, any additional questions at this time? You can ask more.
No, thank you.
Okay.
No.
All right. Any other questions from anybody before we continue on? I believe, do we need to take a quick break, Councilmember Henderson? Are you, how long do we have? So you have to relocate.
They're kicking me out of this room in 15 minutes. And I'll just have to relocate to another room and send, thank you.
Thank you. So we'll go for about 15 minutes and we'll see where we get. All right, it's back for deliberation. Is there any other questions for staff? Is there anybody who would like to bring anything else up? Is there anything else staff would like to add to the record? Go ahead, Mike.
A couple of questions that I heard. I think this is for Mancuso's staff that did the work. These are contractors. Did they ask if there was a permit on site before they started doing the work? I think that that would be a real ballot. I've heard in here on an ongoing basis, nobody condones it, but it seems to be the process is, let's go ahead and try to do the permit and just charge for the double fees. That's always going to be of concern. And I'd have to really look at that level of credibility. So I'll leave it alone. There's a lot I'd like to say, but I'll leave it at that.
Are subcontractors who perform work on unpermitted structures, is that a labor board or construction board issue?
Absolutely.
It is?
Yes. In fact, any and all entities that are involved on the project without a permit, and that would include the Board of Engineers in which I've engaged out in Southern California.
Great. And can you maybe just speak a minute? I heard a couple of comments from the appellant with regards to reaching out to either you or Danielle and either a lack of reply or untimely replies. Obviously, we don't have the email record here in front of us for all of those. But can you at least speak to how many times you were out on that site, you know, with the Mancusos? And at what point were you out there prior to the structure going up?
No. The only time I was out there, I've been around the area afterwards, but it was for personal business only. I think I was very clear with Mr. Mancuso onsite that we would be paying attention to the site to ensure the fact no work could move forward until we could get resolution on the matter.
Great. Thank you. Okay. So once again, remind here, this is not a character hearing. This is a very clear and precise hearing to uphold and/or grant the appeal for the notices that are in front of us. Vice Mayor Zabriski, are you prepared to begin deliberation?
The issue for me all along, pretty much, has been the issue of safety. And I've been concerned about the issue of waste. The, for this proceeding, I find the complaints about character attacks irrelevant to my decision-making and a distraction. And so I'm focusing on my concern about safety and waste. What I heard from Mr. Mancuso is certainly that the concrete issue could and should have been resolved. According to Mr. Mancuso, it still can. He's willing to do the core testing now. The steel work gives me pause. We're really hearing two diametrically opposite opinions on what's the safer thing to do. I'm interested in seeing the deadlines for the abatement order extended in the event that there could be a resolution that minimizes waste, still keeping uppermost in mind the safety of the structure, the safety of the community. That's what I take away from what staff has done throughout this. Two things, complying with the law and keeping the community safe. So despite all the wonderful things Mr. Mancuso has done throughout his career for the town and for other people, I'm just looking at this case and those two issues.
So to summarize your basic position, it would be to uphold the notices in front of us and to extend the deadline beyond July 25 on the demolition.
I could continue the matter, but to me, liability is clear. It's documented. I saw the argument about phasing. And for me, that really affected the credibility of the appellate, given how well documented the form of the phasing was. And it's really difficult for me to reconcile Mr. Mancuso not realizing what he was doing every step of the way with the fact that he has decades of experience in this business. So I see the building plans having been rejected before the poor as something he, or at least his associates, whoever's working under him, couldn't help but recognize meaning that he was acting against the law, that he was taking a risk. And so for me, it's only a matter of what's the most appropriate fine. I look at the, at the abatement as simply being another form of a penalty. And so I'm, want to focus more on the safety aspect and do what's safest for the community.
Okay. Let's hear from Councilmember Clostan.
Well, I mostly concur with Vice Mayor Zabriski. My major concern too is the community and its safety. And that's what we're charged with here, not just we, the council, but staff as well. We're responsible to protect the health and safety of our community. And in this case, that requires us to do, obviously, an enormous amount of fact-finding, which over the last two hours, to whatever hours, I think we have done. It is clear that Mr. Mancuso proceeded without a permit, understanding that that was against the law and that that was, he was taking on a risk. I appreciate his admission of that. And I too share his frustration in the process and wish that we could have done something that that would have been more collaborative in that collaborative culture. And I believe that's what staff was trying to do when they said, hey, why don't you take this opportunity over the winter to deconstruct the vertical stuff and we will work with you on the foundation? My understanding is we received an email or a letter from Mr. Mancuso saying that he refused to do that, to deconstruct the steel. And that's when we triggered the notice of violation. Is that accurate?
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah. So I feel, I feel that staff tried and that was, that was rejected. I don't, I don't want to see that concrete removed either for many, many reasons, most of which the waste. So I appreciate Mr. Ross's willingness to find a path forward on that. But I do caution you in making any guarantees because I've seen a lot of voids in concrete that we thought was poured really well and vibrated perfectly and stacked just right. So we need to accept the fact that we can endeavor to do so, but there still might be corrective action needed if any of those defects are found. So again, I'll go back to this is not about winning and losing. This is about right and wrong. This is about whether or not the town of Truckee is going to condone somebody moving forward knowingly, breaking the law and constructing without a permit. And I cannot support that. I cannot condone that. This was not a mistake. This was intentional. And we need to make sure that our community understands that we're going to stand by it and protect it against people doing unpermitted construction, which could risk the health and safety of our community. So that's where I stand. I would be amenable to consider an extension of the abatement timeline in an effort to try to find some resolution or get a clear determination from the state contractors board. I would be happy to support that. But I, I support the recommendation before us. And we'd love to hear my other council members' opinions.
Councilmember Romac, do you mind if we skip to Councilmember Henderson and let her go so she can do what she needs to do? Councilmember Henderson, go ahead. Why don't you chime in?
Okay, thank you for that. I'll try to be relatively quick here. You know, to be totally candid, I think this is a truly horrible situation for everyone involved. And that's why I was asking a lot of questions about those other paths forward because I don't want to see a building deconstructed. Vice Mayor Zabriski said, you know, this is about health and safety. And I fundamentally agree with that. Part of why we are in this horrible situation is because there was a move to construct knowingly without following the processes and without following required permitting. And that's permitting that every developer and contractor must go through in this town. If we talk about, you know, holding people to the same standards, we have to do that equitably. I am uncomfortable setting a precedent that we condone unpermitted work that has the potential to jeopardize health and safety of those in our community. Because right now, we can't say that this meets all of our development codes and standards. It's simply an unknown. We don't know what would happen if an issue arose with the structure. I mentioned earlier, a lot of the public comments have been about the safety issues associated with the deconstruction. And I agree, those are very, very real risks. But I'm also uncomfortable saying go forth because we don't know if the building is currently safe. Mr. Mancuso, I think you said it really well earlier. You don't want it on your conscience if someone gets hurt as a result of the deconstruction. And I don't want that. Similarly, I don't want it on our conscience if someone gets hurt because the building isn't safe. And again, we just don't know that right now. What we, I think, do know fairly definitively is that the building was done without the necessary permits. That's been acknowledged. And building permits are required by law as a public safety measure. Permits ensure that construction is performed in compliance with state and local codes, including safety standards. And failure to obtain a building permit is a violation of contractor's license law. And that's directly from the Contractor State License Board website. Requiring a deconstruction is similarly a precedent that I do not want to set. So now we're in this place where we have to choose what we believe is more dangerous. I would like us to find a compromise. I think that there is some compromise here in that, you know, as our building official was saying, you know, we could permit after the fact, the slab and the foundation. I realize that is not, you know, retaining the entirety of the structure. I am trying to find places of compromise here. I'm also comfortable supporting an extended timeline, as has just been discussed by two of my fellow council members. I want us to find a compromise. I know not everyone is going to be happy with what that compromise looks like. I say this a lot on the dais. I say it in business. A compromise is when everyone walks away a little unhappy because everyone gave up something. I'm hearing that town staff is willing to compromise on some portion of after-the-fact permitting of this project, this building. And I would like to hear, you know, exactly what compromise Mr. Mancuso and his team are willing to make as well because I want us to find a path forward ultimately. I do have to relocate to a different room here, so I'm going to have to sign off for just a few moments and then I will sign back on. I apologize.
Councilmember Henderson, hold on one second. Really quick, thank you for your comments. Are you, can you assure us that you're going to be relocating within the same address?
Yes, I am.
Thank you. That's what we needed to hear. So go ahead and relocate. And we're going to continue on with the hearing in your absence and then just pop back in when you're ready.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Councilmember Romac.
Sure. Thank you all for your comments so far. Thank you, everybody, for being here and participating in this process. You know, the Truckee way was brought up earlier in the meeting, and I pulled it up to remind myself. And one of the pieces of it is you separate the people. And one of the pieces of it is you separate the people from the problem. And I think that's important and acknowledging, Mr. Mancuso, you have done incredible things for our community. I know all of us are so appreciative of what exists in the Pioneer Commerce Center now, whether we're eating a sandwich or getting our car fixed or having relatives live in some of the apartments. So I want to acknowledge that. In the same vein, as I know staff works incredibly hard to try to do the best for our town. So just wanted to acknowledge that as well, that you guys work tirelessly too and thank you for that. So separating people from the problem, we do have a problem here. And Mr. Mancuso, I think in your final statements, you said, I agree, there was a transgression. And I think we've all acknowledged, we realize there's a problem. A structure was built without the proper permits. So I agree with my fellow council members that there was a problem. Now we have to figure out what is the appropriate penalty and what is the appropriate remediation. Vice Mayor Zabriskie, you said how we're hearing two diametrically opposed viewpoints on what's safer. I'm struggling with that too. I am not a steel expert or a building expert of any sense of the word. So, you know, I don't know what's safer. And I think ultimately, that's what we want for our community, is to ensure if a building stays up, it's safe. If it comes down, that it's also safe for those working on it. So I would be in support of finding some other solutions. Jen, did you?
Yeah. Sorry to interrupt you, but I do think there's value in your colleague hearing the rest of your deliberations. So if we could maybe pause until Councilmember Henderson can join and hear.
Can we at least let Councilmember Romack finish? I understand that we want to do that. And as long as Councilmember Henderson's in the same room, I do think that's valid as well, but I don't want her to lose her train of thought. But if you want to finish, just finish.
I was just getting close to finishing. So yeah, I'm open to other ideas. And if that's an extension of abatement or other solutions we can come up to, I'm open to that rather than removing everything. So yeah, that's it.
Okay. What did you want to add?
And if we need to, we can repeat this for Councilmember Henderson. But I understand everybody is concerned about the safety of the deconstruction versus the safety of the building. My perspective on this is that the deconstruction safety is a confined period of time. And we know when it will start and when it will end. The life of the building is not defined. And without knowing that it is built to all codes and standards and that it is safe for our community, that is an undetermined amount of risk, in my opinion.
Ooh, I turned my mic off. I know you want to say something else. If you could write that thought down and hold it. We're going to take a five-minute recess while Councilmember Henderson gets back online and we will resume literally at 8:40 on the back clock. So please, everybody on council, just be close by and ready to resume at 8:40. Thank you. Okay, we're good. Courtney, you're back on. Councilmember Henderson? Yep, I see her. Dan, we're live. Everybody in the audience, feel free to take your side convos outside. We will not be offended. We're just going to keep cruising here. Thank you. Okay. We're almost through deliberation on this one. We are resuming item 7.1. Councilmember Romack had another thought.
Well, and this is more just acknowledgement of what staff had said earlier and based on some of the public comments. So just quickly to Danielle's point about we're always looking at our development code and ways to make improvements. And I feel like this council is always committed to continuing to look at improving processes and just reminding everybody in this room that we are undergoing an operational assessment currently that is looking at all of our departments and all the different functions to give us a better understanding if there's ways to make improvements. So I just wanted to highlight that since that did come up from a few folks. And I think it's important that we are taking a look if we can do things better.
Yeah, thank you so much. And I think my fellow council members really have said everything quite perfectly, in my opinion. This isn't a person. It's not personal. It's absolutely trying to be equal adopters of the rules and regulations that are in place. And that is what our job is to do, is to treat everybody equally. It's to treat people with dignity, with the respect and all of those things that we're so kind to say in the Truckee Way that we do try to uphold. And I think that's what we've done here. I've seen a good faith effort by our staff to work with the property owners here to try to come to a solution. And I'm confident that we wouldn't be here today if those conversations and negotiations resulted in a lot of the offers that were on the table at the time. I also, I've seen those. And so I'm 100% supportive of what's already been deliberated by my fellow council members. I believe we're unanimous in that. What I would like to maybe ask our attorney is if we delay the abatement notice by an extra 30 days, so approximately a 60 days, what I'd personally like to see, so that we're not arguing back and forth over what's safe and who knows what about the said steel structure there, is can we delay it by 30 days? Are we able to put any caveats onto that in any way that says a mutually agreed upon steel structural professional will be brought in to mediate in the same way that we mediate other adjudications? Is this a mediation type of opportunity? Or can you help us work through what our options may be to understand truly the safety that, you know, I think has been discussed? And I think we just obviously have some differing opinions on.
I do have an idea. And that idea is that you could certainly extend the deadline for completion of the removal in the abatement order. And you could direct staff to continue talking to Mr. Mancuso and his team to see if there is some path forward that does not entail the deconstruction of the building that would be to Mr. Ross's satisfaction. Because ultimately, Mr. Ross has to make decisions about upholding the building codes and what's safe for the public. But you could tell us to do that. We could think about that. We can work on that. If you like, we could, because I'd really, rather than the council just sort of imposing that, I personally would really love a few minutes to talk to Mr. Mancuso's attorney and to staff's attorney to see if we can work out some kind of agreement in principle along those lines. So if you felt like giving us just a few minutes to go talk, maybe we could come back and have something that we all agree on, perhaps.
And could that agreement include a timeline of 60 days or so, as long as everybody agrees to that? With, I guess what we don't want to happen is we don't want to have to come back and have a rehearing of this nature. We would like to see either a solution. Jen, do you have something to add?
Well, yeah. So if we're going to recess and let the attorneys talk, I think we recessed during your break. Realistically, we need more than 30 days. Core testing, it's not just core testing, as Councilmember Clof said, pointed out. There's some other testing and information we're going to need to gather. The intention being trying to preserve the foundation, but that may or may not be possible depending on what is found. We do think we can work with the appellant and try to mutually agree upon a third-party forensic expert to come in and look at the steel building. That would be at the expense of the appellant or that would be our recommendation. So realistically, to work through all of that and the timing, it is beyond 30 days and probably looking at, I think we would suggest it be October 14th to try to get that finished before the winter restrictions on excavation. And if we can't reach some conclusion by then, it would come back to you at that point.
And in what form would it come back to us?
Well, let's think about that. Because I think that one approach could be that the abatement order would remain in effect until and unless a suitable agreement is reached on an alternative approach that satisfies Mr. Ross. So I think that it would only come back to council if we have a solution. And if we don't have a solution, I don't think it would come back to council.
Because a notice of abatement and to deconstruct would remain in effect until whatever date we put on that, if we want to change the date tonight.
Right. So what could come back? If we can work something out, you know, within the next few months, could be an item requesting you to rescind the notice, or the order to abate or hold it in abeyance or something. We can figure that out. But I think that there's something here that's worth discussing.
Is the rest of council interested in taking another five-minute recess and allowing the attorneys to go work something out and come back to us with a solution on this particular piece of it?
Yes.
Or could we hear the next?
Yeah. Can we continue while the attorneys talk or no? How does that work?
Certainly.
Can we start the next appeal while the first appeal is ongoing?
You can continue this item until a time that is a few minutes away. We can hear another item and then you can reconvene on this one.
Perhaps a suggestion would be we do the third item, which should be relatively quick, so the next appeal does not have to get in the process and have a longer delay. So go to 7.3.
Okay. Or I was going to say we get through staff report and the appellant's presentation. So that'd be about 25 minutes or so.
That's your discretion.
Want to do 7.3? Okay. All right. So we will pause item 7.1 to approximately 9:10. What do you guys want? 20 minutes? 20 minutes? Okay. To when they come back. 9:10, we are going to shoot for. Forgot to ask if that was amenable to the appellant. Was that amenable to you? Mr. Brown? Mr. Mancuso? That's amenable?
It is.
Thank you. 20 minutes. See you. Bye. Okay. All right. We're going to move on. Sorry, appellant number two. It's actually in your best interest. Trust us. We don't want to interrupt you. We will move on to item 7.3.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Melissa Atchison. I am the town senior accountant and I'll be I am the town senior accountant and I'll be presenting the 2024-25 annual operating budget and the five-year capital improvement project budget. This, we're gonna make this real quick. First start for the budget process, a good place to start is the letter from the town manager. This includes assumptions used in the budget process, challenges the town is facing, funding, funding for projects and priorities and other items of interest. To give an overall view of the operating budget, our total operating expenses is $50.6 million. This will include 159 full-time employees. This is a balanced budget where our revenues exceed our expenses. This also includes a contingency savings of 40,000, or 40% of the general fund expenses. And this will include basic services that we provide at the same or advanced level. For our five-year capital improvement plan, we are including a $32.6 million for funded projects in our budget for FY 24-25, and this includes 62 projects. For the five-year plan, our general fund is funding $37.2 million, while the general fund designation funding is $16.5 million. This includes 101 projects totaling $147.8 million in expenses. Some changes that we made since our meeting in May 28th. We adjusted the general fund beginning balances for FY 23-24 for the Gatsby 96, and we finalized the FY 22-23 financials, which created a reduction of $1.6 million. We also rolled in impacts of negotiations and updated the budget's destabilization, designation saving up to, or savings is $1.7 million. We also converted a part-time code compliance officer to full-time with benefits. This is about $65,000 annually, and this comes from the general fund and the building fund. Adjusted the sustainability designation savings to a little over $500,000, and that is calculated by the FY 23-24 estimated actual budget surplus. We also updated the general fund capital projects contribution based on all the CIP changes, and this was a reduction of $3.3 million. And council's direction was not to amend the finance agreement for CAN averaging, so we reduced the solid waste fund by $26,000. I just want to open up to council for any questions.
Is that your entire presentation?
Yep.
That was also Melissa's first presentation.
Oh, yay. Thank you, Melissa. All righty then. Councilmember Romack, any questions? Councilmember Clovestad?
No, thank you, Melissa. Everything seems to be in accordance with our last discussion.
Councilmember Zabriski?
Can you go back to the second slide?
Vice Mayor Zabriski?
Next one. No, next one. In the lower left-hand corner, five-year general fund funding, and then general fund designation funding. So can you just elaborate a little bit on this, what these numbers mean and where the difference goes?
So the general fund is contributing a very astounding $37.2 million to the town's capital improvement projects over the next five years. And in addition, council has been judiciously saving for different priorities into our designations. So in addition to just $37.2 coming straight from the general fund, there's also $16.5 million coming from the various designations in the general fund. So that could include the economic development designation, budget stabilization, sustainability designation, road maintenance reserve, all those different pots that council has been saving in.
Okay. And then in the text, it says for fiscal year 2024, the upcoming fiscal year, it looks like a difference of $3.1 million between what we thought was the operating surplus and what it's gonna be. The operating surplus declined by about $3.1 from what we previously were expecting.
That was for fiscal year 23-24?
It says 24-25. And then about a $3.8 reduction for 28/29. I'm on the second page of the.
Right. So we, and from the last version of the budget, we, we rolled in the changes from negotiations. That was the primary driver of the decrease in the budget surplus because the impacts of negotiations roll into that operating expense line.
Right. Okay, so the decrease is $3.1 million for the next fiscal year? Do I read that correctly?
Correct.
Okay. And then $3.8 was a decrease for 28-29?
Correct.
Thank you.
There were some other minor changes where things went up and down, like we found some new revenue and that we weren't accounting for, but that, those, the main, major driver was the, the negotiation changes.
Correct. Thank you.
Good. Councilmember Henderson, any questions?
No, I think we've covered it in the prior budget workshops. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. And for everybody who, I don't think there was a slide, but this is our fourth time talking about the budget this year, I believe. So if you feel like we're glossing over $50 million really quickly, it's only because this is the fourth time we've talked about it. And we've had many, many robust conversations about all the various projects happening in town. With that said, I'm gonna open public comment on item 7.3. Any member of the public wish to address us on this particular item? Same podium, same microphone, seeing none?
In my 11 years, it's the biggest crowd we've ever had for the budget. So we're very excited about this.
Great. No public comments on the budget? Closing public comments? Bring it back to council for any deliberation and/or a motion. Councilmember Romack?
I would just thank staff for all the hard work going into it, and I'd be happy to make a motion. All right, I see heads nodding. I would make a motion that we approve Resolution 2024-49 to adopt the Town of Trekey operating and capital budgets for fiscal year 24-25, including proposed personnel changes and adopt the estimated actuals for fiscal year 23-24 capital improvement projects as amended budget amounts.
And I'll second.
And we are gonna do a roll call, please, Sarah.
Thank you, councilmember Romack.
Yes.
Councilmember Clovestad.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Zabriski.
Yes.
Mayor Polavy.
Yes.
And councilmember Henderson.
Yes.
Thank you.
Great. Motion passes. Thank you. That is good for 7.3. Seeing as just where we are, I, I think we're gonna start 7.2 and just get going. These wonderful people have been waiting patiently, so let's not delay them longer. What we'll try to do, if we're gonna, while they're getting set up, it's gonna be the exact same appeal process. So the timing is gonna be the same. We're gonna start with the staff report. Appellants, you'll have 15 minutes. And then we'll bring it back for some deliberation and questions. We will go back out for a five-minute rebuttal. We'll have some public comments. And what we'll just try to do is when all those attorneys come back in the room, we're obviously not gonna stop mid-sentence. We'll allow for at least one of the blocks to go through. And, and we'll try to go from there and, and try to give you your due process just the same way that we have given everybody else. We apologize for the breakup and all of that. Ready, Rosie?
Ready.
All right.
Good evening, Mayor and council. I'm Rosie Johnson, program analyst for the short-term rental division. And I'm accompanied by our short-term rental code compliance officer, Katie McCartney, who will be here to help answer any questions should they arise. This is an appeal hearing specifically for administrative citations issued at 10161 Palisades Drive, Unit 1, regarding violations of the short-term rental ordinance as listed in town's municipal code. Trekey Municipal Code Chapter 5.02 establishes the standards and requirements for operation of short-term rentals, or STRs. To start, I want to briefly go over pertinent code sections from this chapter that are applicable to the appeal. Section 5.02020 defines and requires that each short-term rental designate a local contact person who is available on a 24-hour basis, who maintains the ability to be onsite within 60 minutes, and has the authority to assume management of the short-term rental. This section further defines a short-term rental operator as the legal owner or who has right to possession of the short-term rental, or man, or any manager, agent, or representative that acts under the authority or direction of the owner. In relation to this appeal, the appellant and property owner, Jana Thomasello of 10161 Palisades Drive, Unit 1, granted the authority to a property manager to act as a short-term rental operator and as a designated local contact for the property in question. Section 5.02040 establishes that the short-term rental operator is responsible for taking any action necessary to ensure guests abide by the terms of the short-term rental ordinance. This section also establishes when a complaint is received in relation to a short-term rental, the local contact person will investigate the complaint, discontinue any violation within 60 minutes, and the contact person will submit a verbal or written explanation to the town that describes the steps taken during the investigation, whether violation has occurred, and to resolve any violation that has occurred. Any requirement of the section is that each, another requirement of the section is that each short-term rental shall be equipped with a minimum service level of two trashcans. Finally, Section 5.02060 states that the owner of a short-term rental shall be deemed responsible for all violations occurring at the short-term rental or in connection to its operation. I'm gonna run through a brief complaint and warning history that led up to the issuance of the administrative citations. On December 10th, 2022, and after the fact, complaint was received via email for excess trash from 10161 Palisades Drive, Unit 1, that was improperly placed in the neighbor's trashcan with a shared bear shed. An educational email was then sent notifying the short-term rental operator of the complaint received and to be conscious of the potential issue. When a complaint is not received within real time and is provided to us after the potential violation's occurrence, it is considered after the fact. When an after-the-fact complaint is received, we follow it from a stance of education outreach since we are not able to substantiate the complaint. A second complaint was received on July 4th, 2023, to the short-term rental helpline regarding the same issue. Our helpline agent left a voicemail for the local contact with details regarding the complaint, and we did not receive a return response and remedy on the complaint from the local contact until the following day. Short-term rental division staff proceeded with a site inspection to verify that the complaint was remedied and was able to verify that no violation was present. Staff then proceeded with issuance of a warning to the short-term rental operator for an unresponsive local contact and lack of complaint resolution within the required timeframe. A third complaint of a similar nature was received by the short-term rental helpline on February 12th, 2024. The helpline agent left a voicemail with the local contact. In addition, short-term rental division staff placed a second call to the local contact to notify of the complaint, and a second voice message was left. Staff completed a site visit and verified with TTSD that the property was not enrolled in a two-trashcan service. The town did not receive a returned communication on resolution, a resolution until two days later. The first administrative citation was then issued to the owner for an unresponsive local contact and lack of complaint resolution within the required timeframe and lack of two-can trash service. A $1,500 fine was assessed for these violations. Municipal code provides that an operator may appeal a citation in administrative hearing. An appeal request for the property owner, Ms. Thomasello, was received on March 3rd, 2024 for the first administrative citation. Then on March 12th, a fourth complaint was received by the short-term rental helpline regarding the same issue. The helpline agent left a voicemail with the local contact person. Short-term rental division staff then followed up and left a voice message with the local contact and with the owner, and proceeded with normal investigation protocol. The town did not receive a returned communication within the required timeframe. A second administrative citation was then issued to the owner for the same violations that occurred in the first administrative citation. A $3,000 fine was assessed for these violations. And in addition, staff escalated the local contact issue to the property management company's general manager with concerns with lack of response and required the property manager to verify that the local contact information was up to date for this property. After the issuance of the second administrative citation on March 26th, Ms. Thomasello requested to appeal both administrative citations. The next day, the administrative appeal hearing took place with Hillary Hobbs as the hearing officer. The hearing officer determined that the citations were issued in compliance with the municipal code. A notice of determination was issued, and both citations were upheld. I do want to add further that after issuance of the administrative citations and subsequent administrative appeal hearing, that Ms. Thomasello has taken further steps to address ongoing challenges at her property, has maintained proactive communication with the short-term rental division, and we continue to work together on resolution. Municipal code further provides that an operator may appeal the decision of the hearing officer to town council by filing a notice of appeal with the town clerk. On April 26th, 2024, Ms. Thomasello filed a second notice of appeal to the town clerk so as to appeal the decision to town council, which leads us to tonight's appeal hearing. Town council's role in the appeal is limited to determining whether the citations issued were in compliance with the town municipal code, and the findings of the town council will be final and conclusive. This is the end of my presentation this evening, but I will end with staff's recommendation that the town council conduct a public hearing and make a finding of non-compliance with the Town of Trekey Municipal Code and uphold the notice of determination judgment amount of $4,500. And I will pull up Jana Thomasello's presentation so you could take the dais.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
I'll give you some relief here.
15 minutes for you, Ms. Thomasello. And Sarah's got the timer, I think. Yep, great.
Okay. So first of all, I just want to introduce myself. I know you have gotten a lot of data. I don't know if you've had time to read it, given these other circumstances. Jana Thomasello, I've been a homeowner in Tahoe for almost 30 years. I purchased in Trekey, moved from Tahoe City. I am a short-term rental homeowner, but I want you to know that I actually am a part-time resident here, and I'm proud to be part of Trekey. I consider myself local. Born in California, raised here, bought a property in my twenties. So being here, it's important to me to voice my opinion, and I'm not here just because I rent. So I shared with you a document, but I've summarized it here. If you go to that next slide. So the first thing is, is I want to tell you while I'm appealing, and I have to change this a bit because I just learned last night that you're limited either basically to say yes or no. So when I stand up here now, I'm gonna tell you, you know, I want to appeal this on some, some particular circumstances that I'm gonna share with you. But I'm still gonna tell you, I acknowledge those violations and the reasons for the citation. I understand that even though I had an operator, that I am ultimately responsible for those, those violations and, and the fines and things, and I take accountability for that. So I'm gonna share some other things. So the last thing is, is I appreciate the purpose and intent of ordinances. I also live in an area in El Dorado Hills, HOA. I know why we have rules and guidelines, and it's always been my intent to support those and do the right thing. There are circumstances I'm gonna share with you that, why these things happen and why I'm asking for relief. So let's go to the next slide. Am I talking in this okay? So my background here is even though I've owned for 30 years, I bought here in '17, I would have never been part of the short-term rental. I did that in 2021. I engaged with Macasa as a local, their local team, and they've managed everything for me. The permitting, the rental, the maintenance, the payments and everything, and I entrusted them to do that. So I, I'll be honest, I didn't, wasn't advised to look at ordinances. I wasn't advised on any particulars. I did everything they told me to do. So standing here, I'm telling you, I was a little bit uninformed until the last five months, and it's been a very interesting road and journey to get smart. It's challenging, and it's been very costly. So they served as my local agent, like Rosie shared. But I wasn't absent. I participated in a lot. I don't know if you saw the document. When I came to do that first appeal, I was misinformed. I thought that I needed to document why that happened, what I'd done, and the context of the cause for that complaint. And I learned through you guys over there, your staff, that really it just comes down to the ordinance. Did you follow that? Why didn't you? Yes or no? So anyway, I'm gonna, I'm gonna address that. I have experienced some service and support issues with this company. There's a lot of lack of communication. I saw some of that intermittently as a, own, having a house and dealing with them and their failure to perform as a local agent, I only realized in February. So that citation happened on February 12th. I received a registered letter on February 27th. And I got to tell you, I was on the phone with Katie on March 12th, and she said, "By the way, another citation was just issued." So I'm going to comment a little bit about that. It has not been good, and it has been really bad since in the last five months working with them. And that's not why I'm here to tell you that, but as a homeowner, that entrusts people to do that job for you and work with your staff, there's some limitations in what you can do because you're looking in the rearview mirror. I am in the process of terminating that engagement. I actually turned off, shut down, closed down my calendar, and I haven't had any rentals since March 18th. So until I get this resolved and figure it out and understand what I'm supposed to do and how to do that right and do that with somebody that's going to be reliable, that's where I am today. So let's go to the next slide, and where am I on time? I have a few minutes. Okay. So in addition to what Rosie shared in that statement, I had to dig back and look at everything. I've looked at all the way back to when I got my first permit and engaged with Vacasa, and then the more current communications. So they were my local contact here, and there were some issues here. They had a lot of management issues. They made some changes. At the end, February 4th, they said that they sent a note and changed the contact information for my home and probably others. As it turns out, that was sent to compliance at Tahoe Donner. Okay, they sent it to the wrong place. It was impossible for them to answer those calls. They had a phone number set up. They had a different management system. They had a former employee on that number. My problem, I'm not a victim here, you guys, but I couldn't control that. I didn't even know about it. So the second thing is, is I didn't really learn about those previous warnings that Rosie outlined until after that first appeal. When I went to that, presented what I thought was the right thing to present, I learned a lot. And those two warnings, I didn't get a notification from the Town of Truckee, and I didn't get anything from my reliable, supposedly caretaker and person that was going to be doing that work here, that whole company, actually. I've already mentioned that I paused my rent. I have no rentals now, and I'm going to figure this out. I did go to the HOA, and if you happen to look at my original information, I initiated that even a year and a half ago, and I tried to do that with the HOA. They were under a different management. It didn't seem like I needed to do that. I was working with my neighbor, et cetera, et cetera. I've reissued that. I've talked to them. They have architectural code that I can go through, and I've talked to Truckee sanitation, and they've approved what I can pursue if I want to. And then I am actively qualifying a new and reliable local management company. So that's some additional information. I want to tell you that's not in this package is that I only learned late last night of really what you can determine, what the scope of your ability is. Either it's pretty much yes or no is how I'm simply stating it. So I went back to look at all of my documentation that I ever received. And I could have missed something, but I got a whole bunch of things. I received a notice in November 2021 from, sorry, I didn't bring my phone or whatever, but that said that I was out of compliance, that there wasn't a bear box on my property, and this was before I ever even rented. It was right when my permit came up. And I think her name was, well, I'll have to tell you after. And it said, this is the compliance, and it says, "You need to have a bear box that has two garbage cans in it." Okay, that's what it says. I can read it to you right here. I think I have it. Anyway, in the interest of time, I wrote to that individual by email and said, "I think this is incorrect. I do have a bear box. I live in a community that's HOA. These are townhouses. This is what it is." And I replied, and they wrote back and said, "Oh yeah, sorry, that letter was incorrect. You're in compliance." Now, I have since read what that code says now, whether that was different in 2021 or it was the same. What was in that letter led me to believe, "Hey, I live in a townhouse. I have a bear box. There's two garbage cans in there." And it wasn't as specific as how that ordinance reads. So I didn't even bring that up before. I didn't even realize it, but I want to make a case for these because I feel like I didn't have the opportunity to be informed. So let's go to the, I'll just go to the last slide. So my summary, I'm sorry, is it reverberating or can you hear me? Oh, for me, it sounds weird. Okay, so here's my summary. This is just a series of unfortunate circumstances that I'm experiencing, and I feel like I'm looking in the rearview mirror as a homeowner. There are things that I could do, and I think I've been in compliance for almost everything, if you read through. I'm not one to sit back. If I know about something, I'm going to do it, and I took those actions. With regards to these citations, I was informed about the citations. I got that note on the 27th, which was whatever, 14 days after it was issued. But I never was notified of the warnings. They went to my operator, and I understand why, but I had no opportunity to take action or understand what was given to them or what that education was. So it's not a complaint about how you're operating, but I'm just pointing out I didn't have a chance to be warned. And then these fines are steep. It's a lot of money. So when you're working in the rearview mirror, you can't influence change in the outcome. The second thing is, it's challenging. I've been trying to triangulate with my property management company and with the Town of Truckee, and I can tell you that they've been really great. They've educated me. They answered the call. They talked to me about things. I mean, I've learned a lot. I'm smart now. I know a lot more. I've read all your ordinances. I realize that they're online. I never knew I had to, okay? So whether that's right or wrong, I'm just being forthright and honest with you, which I've been doing with them from the beginning. I just want to make the point that I am committed to doing the right thing. I'm proud of being part of this community. I'm a homeowner first. I live here. I come here. I do all the same things you do. So I don't live here full-time, but I feel like I'm a local, and I've been a local for a long time. So I want to be a good owner, and I want to do the right thing. Part of coming here is to tell you about that and let you know. And the third thing is, is I have two strikes against me. Those two strikes happened in a 30-day window, and I got to tell you, if any of you are renters, who does the same thing twice in 30 days? I mean, seriously, I was on the phone with these guys. Katie advised me because I live in a community. Maybe other people were putting garbage in the garbage can. It wasn't at my house. I put a camera up. I was in the process of figuring this out. I was communicating with Vacasa. I was asking what was going on, what are the problems? Why aren't you doing what you're supposed to be doing? They're supposed to be carrying garbage out. And by the way, I had two garbage cans in my garage pretty much from the day I started renting. I did not know that I was supposed to get two-can service, literally from the service, right, have that. So I feel like Vacasa should have told me that. They should be advising me. If you read their website and you read what companies do, and I've been out talking not only to people that might want to do this job for me, but I'm asking about, "How does this work? And do you have these kind of issues? What do you do when your client, me, is having that problem?" And I think it's unusual that what I'm experiencing with this particular vendor of mine. So I am concerned about engaging with a new property manager and having them have that cloud over their head. I mean, it makes pause on me on, "How am I going to handle this?" So that is one of my motivations, is to have a fresh restart. Okay, so 1 minute, 58 seconds left. You know, I came here thinking I'm asking for accommodations. I know now that you have to make a case either way. On that, I feel like I should have been given the same warnings that my property owner is. If I'm responsible for those, ultimately responsible, and I take that responsibility, I had no way of knowing until I got that citation. That arrived by registered letter on the 27th. I met Katie on the 28th or the 27th. I never thought in a million years that that company would have not responded a second day. I had every intent of getting second-can service. I was busy trying to figure it out. That was only like 14 days before that second citation came in. So I don't know what the guidance is on how long you get to, you know, remedy a situation. I work full-time. I live close, but far enough away. I just feel like there's a lot of extenuating circumstances that I would like you to consider in my appeal. And my original was, I'm going to tell you, my original was, "I really want to set the clock back on those strikes." I mean, if there's partial, you know, penancy or whatever, I'll pay that money. I'll take responsibility, but I didn't have control over it all. Now that I know I got to ask either way, I'm going to ask you to repeal those based on the fact that there were some extenuating circumstances, and I did the best I could, knowing what I knew. I want to do a lot better, knowing what I know now. 10 seconds.
Thank you very much, Ms. Tomasello. We appreciate that. We will bring it back. Any clarifying questions from council? We'll start with council member. You can hang out up here because we might need you to answer some questions. Just stay close. No, you're fine. Stay close. Councilmember Henderson, any questions?
Just a couple really quick. Can staff confirm that the local contact that we sent notices to was Vacasa?
It was Vacasa, yes.
And can those individuals who hold STR permits designate themselves as the property owner as well as a local contact? Or does our system only allows the local contact?
They could do both. So property manager can designate themselves as the property manager and local contact. There's other variations of companies and Truckees as well where they may just be the local contact, and the owner is the property manager. So there's kind of a multitude of scenarios, if that answers your question.
Somewhat, yeah, thank you. What would happen if, what would the process look like if, let's say, you know, an STR permittee had themselves and, for example, in this case, Vacasa designated? Would we still only be sending like that educational email from December 14th, for example? Would that still only go to Vacasa, or would it go to both parties?
In this instance, it purely went to Vacasa. We have since expanded where we're contacting all parties affiliated with a registration.
So we're improving our system sort of basically to make sure that we have more people to contact when that contact information is provided?
Correct, and then I will bring it back that we're not required per Chapter 5.02 to send a warning or educational email. We can move forward with administrative citation, but it's an extra touch point that we like to take.
Okay, and then...
Katie, want to add something? Hold on. Katie, did you want to add something? Or no? Nevermind. Yeah.
The other thing that I was going to add is, within our system, there's only one, you can only allot one person or entity to be an emergency contact in that instance as well.
Great. Go ahead, Councilmember Henderson.
I feel like I just heard two things. So we can designate two people, but only one can be the emergency, like 24-hour response contact?
I misunderstood your question to begin with, so my apologies. So yes, we can only designate one individual as the local emergency contact. We can't have multiple numbers. There's different ways in which parties can be affiliated with a registration, to be more clear.
Okay, so there's no way that our system would allow, for example, sending out like that educational email, which I know we're not obligated to do, but to both Vacasa and the property owner?
So when a complaint is received, the local contact is communicated with. In regards to our investigation and the follow-up, we have the prerogative to reach out to the main entity or STR operator in this case, which is Vacasa, who is both the property manager and the local contact. Now we're making processes to where all parties are involved. So if there isn't communication from the property manager to the owner, which there should be, that we're informing everyone prior to administrative citation.
Got it. Okay, thank you. Last question, I think. So the first citation was based upon the, I believe, first two complaints, right? And then the second citation is based upon the March 12th, 2024 complaint received at the STR helpline, correct?
Correct.
And the second citation was greater because the first citation had not yet been dealt with, correct?
Per municipal code with our fee schedule for the second administrative citation, that's the rate at $3,000.
Okay, those are all my questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Romack, any questions? Councilmember Klosstad?
Just one. So the three strikes, you're out. Is that on an annual basis or continual?
Within a year period.
So Ms. Tomasello could continue to rent as long as her property did not receive a third strike before the end of this calendar year. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So December 31st?
It's December, not from the time of the first citation. Is it 365 or is it calendar year? I think that's what Councilmember Klosstad is trying to clarify.
I'm questioning myself.
To the best of my knowledge, it's within a 365-day period from the initial citation.
Okay, so this property would have to be clean and without a third violation or citation through February 12th? Somewhere around there?
Correct, going off of the date of the initial administrative citation, which I would have to go back to the side, but that sounds correct.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Zabriski?
So with a two-can service, are you going to have one can inside the bear box and another one outside?
You have no choice. I'm sorry. You have no choice, okay? So I am looking at doing a second bear box, but this, right? To do that, I'd have to put a second bear box in, but you keep it in your garage. Like I said, there's two garbage cans inside my garage right now, but what was, the guidelines that Vacasa took was that they were going to carry all the trash away every time because you can't synchronize your rentals, especially in a busy season like 4th of July or Christmas. You can't synchronize your rental with the trash pickup. So if somebody leaves, right, you get it. So there was a lot of guidelines and discussions with them about what they were supposed to do, have documentation.
Okay. Well, the HOA allow a larger bear box?
They won't allow a larger one, but they've indicated, the new president has indicated that I can submit through the new HOA administrator for an architectural request. And as I said, I had somebody come out and look, and I've been approved by basically the city to be able to do it if I can.
Okay. How much have you spent so far trying to comply with the town? Have you spent?
$5,000. I've sent all my checks in. So I sent $4,500, $500 to come here tonight. And I just chose on my own to shut down my rentals because I don't trust my property management, and I can't, I don't want to make a change until I figure this out, even after tonight. I got a lot of things to figure out.
How were the fines calculated?
So in 5.02 for the first administrative citation, it's up to $1,500 for one violation or violations. And then for second, it's $3,000 per violation. And then for the third, it's $5,000.
Okay, and why was a maximum fine imposed?
Technically, we could have charged $6,000 on the second citation because there was two violations, but it's an egregious amount. So we decided to go with $3,000.
And on the first citation?
It's basically independent, well, we can charge up to $1,500 for the first citation for violation or violations. So we wouldn't be able to duplicate that. We wouldn't be able to do...
So on the first violation, you did charge the maximum amount, but not on the second?
Correct.
Okay, and then how long does an owner have to comply with a citation? How long do they have to cure in addition to the fine?
So 21 days to appeal or pay, move forward with appeal. And so both were caught up in the appeal process. So basically, we're kind of waiting for outcome on today's appeal hearing.
The municipal code requires that they mitigate the issue within 60 minutes of it being reported.
They have to call for a trashcan, two-can service within 60 minutes?
They have to mitigate the issue within 60 minutes of it being reported. So they have 60 minutes to come in and fix the issue. So if it's not... So they have 60 minutes to, to come in and fix the issue. Um, so if it's noise, they have 60 minutes to get ahold of the people renting the property to mediate the issue. If there's garbage all over the street, they have 60 minutes to come and pick it up. Um, and that was something we were trying to commit to because there were so many nuisance issues for the neighbors surrounding rental properties. Obviously, you know, I don't know how, we just applied a consistent standard to all issues, so.
Okay. So for a two-can service, the person would need to obtain two-can service within 60 minutes to be notified?
She's referring to complaint timeframe.
Yeah.
Uh, we like working with our short-term rental operators in regards to compliance.
Right.
So of course, um, you know, we understand the time that it may take to reach out, but Janet Tomasello reached out to TTSD immediately upon receiving the first administrative citation to get a two-trashcan service. So.
Okay. Well, I'm, okay, so that's not-
They have 60 minutes to remedy the issue at hand, to respond. That's what Nikki's trying to-
Let me try it another way. So it's 21 days to pay the fine or file an appeal. And in this case, the second citation was issued in less than 21 days. So her appeal period on the first one hadn't expired when we issued a second one.
Correct.
The issue is that she had a responsibility, or the, or Vacasa, whoever you want to put it, on, uh, she's the property owner, so ultimately she's the one responsible. Um, but it was her responsibility to know that the requirement was to have two-can service. There were definitely some issues with the, the HOA that she was in because the way that their development agreement was set up, they have bear boxes that are split. So one, one bear box for two properties. We didn't want to exclude them from the program, but we also didn't want to carve out special, um, like we didn't want to give this specific HOA special, um, accommodations that you bring in. When we set up the ordinance, so we, we, um, we, we kind of sidestepped the issue and just said, if there's no issues with the bear box, then we're not going to cause a problem.
Okay.
But the ordinance does clearly state that every property does have to have can, two-can service. Um, so there, there, there is no remediation period, really.
Okay. So, but we're talking about the same two cans. We're talking about the same bear box, same owner, same everything. We could have issued a citation every day, right?
Yes.
Under our, our development code, it allows to issue a daily citation.
You're correct.
And then multiply the fines. Go along. Now, did staff, staff didn't try to contact the owner. We just followed a regular protocol, correct?
Uh, initially with, um, the short-term rental operator was reached out, or the local contact was reached out to from our helpline for the first two complaints. Um, on the third complaint, the, of course, all non-responsive in voicemail. On the third complaint, it was, um, the helpline called the local contact. Uh, then Katie McCartney called the local contact as well. On the fourth complaint, um, uh, it was the helpline agent that called the local contact, and Katie McCartney called the local contact and the owner of the complaint, uh, warning them of, of the issue prior to the second administrative citation.
Prior to the second. Okay.
So we took extra steps. Generally, it's just the local con, the helpline that calls the local contact. And it's, the onus is on the local contact to respond with us within 60 minutes.
Okay. Thank you.
Great. No further questions, uh, from me. We're going to open up public comment on this item. Uh, any member of the public wishing to speak on this item, come on up. You have three minutes.
Certainly wasn't planning to comment, but it just made me think of an idea. Um, I appreciate that you used discretion on the, the fines because that's pretty outrageous, um, especially for a citizen that's trying to do the right thing. But, um, it made me think of, um, you know, when you all of a sudden get a toll fee, you know, a bridge toll ticket in the mail, and you say, oh, this wasn't me. And then you realize, oh, yeah, it was me. Because now they just issue tickets, um, or issue an invoice to the registered owner of the vehicle. So you know whoever's driving your car at the time was responsible for that. It seems like if you would look at the system in place that you have now and, and correct it, it could mitigate not only her time and, and her fees, because she would have corrected it immediately, obviously, but it would certainly limit the, the idea that, I'm not saying your time is wasted, but I think your time can be better spent by, um, having better systems in place to, um, mitigate the time spent on a lot of things. Land use, um, what, how unreasonable is it to ask that, um, a building contractor with an expired permit or an approaching expired, um, land use approval could get communication and outreach from you, from you, um, to, to at least, um, be made aware of it? I know it's ultimately, um, the owner's responsibility, but that certainly would show good faith and, um, resolve a lot of problems. Thank you.
Thanks, Katie. Any other public comment on this item? Okay, seeing none. We are closing public comments. Great. Uh, just to let everybody know, I think, um, we're just going to finish this item and then we will reconvene with the attorneys who are, who are still sort of outside lingering. Not sure what's going on there, but we're just going to finish your appeal first.
Okay. Thank you. Give you guys a break.
Yeah, it's all good. You have, Sarah, can we get five minutes on the clock, please? It's ready. Great. This is your appellant's response to anything you just heard. Take it away. Yeah, five minutes.
Well, first thing I want to do is I want to tell you what I found last night because I learned I had to appeal and ask you for 100%. I received this letter on November 12th, 2021. I hadn't even rented yet. And it says that, um, a site visit was confirmed and there wasn't, there's no bear, bear shed present, I'm paraphrasing, bear shed present on your property. Um, and that was, that was recently registered with the town for short-term rental. And then it calls out, um, Municipal Code 5.204E, but it says, "Each short-term rental shall be equipped with one or more bear-resistant trash can enclosures large enough to hold two minimum, uh, hold a minimum of two trashcans or larger by October 31st, 2021." Okay, you guys, I've read what it says now, but I live in a townhouse. I'm a new renter. Townhouses share things. I read that. Now, I wrote to, um, to Kristy Picard right after because that's what I do. And Kristy Picard wrote me back. I just want to share this with you really quick. Um, she wrote me back and said, oh my gosh, I might have to paraphrase. Anyway, I wrote her and said, hey, this isn't true. There's bear box. I live in a townhouse. There's an HOA here. She wrote back and said, oh, I'm so sorry. That's wrong. You are in compliance. And I'd be happy to share that email with you. So I entered into this new space of rental thinking I wasn't compliant that that bear box was there. Again, I do believe that my property management company should have informed me. I talked to them about garbage quite a bit, okay? I was being a good namer and I was addressing my neighbors' issues. Second thing is, is I think it's great that you guys are putting a new process in place to notify owners. It's unfortunate I didn't have that benefit because I would have taken action. I've learned a lot from you, but that, that would have avoided something. Um, and yes, even if I was the local contact as well, I live far enough away that I can't respond in 60 minutes. So as homeowners that are renting, we have to have reliable property management companies. My personal experience is not good. I'm going to think twice. I'm going to make better choices and ask more questions. Um, so I, I feel like there are two issues here. There's the trash. I feel like I was misinformed also now that I learned this by, um, the town of Truckee. Not intentionally, but I read that. Um, and I was fined twice. There was only 12 days to mitigate that. I didn't know that you could have fined me every single day for not having that trash service. Honestly, I thought there's like a 30-day window or something. I did, I did do that. I did a lot of things to do the right thing. I'm just going to close. Um, I feel like there's extenuating circumstances here and, um, I would like you to take that into consideration. I'd like you to see that I'm a citizen that cares and I'm part of this community. And I feel like there's enough in all of this that, um, maybe it just doesn't all apply. Not using your words, but maybe there's an opportunity here for, um, some accommodations.
Great.
Yeah.
Thank you, Ms. Tomasello. Appreciate your comments. I'll bring it back to council. I think we started with Councilmember Henderson last time. Any additional questions or please, um, begin deliberation?
I, I do have one additional question.
Sure.
Um, and for Ms. Tomasello, if you wouldn't mind. Are you, I, you were saying that you have some communication that says that you were in compliance? Can you just tell us exactly what that is?
Yeah. I'm going to read it to you. Let me just find it while you're-
And that's something that we actually have as part of our documentation?
Um, hang on, I had it up here. Uh, sorry.
I think that was also prior to the updated STR ordinance as well, probably.
Oh, maybe.
Yeah.
It actually was my very first communication with the town of Truckee. Okay? Um, sorry, just taking a minute here. Um, so, oh, sorry.
There is also probably a difference between the two-can trash service and the ability for somebody to view-
Yeah.
-your trash bin as accommodating to trashcans is, is probably what a little bit of the confusion is here, is you, you had a bear bin. We get that. It had two cans. We get that. The person who wrote you that letter said, look, there's a bear bin with two cans. I don't know who they belong to, but you're in compliance is-
So this is dated, that was, I gave you that date and this is what I have. I wrote her November 18th. I think I got that on the 12th. And I said, hi, Christine. I received your notification dated, um, November 12th that my home was not compliant, in compliance with the bear shed installation. The letter states that the site was visited and, um, was conducted and the bear shed was not present. This is incorrect. My home is in a, is a townhouse in the timbers. There's a bear box installed. All the units have it. It's visible on the street. It's perplexing how the site visit couldn't have seen that. Please acknowledge, receipt of the email and let me know, um, next steps to confirm that, that I'm in compliance, basically. And she wrote back and said, I apologize for the confusion. The letter was sent out in error. I have confirmation. Your compliance with the bear shed requirement of the ordinance, please disregard that notice. Christine Picard on 11/19.
And Councilmember Henderson, I'd, I'd also just like to highlight that the, the violations are, are not just for the, um, two-can trash service. They're also for the failure to respond within the 60-minute timeframe.
Yep.
Just to clarify.
Yep. No, I hear you. That makes sense. Um, I think that was the only additional question I have.
Okay.
Thanks.
You're, you're welcome to, um, either deliberate or we can take it from here and you can chime in at the end.
Go ahead and I will chime in.
Great. Councilmember Romac?
Yeah, uh, Ms. Tomasello, really appreciate you trying to, you know, work on this situation. And we understand it sounds like the property manager you had was not doing their due diligence and not giving you the proper information, and that's unfortunate. Um, you know, I would encourage you to find another one. And we have many great local property management companies, so you can talk with one of them. Um, however, I, I feel like ultimately you are the property manager and you are responsible for upholding the ordinance and following all the rules. Um, so I would follow staff's recommendation and open to hearing what my fellow council members have to say.
Councilmember Klosstad?
Yeah, I, I agree, Ms. Tomasello. Thank you so much for expressing the challenges that you faced and, um, and I'm very, very sorry for them. And I'm very frustrated that you were treated that way. Um, but we do not have an exception in our ordinance for circumstances that you're describing. Uh, and I feel like staff has been very supportive and I know you've acknowledged that and I really appreciate that, um, in trying to make sure that you understand what the requirements are and not imposing the maximum fines. Um, but I feel like this is, this is pretty straightforward. I don't feel like we have a, an exception or an option for us to leverage here and we have to uphold staff's finding.
Vice Mayor Zabriski?
Um, I guess I'm assuming we do have an option. The, uh, I realize that the code is strict liability. Owner is responsible for the misconduct of the manager. The fine is, should be tailored to the misconduct. I, I think both fines are, um, excessive. I don't see a due date for compliance with, uh, two-can trash. I appreciate the one-hour response. Um, the second citation does come on the heels of the first citation. If we do have the legal discretion, I think, uh, the first fine is more than enough deterrence and punishment for the misconduct.
I mean, I'm listening to the same stuff. All the rest of us are, but that's where I land.
Yeah, I, I guess, um, uh, I'll disagree with you because we made a pretty conscious decision, uh, I don't know, within the last year, whenever we last did these updates to increase the fines pretty significantly. Um, do you remember what that time was?
Yeah, um, timeline-
About a year ago.
Maybe March 2020. Don't quote me on that.
Okay. Yeah, I don't remember either.
But what I will speak to is they are based off of state or government code.
Right. So we can adjust the fines.
So we can adjust that.
So that was going to be my second statement was we can't, we're not here to adjust the fines. We're either here to uphold or repeal.
I understood it was up to, if there's a maximum, not a minimum.
The fines have already been issued. We're here to either uphold the fines or, oh, grant the appeal on one or both. Right? Andy?
Yes, technically. That's, that's technically correct.
Okay.
Can we strike the second violation?
Yeah, we can grant an appeal on the second violation.
You could do that.
We can uphold the first one and grant an appeal on the second. Um, but in terms of the amounts, we, we made a pretty conscious decision to move in that direction very clearly. I, I, I believe it was 5-0 at the time. Uh, I, I would also say I, I very much appreciate your comments and I very much appreciate your proactiveness and, and reaching out. I think, um, unfortunately, one of the issues here is, is you just had a third party in the middle and, and they failed their, their service to you. And unfortunately, that's also, um, not our fault. And, and I, I remiss, but you said you didn't have the opportunity to be informed. And, and you sort of said that in your opening statements. And unfortunately with me, that, that doesn't resonate so well because we, we have a robust marketing program. We have a robust information program. Um, we are trying to do everything we can to make sure that, uh, all short-term rental owners are properly informed. And, and so just because the third party failed you, uh, that's sort of the story of, of this one, in my opinion. Uh, I very much appreciate your positive comments about our short-term rental staff. I was going to save it for my, um, council reports, but I think it's appropriate. At our most recent visit, Truckee Tahoe meeting, of which I am a board member, um, the entire actual board was incredibly complimentary of all of the work that's been done and the proactiveness of our staff in being there to help when, when they have that ability to do so. So I, I think you're on the right track. Unfortunately, you're here in front of us. Um, I am in favor of, of upholding, um, the decision that's been made before us. And I would just encourage you, you are only at two. You have one more, um, you have one more opportunity before your permit is revoked. And, and I would just say, um, you know, now that you're, you're in, you have the information that you need to be a successful short-term rental operator in this community, I just encourage you to, to follow that. Um, so I think we have three to uphold.
Can I just ask a-
No, unfortunately, you can't. Um, Councilmember Henderson, is there anything else you'd like to add?
Um, I, I would just add, you know, I, I never want to see huge fines assessed against folks in our community. Um, and that said, we also had an STR committee that worked over many, many months. Um, Mayor Polavy, I think six months we were in that, right, to develop the recommendation- To develop the recommendations that form the foundation of our STR ordinance. And that had really diverse representation on it. It had local property managers, a representative from the local real estate board, STR owners, non-STR owners, two council members and others. And I really appreciated your, your comments tonight and, and also having an STR permit. It is incumbent upon that owner to follow the rules of the ordinance. I'm, I'm concerned, of course, that you weren't made aware of the complaints by the CASA. That is extremely concerning, but again, it's incumbent upon the property owner to vet their own property management companies. That's not a town responsibility. So I, part of me definitely feels that pull that Vice Mayor Zabriski has articulated, I think, very well. Like we could, you know, uphold the first and strike the second. But my concern is that then we're not applying our policies, we're not applying our ordinance evenly to everyone in the community. And we, we have to, we have to do that. When we get to STRs, they, we've had a lot of challenges with STRs in our community and that's why we took so much time to form, you know, a well thought out ordinance. So, um, it's unfortunate. I don't want to be in this position, but I, I can make the findings to uphold the staff recommendation.
On both? On both items?
Sorry. Um, there's no more like back and forth. Sorry. We had that opportunity. Councilmember Romack, can we get a motion?
I would make a motion that we make a finding of non-compliance with the Town of Truckee municipal code, code and uphold the notice of determination and judgment amount of $4,500.
Anybody second?
I'll second.
Sarah, roll call, please.
Thank you. Councilmember Romack?
Yes.
Councilmember Clostad?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Zabriski?
No.
Mayor Pollavy?
Yes.
And Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We are going to reconvene only 40 minutes later. Uh, back on item 7.1. Do, 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 do. Back four pages. Okay. Uh, which attorney would like to take the lead here?
Well, I have some good news. Um, we, we think that we have the outlines of a path forward. Um, I, I think Mr. Mancuso is willing to go along. I think his attorneys are a little nervous about it. Um, I think I'm going to have some, have to have some conversations with staff to explain this a little bit. Um, but we think that there's a path forward and we think that the path forward and Mr. Nelson, I think will, will augment this because he's looking at the notice to abate and he can cite the sections. But broadly speaking, it could be that the council denies the appeal, upholds all the staff determinations, upholds notice of violation, upholds the order to abate, but extends the deadline in the order to abate to October 14th, but with direction to staff to continue working with Mr. Mancuso and his team to see if a solution can be found that would satisfy Mr. Ross so as to allow the superstructure and/or the slab to be retained. But it would have to satisfy Mr. Ross and Mr. Mancuso would have to, to pay for whatever third-party technical expertise would be required to see if we could get there. And there are some other little details that we will figure out as we go along, but broadly speaking, I think that's it.
Anything to add, Mr. Nelson?
The changes in those dates would be in section five of the resolution and then in exhibit, exhibit A, it's finding seven and eight.
And Mr. Mancuso or Mr. Brown, do you have anything you'd like to add to that?
They were next. I was getting to them. But thank you. A good faith component.
Don't think we agreed to that. We agreed that we would work with you to see if we can find a resolution. I don't think we committed to the town would work in good faith because it just invites arguments.
Okay. I hope the spirit's there without the language and that we had a tolling agreement.
Uh, yes, I should have mentioned that. Mr. Mancuso's attorneys have asked, and I think it's a fair request to have a tolling agreement because without one, they'd only have 30 days to sue the town from the council's action. And since we're all trying to work together, they probably do need to preserve their ability to go after us. I don't, I don't think that they'll end up needing to use it because I think we're going to work this out, but I think it's a fair request and that is a component of this skeleton of a deal that we've discussed.
And how long's the tolling agreement? 60 days or 30 days?
It's to the compliance deadline of October.
October 14th.
14th, yes.
So up until the compliance deadline of October 14th.
Well, it would toll the statutes that have probably 30 days, I think, from that date.
October 14th.
But we're all really hoping we can work something out.
And, um, Mr. Brown, Mr. Mancuso, you are agreeing to all third-party technical expertise has to be agreed upon by both parties. You guys got through that little mediation section there?
We did. We'll, we will try to work on finding consultants together, um, but ultimately the town, I think, will select, but you know, we'll talk about it and try to find somebody mutually acceptable. They'll be paid for by Mr. Mancuso, but under contract to the town.
Okay.
I was worried about that part, so thank you for clarifying that.
And will they be billed to the town and we would be seeking compensation after the fact?
No, I think we'd be looking for a deposit upfront from Mr. Mancuso and we would bill against that.
And then just for the clarification, um, you know, if, if the council is comfortable in forwarding this, it wouldn't change any of the required permits. Those would still, you know, be required before anything moved forward.
Right. Okay. Mr. Ross, you're in agreement? Okay. Looking to you guys.
Um, I would just like to say that I want to make sure, I, I really believe that we can reach a resolution. I really believe that, uh, but we both have the volition to do that. I do, I know that. And I really think it's important that staff has given direction from you to work with me collaboratively and honestly and not.
Sarah, I'm going to interrupt you for a second. So we have actually provided that direction for the past nine months to go there. So I want to be really clear that we're coming to this agreement. We wouldn't be here today if both parties, you included, were working collaboratively towards a solution. The town has presented through the record numerous opportunities to find a solution. This is the last chance. If this comes before us, I think you're very clear what the outcome is going to be. So if it comes back to us and set 90 days or whatever 1014 is going to be, I think you know where we're going to be. So I'm just laying it out there that it's been collaborative. We've listened. We are providing another opportunity, which I think is not what many of us came in tonight thinking was going to happen. So let's leave it at that. I, I'm not looking for a speech back. I'm looking for a yes, we agree to the terms as outlined by the attorneys on this side. I, I want a yes or a no.
Yes.
Great. What would you like us to do, attorneys on this side, to make a motion to finish this agenda item?
Um, well, you could make a motion, as I said, to, to deny the appeal, to uphold all the staff determinations, to uphold the notice of violation and the order to abate with a change in the order to abate with, with the final deadline being October 14th and with some of the interim deadlines being, as Mr. Nelson will, will state again, because I've forgotten them.
Okay, somebody's going to put that up on the screen for us, right? Somebody was taking notes there, hopefully. I've got half of them.
And the modifications in the resolution would be to section five and to finding seven and eight in exhibit A.
Okay, so which council member memorized everything Andy just said and is ready to make a motion? I think I might. So we are going to deny the appeal. So I'm going to make a motion. Are you guys good? Okay.
Oh, and add to the motion that authorize the town manager to execute a tolling agreement with Mr. Mancuso. Just wanted to see if I could get Mike to stand up again.
Thank you, Mike. All right. I don't know what I'm doing. So I'm going to make a motion that we are going to deny the appeal. We are going to uphold all of the director's actions in front of us. We are going to amend section five of the agreement to a date of October 14th, 2024. We are going to authorize the town manager to execute a tolling agreement as part of this and we are going to make findings in section seven and eight that do what? Do I need to, what? Help me out.
Also modify the compliance date to October 14, 2024.
Thank you. And we're going to also modify the compliance date in finding seven and eight to October 14th. Is there anything else that we need to capture in said resolution? Direction to staff to make sure there's an upfront deposit for the third-party technical expertise for an agreed upon, mutually agreed upon consultant, uh, and of which Mr. Ross will have final determination on, um, on compliance or on solution or on permit or wherever we go from there. Final determination. Thank you. Okay, we're good? Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Oh, thank you. And can we get a roll call, please, Sarah?
Yes, Councilmember Romack?
Yes.
Councilmember Clostad?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Zabriski?
Yes.
Mayor Pollavy?
Yes.
And Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Great. Thank you all. We very much appreciate everybody's time and commitment and your staying here with us. It is now past 10 o'clock and we have two more really exciting agenda items. If you want to continue to stay with us, we are going to roll right into them. So hopefully whoever is doing 7.4 is ready to go.
He's ready.
Thank you, Alfred. Are you guys all good? Can we keep going? And thanks, everybody, for being here and we're going to keep going. So if you don't mind, just take any extra conversations outside so we can keep going. Thank you, staff, and thank you all the attorneys as well. Never thank attorneys. It's all right. They did a good job.
Did you go?
It's all right. Don't worry about your name tag.
Good evening, your honor. Members of Town Council, Alfred Knotts, Transportation Program Manager, and here to discuss adoption of resolution, potentially the adoption of resolution 2024 dash 14, or 48, calling for the placement of a general sales tax in the November general election ballot. I won't belabor this here. We just wanted to put together some actions here that have brought us to this point, both for transparency to the public as well as just a reminder, but also this has been a process of, of deliberation and informed decision-making. So we are back here since last time being on here on June 11th from direction to prepare ballot language and to return with all the necessary documents to place, potentially place a ballot measure on the November 2024 ballot. Um, an overview of the ballot measure, um, I think everybody's pretty familiar with what we talked about last time on June 11th here, um, but it is a half percent sales tax, use tax, generating potentially about 3.5 million based on our economic climate, can be used for general government uses, but we have identified priorities through surveys and council priorities, general plan, all the things that inform, kind of carrying out our, our work program and implementing priorities for the, the town and town values. Revenue would be locally controlled by the town with independent audits, so this would be collected and used by the town. This does require for placement on the ballot, it does require two-thirds of the council to vote to put on the ballot. So just a reminder of that as well. Examples of unfunded projects and programs, this did come up. We discussed this at some detail last time, but not to the level of detail that we wanted to provide with both in the staff report and as part of this presentation. So we've identified just some clarity for council as well as the public about what these funds would be used for. Again, they can be used for general purposes, but there are a lot of unmet needs, a lot of things in the new general plan, a laundry list of those projects and programs. I mean, this does just highlight a few of those as well. So some of the things that haven't been identified is we do have the new mobility hub that's been constructed. We have the West River Park that's under construction. Those are new facilities that, um, public spaces that are, require additional resources from the town. Transit enhancements, um, we've talked about TARD Connect, um, over and over throughout the last couple of, of months and years as well. That is a pilot program. It does not have a sustainable funding source, so this is potentially something that could augment that. Event shuttles too, it's something that we're also expanding and growing as well. And then also just various, again, measures within the, the general plan and action items associated with achieving those goals and policies. Um, one-time projects, um, I will spare everybody this long laundry list because it is in the staff report too, but these, there are some programmatic elements that, and capital projects that could be done as well as, but that would be one time. And this is a, a list that we've gone through that really highlighted the overarching program, but then down to project level or service level, um, action items when it comes to what those needs are under workforce housing programs, pollution out of our waterways and watershed enhancement, environmental protection, wildfire and natural, or natural disaster preparation mitigation. And then with under that, those are the capital projects. And again, these currently have unfunded balances within their delivery budgets. Um, this is kind of how we broke these out. That was a drill down, but this is the overarching summary of those. As you can see, there's a significant price tag associated with carrying out a lot of the, the measures that, again, they're within our general plan as well as our work program that are currently funded. So with that, we do have the final proposed ballot language that would go on the November 2024 general election ballot. And this is essentially how it would read. There's no significant changes from last time identified within here. And that's, uh, the deadline for submission of this would be July 8th and we would transmit all the necessary documents to the county and get that on the ballot, should that be the direction we go in tonight. So the recommended action is the adoption of the resolution that's attached to the staff report and that would be authorizing the, the measure to go on the ballot in November.
Thank you. Councilmember Clostad, any questions?
None, thank you.
Councilmember Romack?
A few quick questions and this is, I've had a lot of conversations over the past two weeks, just talking to folks on this. And I feel like this came up in the last meeting. We didn't survey on a smaller amount at all, half percent. We just did half percent is kind of what we surveyed on and we landed there because it shows all these unfunded needs.
Correct.
And can you pull up the slide at the beginning too? That was helpful because another person was saying, oh, I haven't heard about that yet. So just appreciate you including this in here of some of the touchpoints we've had at various places. And then this is another, and sorry, Alfred, I didn't get these to you in advance. Do you know if in the two polls where we had 587 and then 404, if those were different people or could they have been the same? Or we have no idea because that was conducted by Charles Heath and I should have asked him last time, but I didn't have that question asked of me.
We do not have an idea. They're, they're randomized, but they are registered voters and there are certain other criteria that they apply that's outside of my, my knowledge.
Got it. Thank you.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Zabriski. Sorry, I forgot I was in charge. It's like, what am I doing?
Okay, so this tax combined with the increase in the trails tax would take Truckee up to an aggregate sales tax of 9%. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
Yes.
And that puts us a little less than 2% higher than Placer County and then one and a half, or, uh, excuse me, the other way around. It puts us 1.75% higher than Placer County, 1.5% higher than Nevada County and, um, about three quarters of a cent higher than Washoe County. Does that sound right?
Yes.
Okay. And then I was looking at our prior tax measures, our most recent ones, the, the road tax back in 2008, that was both a special tax and had a sunset provision of 2028. And then the TOT tax, well, that was a general tax, but it had a sunset provision. And then the trails tax was a special tax with no sunset. This tax would be a general tax with no sunset.
That is the ballot language as proposed right now, yes.
And then I'm looking at all these unfunded needs and I thank you very much, especially for the summary table that shows that separates one-time expenditures from the recurring expenditures. And these include unfunded items like preparing for wildfires and other natural disasters, workforce housing, environmental protection and transit services. Those are among. Those are among projects that are at least partially unfunded. Is that correct? Would it be possible at this late date to change until ended by voters to a date certain?
It would not. This is part of the discussion tonight, and we have taken that into account because we have heard that before, and we would be able to, as part of this deliberation.
That would need to get finalized, like, from the dais tonight, though.
Yeah.
Yes.
Got it. Those are all my questions. Thank you.
Do we have Councilmember Henderson back? Oh, there she is.
I'm here. Sorry Zoom seemed to quit on me. I apologize.
That's okay.
The only additional question that I have is specifically related to TART Connect. Has any additional progress been made on conversations with market partner agencies just as it relates to funding TART Connect?
Not beyond what we've received from VTT and the hospital as well, so there has not been any other additional conversations or commitments from other special service districts.
Is that because we haven't had the conversations or because we haven't secured any funding commitments?
It's more about the conversations have not occurred just because of the budget being adopted and the contract just approved, and then still this ballot measure, so that's not precluding those from still happening by any means.
I see. Okay, perfect. Thank you, Alfred.
Yes.
No further questions from me. I'll open it up to public comment. Any member of the public wishes to address council on this item, come on up. If anybody else wishes to address, you can make your way over and be ready to speak after Edward. It's okay. We like you. You're here.
Hear me? First off, thank you very much. I know it's been a very long evening. I was watching the second appeal. You guys have a tough job, so it's very much appreciated. On this particular ballot language and measure, the Contractors Association is not in support of a general tax. We'd prefer something more specific, you know, in terms of even considering it. If it did go this way, I think we would actively work to defeat it. So, thank you very much.
Christopher Terrell, in opposition to what this gentleman just shared, I think we critically need these funds. We have a total absence of safety for bicycles on our roads. You cannot safely ride between grocery stores, schools. We need funds for this. We already have $60 million in unfunded projects, which are critical to attracting the tourists we need to come here. This tax is paid by those tourists, and it's a progressive tax in that regard. And certainly, we may see some funds savings when it comes to, you know, when Waymo comes to Truckee, we'll start to maybe see alternatives to a, you know, a human-driven public transport system with maybe more effective allocation of funds to only those who actually need free transportation. So I think, you know, we need these funds, and I appreciate you guys looking into this. Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Chris. Thanks, Edward. Any additional public comment on this item? Seeing none, closing public comment, and I'm going to bring it back to council for deliberation. Remember, to put anything on the ballot, we do need four yeses. Anything short of that does not make it to ballot at this point. Maybe, I think, I know, well, we'll start with Councilmember Romack, and why don't you just kick us off?
Yeah, I can kick us off. Appreciate staff's time on this. And again, Alfred, your slide at the beginning was great. As I mentioned after our conversation two weeks ago, appreciated Councilmember Henderson's comments and just started talking to more folks, and like I said, some people have heard of it, some people hadn't, some people had strong opinions, some didn't. You know, it was pretty split in the folks I talked to of if it should go forward or not. And, you know, a lot of folks who were supportive of it really saw the need for TART Connect. I talked to one woman who was saying that her and her husband are talking now that they might be able to get rid of one of their two cars because we actually have transit service that runs 24-day, not 24 hours, 365 days of the year. And I think, again, that really speaks to what we're trying to do and all that kind of stuff. And then just, you know, we just heard about bike trails and, sorry, protected bike lanes, lots of other projects with Donner Lake and whatnot. So I think a lot of folks who are excited about it see the need and some great projects. Heard from the other folks, too, comments that we are familiar with is it's already expensive to live here, and this is a general tax. It could be used for anything by the town in the future. So, pretty split, you know? It wasn't overwhelmingly, and this was just talking to a sample size of people that I encounter in my two weeks, so it's not statistically valid like Charles Heath's survey was, but I thought it was really important. You know, so I, I'm kind of like this, and is it time that we do just put it to the voters? And if it is, people want it and they support it, then it will go, and if people don't want it, then it won't pass, and then we will have to reevaluate, you know, what we'd want to do with our funding and if we'd have to cut programs or services. So kind of where I'm at right now, and would love to hear more conversation as well.
Councilmember Clostad?
I think that's no surprise, I mean, looking at the survey results, it's pretty, pretty split. I stand by my previous statements. I think this is, we need this. We have a long list of annual things that we want to add to our services. We have a long list of projects that we want to do, that we want to be able to do. I actually think it being a general tax is appropriate because we don't know what we're going to need in five, 10, 15 years. Maybe we have a fire that goes through Glenshire, and we need to put funds towards rebuilding that community, or we have another natural disaster, or we decide to build the Third Road out of Tahoe Donner, or whatever it is, whatever the priority is, I think having that flexibility is actually really important, given the wide variety of issues that we are addressing and the wide variety, according to the survey, of things that our community want to see us improve. And that includes a lot of the things, or, you know, the projects that are listed are all included in those top priorities that we heard from our community members and from the survey. So I stand where I was before. I think this is the right tax at the right time and will give us an opportunity to really leverage funds that we can also, or, you know, give us ability to go after more funds, to leverage these funds for projects and possibly services if we can get support from local agencies and other districts for the transit. So I think this is really important to put to the voters and let them decide, and as Councilmember Romack stated, if they choose no, we have some hard decisions ahead of us.
Vice Mayor Zabriskie?
Well, a sales tax is the most aggressive form of tax. It hits the poorest people the hardest. Maybe there's an exemption for food, but there's not for clothing and most other products and services. It's, I'm also bothered that it would be higher than surrounding areas. There is a substantial risk, I think of it not passing in light of the broader conditions in the state and what we're seeing in broader polls. I'm worried that attitude's going to come home to Truckee to roost here. I realize that a general tax allows a later council to change priorities and spend it on something other than what was originally intended. In this case, the variety of items, we can't cram these into a special tax or have four different special taxes. So I am deviating from my strong support for special taxes in general. I'm ready to go to a general tax. I mentioned the state budget. I think we are going to have financial problems. We just nicked off $3 million from our budget on the earlier budget item because of the higher personnel costs and other items to gasp be included, so there's even more need to increase our revenue. I would like to see us put in a sunset provision. I actually think that would help sell this to our community, and philosophically, I feel that council and the community should be required to come back and review a tax measure at a later date and decide whether it's still needed. Because as a practical matter, with no sunset provision, it's going to be exceedingly hard, if at all, to repeal the tax. So I'm ready to approve this recommendation, this form of the measure, with the exception of changing until ended by voters to, I don't know, 10 or 20 years. I don't have strong feelings on there as long as there's an expiration due.
I'll get on board for that and suggest 15, meet you in the middle. I think 10 isn't quite long enough. I think the capital projects that we were looking out at, as we all know, even if they're in a five or 10-year CIP, that unfortunately doesn't happen to mean a whole lot these days. And so I think 15 gives our budgeting a little more certainty. I think it also keeps it within a realm of reality and horizon that a voter can resonate with. I feel like 20 feels like a really long time away personally. I don't really care. I'm wondering if staff maybe has any suggested language that they pulled together potentially, maybe with some pollsters ahead of time, to consider this? Oh, look, they did.
We did, yeah. We had heard that before several, the times we had been here before council, so we did want to prepare something that did give that consideration, recognizing that we are in a very tight timeline.
And just, oh, go ahead.
So if the council wanted to move forward with a measure on the ballot that included a finite time period, I think what you would need to do procedurally, and Andy can correct me if I'm wrong, is as part of your motion to approve the resolution, direct that this alternative language be inserted into that resolution as a part of the adoption. And then it would just be a matter of filling out the number in this language.
So do we get to four, Vice Mayor Zabriskie, with the sunset clause? Is that what you're indicating? Yeah, I'm just trying to get a finite answer, and then.
I would like to provide my perspective. I'd like to make sure I have a chance to get that out for the public as well.
You are, I'm not sidelining you. You are 1,000% going to have your chance. I'm just trying to get us to see if, where we are with Vice Mayor Zabriskie, so that when we get to you, we have a clear idea of what we need or don't need. So Vice Mayor Zabriskie, do we have any type of just finality from you as to what you'd like to see in order to be supportive?
I want to do what you want to do.
Great. Okay. Councilmember Henderson, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. I really appreciate it. I, you know, there's no doubt that I want to continue to provide existing town services to fund all of our future projects and so much more, and I truly do agree with so many of the overarching goals here. They're really, really valuable, and they're very laudable. That said, I still have to reiterate, I fundamentally do not believe that we are going about this the right way. First, this process has not been as transparent as our approach to other tax measure processes. We held community-based transportation outreach workshops to focus on TART Connect and transportation, and funding TART Connect specifically was the original impetus for bringing forth a potential tax measure. I believe in TART Connect. I know that it is valuable, but the current staff report now highlights nearly $60 million in future projects and needs that the revenue from this tax could support. So it really makes my point from the last council meeting for me that the revenue from this sales tax won't be allocated or legally obligated to TART Connect, to any specific safety measures as were brought up in public comment, or to anything else because it's a general, not a special tax. And this has really far-reaching ramifications. When voters vote on this, they won't know what these funds are going to be used for in the future. Any future council can change how and what those funds are used on. I recognize that community priorities shift, but there are zero guardrails on this. I'm not saying that there's never a time and a place for a general tax, but if that was the intention from the beginning, then that's how it should have been talked about with the community from the very beginning. So I feel like a pivot is being made on the uses for this sales tax revenue, and that does strike me as disingenuous to our community. Second, I want to say, we always have tens of millions of dollars in unfunded future capital improvement projects. We often use some amount of funding to get those projects through design, then we work to identify state funding grants, other opportunities to fund those projects, especially on the infrastructure side. So how we budget, our actual budgeting process accounts for this. So again, to now bring forth a general tax measure stating that we have all of these future liabilities, it just, it doesn't strike me as appropriate. The proposed items in the staff report for funding don't necessarily match current community priorities. For example, 13.25 million in unfunded design and construction for the downtown railroad pedestrian crossing referenced in the staff report. The community polling that was done did not even poll on infrastructure projects. It didn't poll on any specific CIPs, and I find that problematic. Third, you know, the recent and the prior polling that we did last year demonstrates what voters might be willing to support in a tax measure, and if these are what is desirable by the community, that we could consider a special tax legally obligated to those uses at some point in the future when we've done that deep work to engage the community and to build that community support. Top three priorities: local parks and recreation, keeping pollution out of waterways, and preparing for wildfires and natural disasters. And all of those in the recent surveys range from 63 to 67% saying they strongly favor. So with robust community engagement, I imagine those would rise even further, thus lending themselves to a possible special tax at some point in the future. Fourth, in light of current economic conditions, I have to say, we have to budget prudently, we have to contain costs, we have to find additional funding partners. We've talked about the school district, we've talked about the airport district, the POD, all of these benefit from TART Connect, and if we're not making progress on those conversations, then as elected, I think we need to be stepping in to have those conversations with our elected counterparts in those other districts. We just heard we have a balanced budget where revenues exceed expenditures, and we have a very large contingency fund. And lastly, I just want to say, I know that there is some level of fear that if we don't pass a sales tax measure now, the county will then attempt to pass another sales tax measure, as they did with Measure B, and those funds won't be locally controlled by the town. I don't want to see that happen, but that fear isn't a good enough reason for me to go to ballot. I truly believe that we can fund TART Connect and other services, and there are other ways of doing it through, you know, that cost containment, recruiting other funding partners, and by doing the community outreach to demonstrate and prove the value of those services so that the majority of our voters will actually support it as a special tax. I do support many of the goals here. I want to be very clear in that, and I agree that it would be amazing to provide more services and projects as a town. But in this circumstance, I just, I continue to not be able to support a proposed general tax measure with no guarantee whatsoever of how those funds will be spent into the future. I believe the process by which we're going about this isn't right, and I know that we know how to do it right. We passed Measure T. We passed Measure U. So those should be our models for how we engage the community in possible tax measures. I don't think we should be risking doing this wrong and then losing community trust.
Thank you. Appreciate your comments. I'm on board, and I'm on board for a couple of reasons. First and foremost, and I appreciate the public comment that was brought to our attention, but, and this is something Councilmember Clostad and I have talked about with the last two general taxes, is we don't know what the future's going to look like. We don't know if we're going to have Waymo cars and not have to pay the payroll on TART Connect, and all of a sudden our TART Connect expenses are going to be 90% of what they once were because we're driving electric vehicles. because we're driving electric vehicles and we don't have any personnel. I think this is a, that, to me, was actually the most perfect example of why this is a general tax and not dedicated to simply things like transit or TART Connect. And I'm also going to mention to you, Councilmember Henderson, and, you know, this is, we wouldn't be here today, in my opinion, if our budgeting, if we looked keener and more difficult at our budget and said, hey, these are the things we're going to cut. These are the things that are important. Unfortunately, I feel like our budget process said, everything's important. We want to fund everything, so now we need to find the money. And that, to me, is actually where we are. That's why we have a list of capital projects. That's why we have, you know, a dark skies lighting contract for $100,000 and all sorts of other budget items that we are choosing to fund to this level without working within our means or at the very minimum saying, hey, this isn't going to take five years, this is going to take 15 years because we don't have the revenue to get there. But if we're going to keep getting asked for expanded services from our constituents and we're going to sit up here and approve budgets that are, that we're going to choose to fund every program that gets put in front of us, in my opinion, we don't have any other choice other than to find more revenue. And as much as I would like to say to the school board and the airport board and every other board, hey, you need to kick in, they don't. That's not their jobs. Their jobs are to run the things that they run. You know, and whether or not, I don't know what their budgets look like. And so we can't really control anything outside of what we do within the departments that we manage. So, you know, we're here because we have high expectations. We're here because our constituents are expecting a level of service that they've told us they want. And at the end of the day, all we are doing is putting this on a ballot for them to decide. And I have to reiterate that. You know, I think we did try to go for a special tax and the polling came back and said, yeah, that might not work. And that's kind of where we are, where we are today. So I'm supportive of putting this on the ballot for the public to decide. I'm also in support of Vice Mayor Zabriski's addition of a sunset. I think personally, that gives at least an added sense of urgency into how this is done. It provides some predictability for voters as well. And I would also just maybe add a staff question. It can be repealed by voters at any time, even if there is a sunset still, right?
That's correct.
Yeah, so it can still be repealed by voters. So, you know, should a new council come in, change course, they don't need this money anymore, they can put it back on the ballot to repeal it.
Actually, the council can just repeal it.
Oh, they can just repeal it.
Or stop collecting it.
Oh, even, even better. See, there you go. There's an election in November, so, you know. Okay, so I guess I'm going to look to my left because to get a fourth vote at this point, I think we need an agreeabili-
Can you look to your right for a second?
Sure. I'm going to look to my left because I think you said you are amenable to a sunset. Right? You're amenable to supporting this measure with a sunset.
I just want to suggest in response to what Councilmember Henderson expressed again very eloquently, the, when we had Measure T or Measure K on the TOT, we established a separate Measure K fund. And that's one way of at least tracking the dollars that come out of that measure. Now, when we did that, we did it after the measure was adopted, but I believe we gave some direction and indication that we were going to want that.
I believe we've provided that direction and I think all of us will agree that that direction is given, implied, and almost required. And at the very minimum, three of us will be here in November and hopefully all five. But regardless, there will still be a majority to make that determination should the ballot measure A, get on the ballot and B, pass. So I'm actually fairly confident that that's been taken care of because I think the three of us can agree to that at the very minimum.
Can I just throw a thought out there?
Of course.
And I don't want to derail this process, but in looking at, and if we're all good, just in some of the conversations again, and I think it came up with Charles, is that it doesn't have to be a half percent sales tax. And Nevada City and Grass Valley, looking at theirs, are both 8.875. Would there be any reason to do less than a half percent sales tax? If we, I mean, I know some concerns I heard is the cost of living is high, whatever. Does anyone see that that would make a difference? And from my calculations, that would still get us maybe around 2.6.
Are you asking for 0.375? Or are you asking for 0.25?
No, in between 0.25 and 0.5. Can we do that?
0.375.
Yeah, you could do 3/8s.
Yeah.
Just food for thought. And if everyone else is feeling stronger about leaving it at a half, half percent, and sorry, I keep saying half cent, we can go there, but.
I mean, you have me at that, yes. You have me at that, yes. Problem is, we need four. So I mean, I'm, I'm fine with the decreased amount. I'd be very supportive of a decreased amount. I've asked that numerous times. I think that gets us to, that would get us to 8.875.
Which from what I saw, yeah, it was Grass Valley, Nevada City for reference to what we were saying before. And then, you know, to Councilmember Henderson's point, I know, yes, other entities utilize our services and maybe there would be a reason to then continue to have conversations about supporting TART Connect and then we could utilize other funding for something else as well if we're feeling like, you know, that would decrease the amount we're getting by nine, potentially bringing in by 900,000.
I'll tell you, I guess my only concern with that is A, the messaging gets really hard, the number is awkward, and, you know, you're, you're collecting a sales tax just in an awkward way. I haven't spoken with any merchants at 8.875. Extra line on receipt paper, I don't know, like, seems like an odd number, but I can get behind any further limit or reduction, I guess, would be my answer. I would also be supportive of this at 15 years. Councilmember Klosstad?
I prefer the half cent. I think that actually gets us to where we want to go in terms of the services that we want to provide. I'm fine with the 15-year limit. I was fine with it not sunsetting, so I'm reluctant to reduce it. I feel like this is going to be a lot of work to get this on the ballot, to get a campaign going, and then we're not really accomplishing what we sent out to accomplish because it, it wouldn't give us enough to even cover the basic TART Connect service that we want to cover. So I'm hesitant to do that. I, my first priority here is to cover that $2.5 million of TART Connect until and unless we don't need it anymore. And cutting this in half doesn't get us there.
Vice Mayor Zabriski?
I agree with Councilmember Klosstad.
Okay, so I think I'm hearing consensus for keeping it as it is with a 15-year sunset. I believe we have four votes for that. Councilmember Henderson, is there anything else you'd like to add? We, we have definitely heard you and we appreciate your comments 1,000%. And we're trying to get to four.
We'll agree to disagree on this one.
Precisely. Thank you. Okay, is there anybody who is ready to make a motion? Is, there you go. Thank you.
I'll take this one.
Thank you.
I move that we adopt Resolution 2024-48 authorizing a transactions and use measure, also informally described as a sales tax, to be placed on the November 5, 2024 ballot at a rate of 1/2%, generating an estimated $3.5 million annually with the additional modification to include a 15-year sunset in the resolution.
One second. And roll call, please, Sarah.
Thank you. Councilmember Romack?
Yes.
Councilmember Klosstad?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Zabriski?
Yes.
Mayor Polovy?
Yes.
And Councilmember Henderson?
No.
Thank you.
And we will be coming back to you in August with an ordinance for you to adopt to propose to the voters. It's just a weird quirk of the law. You have to adopt the ordinance, but it doesn't take effect unless and until the voters approve it.
Great, thank you. Okay, it's 10:45. Do we need a bathroom break? I kind of, no, you guys are good. All right, you're making our senior new planner give his first presentation at 10:45 at night. That was not a very kind move.
We're tough on the new people. Sorry about that.
You are very tough on the new people. Welcome.
Oh, I said, that's okay. Yeah, thank you. All right. Well, I know you guys have had a long night. I will try to be quick with this item. Good evening, Mayor Polovy, members of the Truckee Town Council. I'm Adam Peterson from the Planning Division. I'm here tonight to request your direction related to the town-owned High Altitude Fitness housing site. Quickly going through the agenda, we're going to start tonight's presentation with a little bit of a site location refresher. We're going to go into the background and the purpose for this meeting and this report. And then lastly, we're going to request your confirmation related to items that you've reviewed in the August of 2023 meeting related to this, related to this project. Moving forward, the town-owned High Altitude Fitness site is on Edmund's Drive. It's north of Donner Pass Road, more towards, I guess, the central to western end of town. It's east of Northwoods Boulevard. It's encompassed by residential uses to the north as well as to the east, and it also has commercial uses to the south of the site. The town council received staff's analysis of a potential town-directed housing development project in August of 2023. At that hearing, council selected a land use plan, expressed a preference for ownership, and evaluated a land valuation approach that would maximize the feasibility of development on the property. At this time, the resources are available and legal requirements have been satisfied to proceed with a project on that site. However, to proceed with a project on that site, staff believes and requests council's direction to initiate a request for information to evaluate qualified firms to assist with the financial feasibility, land planning, and construction analysis needed to realize the project. Prior to sending this RFI, staff wishes to first confirm that the land use plan alternative evaluated by council in August of 2023 remains the same. At that August of 2023 meeting, council selected Alternative 2, which comprised 15 units in three separate, in three separate buildings. The reason for this was that council preferred basically the mixture of units or mixture of one-bedroom and two-bedroom units. Alternatives 1 and 3, Alternatives 1 and 3, on the other hand, only consisted of two-bedroom units and only had 10 units in the buildings. The next item to confirm is related to the ownership structure and land valuation. At the August of, at the August 2023 meeting, the tentative preference is for a rental ownership, but council noted, and staff also notes, that additional analysis is needed to understand the financial implications for a rental housing project for the town. Similarly, the back of the envelope pro forma that was prepared in 2023 assumed that a land valuation, oh, sorry, I didn't, oh, I, oh, sorry. Yeah, thank you. Like, what are you talking about that? I double clicked, okay. And I have my papers on the keyboard, my notes are on the keyboard. Okay, so to go back, after the land use plan alternative, and I don't know if I skipped this, I'll go back really quick again. Again, council selected Alternative 2 in the land use plan. It was 15 units located in three buildings. The primary reason was that this provided more options for the dwelling units. There was a mixture of one-bedroom and two-bedroom units, whereas the other alternatives were just two-bedroom units. Again, regarding the ownership options evaluated, there's a for-sale option proposed and also a rental option proposed. Council hesitantly expressed a desire to proceed with a rental option, but again, additional analysis is needed to determine the financial implications of proceeding with a rental option. Similarly, the back of the envelope pro formas that were prepared in 2023, those basic, those assume that there would be a donation of land to a builder and that would be needed in order to basically realize and incentivize the project. But again, similarly to the ownership, and similarly to the ownership analysis, there needs, there needs to be more analysis in order to determine if there's other incentives that are needed to ultimately realize, in order to ultimately realize the project. So in conclusion, we want, we want staff requests to reaffirm that land use plan alternative 2 is the preferred alternative. Reaffirm that the preliminary preferred ownership structure is a rental project with also the understanding that we would return with additional information, the financial implications of each ownership option, and then direct staff to initiate an RFI process to evaluate firms that will prepare the financial design and construction analysis needed to realize the project. So thank you, and I'm available for any questions that the council may have.
Adam, pleasure to meet you. You didn't even introduce yourself. How long have you been working with the town? You know, you've been here for a couple of months. This is your first presentation. Welcome.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate that.
Very concise presentation. Excellent job.
Thanks.
Yeah. We do. I don't know whose turn it is. Councilmember Klosstad, you got any questions?
I do not. We've seen this a few times before and thank you very much for the presentation.
Councilmember Romack?
No questions. Great job.
Vice Mayor Zabriski?
I don't think I have any questions. I just find it a little odd to be asked to reaffirm and affirm what we already decided. But I'm just ready to move forward on this.
Councilmember Henderson?
No questions. Thank you.
I have a question. How long do we anticipate this is going to take? How long till the RFI goes out? How long are you going to leave it open? And how long are you going to tell them you want this back in? Because I agree with Councilmembers Zabriski.
Yeah, we want to get this going right away. I'm going to start right away on the RFI process. I don't know how long it's going to take to, for me to get it out. I would typically request responses within a month from qualified firms to give them time to prepare a list of their qualifications, to provide a scope of work, to provide sort of a budget that we would also take a look at. Again, I would just, I would anticipate a month-long time and I would also probably confer with Jen and Danielle on that and see what timeline they think is appropriate for, to get a response.
When would be looking to get this project completed from signing of executed contract? Six months, three months? How long are we anticipating this is going to take?
I think that's going to depend on if we get responses to the RFI and what kind of they propose to for their works. That's a bit hard to tell.
And did I see that you guys were going to go for three firms?
Correct.
Three firms, three separate firms. So this is three RFIs?
It's one RFI that would be distributed to the, it's one RFI in sort of a standard RFI template that would then be distributed to firms saying, you know, provide your qualifications, you know, scope of work and your budget, you know, and your resumes and, you know, let us know, you know, how you can provide services related to, you know, this information that we need in order to continue processing the project.
Seems like a lot.
Actually, that's really why we're here. It's helpful, I think, for Adam to hear you reaffirm as, you know, he's new and taking the lead on this and has had experience with that. So just a final opportunity to hear that from you. But also, we didn't really talk through the steps of this as we're learning and trying to explore this, so wanted to be very transparent, understand the process going forward so there's not concern about that after the fact that we are doing, that's what our recommendation is. If you would like to see a different recommendation or a different process forward, we need to go back and reconvene on that. But right now, we think this would be the best path forward and the quickest in terms of understanding what entitlement looks like internally.
Okay.
But we don't really know how much longer it will take.
At this point, no. We could give you an update and keep you apprised. Like I said, we, you know, we've issued RFPs and RFIs and have gotten no responses. Like I said, we, you know, we've issued RFPs and RFIs and have gotten no responses, and we're back at the drawing board.
And is this like a BAE type of thing? Like, you know, is this in economics? And, and I guess my only question is, is this like one firm that can then subcontract with the other two, or are you truly looking at three individual contracts?
Some of that's going to, I think, depend on, as we work through the RFI. We were probably, you know, six months ago in a little different direction of thinking we were going to directly do an RFP with a developer. So there's a little bit more financial analysis. BAE may be possible. It might be something like happened with the River Committee where we got a team to propose on it, so it was three firms but one contract. It's like BAE, SBC kind of come together.
Okay. All right. Any public comments on this item? You just get on up there, Chris. Come on. Mitch is coming next. Get up there, Mitch. Go ahead, Chris.
Well, so in Truckee, we have a history of not developing high density. High density, in my mind, is, is four or five floors high. TRPA is moving in that direction. The designs I saw there looked like three stories, probably with garages on the bottom. I don't know if that's your final design or not, but just in general, you know, this, this, this Donner Pass Road area, that should be five floors. Right now, it's trailer homes on at least five of the lots. So in the future, when we build those four or five floors, maybe six, that two-to-three-story building is going to be very upset because most of their units can be really low. So just kind of a reminder that, you know, we have an absence of housing here. We, we have constant complaints from people about, oh, workforce housing, it's like, you know, you're not, you've got to be really poor, or, you know, it doesn't cover whatever. It's because we've really failed to develop those 10 to 15 different projects in Truckee, and I really encourage us to just, you know, I get, you've already affirmed a lot of things and designs are kind of the way, but whenever you're looking at housing, you know, like with bike lanes, you want protected bike lanes, and you want high-density housing. We have a huge amount of luxury housing, which is one floor high, and you can count your hands the number of buildings we have in this area that are four floors. So just like, keep coming up, like, really think height. You know, we have this leave it to be the mentality in our country, in our state, and, you know, that is over. Now we're thinking about high density. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Chris. And I bet you are disappointed you missed our 2040 general plan conversations that lasted four years and ended about eight months ago.
I am actually extremely disappointed that it wasn't there for them.
That's what I mean. We're disappointed.
We needed you.
You're disappointed. You are here now, and we appreciate your presence, and we very much appreciate those comments. We can talk offline in future emails about how we got to where we are. With that said, we are going to close public comments and bring it back for any council deliberation. Go ahead, Councilmember Romack, you hit your microphone.
Affirming. Move forth. Let's, I agree with you guys. Let's keep this moving and get a project going.
Great. Councilmember Kloostad?
Go forth and maximize the use of the site, please.
Vice Mayor Zabriski? He's going right to... Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Councilmember Henderson?
Approve.
I agree. I'm excited for this. Thank you to staff for all the work on it.
Great. And I will also concur. I think you heard some of our questions that hopefully inform some of the ways that you move forward, which is to consolidate as best as possible, make efficient decisions. We would love to see this project happen sooner rather than 10 years from now. And yeah, the, keep going, and we appreciate your, your joining us here at the town and taking new strides on these great projects. So that was direction. You don't need a motion. We're good? Right?
We're good.
We're good. Excellent. We have a closed session. We are going to skip council reports tonight. You can all hold your council reports. There would be a two-month council report. We'll save at least an hour at the end of our next council meeting, since we're breaking in August for those. And we are adjourned to closed session. Thank you.